Good morning and welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is April 6th. It's 9:30 a.m. Tuesday, and this meeting is hereby called to order. At this time, I'll ask our board clerk if she would please read the roll call and establish quorum.
Yes, good morning. Supervisors Desmond.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 9th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any local library branch.
Thank you. I would like to invite everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is livestream and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment on today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along and determine when it's the best time to call to be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. When I open public comments for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter, clerk staff will begin transferring you into the meeting. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed and for that specific item. Members of the public are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected when making more than one public comment on a single agenda item or off-agenda matter. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding. Written comments are always accepted. Please send your email comment to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you again for your patience. And at this time, I will move into the next item.
Okay. For your consent matters, items 1 through 36, I just have a couple of notes. On item 21, you are introducing an ordinance amending certain sections of Title 16, Chapter 16.95, 16.100, and 16.120 of the Sacramento County Code relating to non-residential fee deferral, affordable housing fee deferral, and waiver and residential fee deferral programs. You are waiving reading on this and continuing to April 20th for adoption. On item 28, you're adopting an ordinance. This is the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Program, amending Chapter 16.87 of the Sacramento County Code relating to deferrals of and exemptions from Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee and Transit Impact Fee Payments. You waived reading on this on March 23rd. Also, on the 29th, you are adopt -- on item 29, you're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 6.20 of the Sacramento County Code to incorporate requirements of the Sacramento County Regional Solid Waste Authority Code and address state regulations concerning mandatory organics recycling, and you also waived reading on this on March 23rd. And that concludes my notes.
Thank you. At this time, I wonder if we have any board members who have any discussion for any items on consent? Thank you Supervisor, I guess Supervisor Desmond got to it first.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Not requesting to pull any items right now, but I'd like to make a comment on item 3. If I could have the clerk please read that into the record.
Yes. Item 3, Authorization to Vote and Designation of Authority to the Interim County Executive to Sign the Petitions and Ballots for County-Owned Properties in Support of the Carmichael Property and Business Improvement District Renewal.
Thank you, and I just want to comment on this. I am, have been heavily involved with the Carmichael Improvement District shortly after its inception in 2016, and just want to say, I live right near the boundaries of this improvement district, and just want to give a shout out to them and their efforts. The executive director, Rachel Taylor, and their board members for doing such a great job in revitalizing this section of Fair Oaks Boulevard. They have formed such great partnerships, not only with the businesses that are within that improvement district, but also with a lot of the other stakeholders, including homeless advocacy groups, Sacramento Self-Help Housing, Carmichael Heart, and also bringing together sheriff's hot team officers, code enforcement, and so many others, in just a collaborative effort to make this area better for the businesses, better for the folks experiencing homelessness in the area, and really appreciate very much their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple items, wanted just to comment. First, I want to thank Ann and county staff. I had a couple of questions during briefing, appreciated the follow-on responses. They addressed the questions that I had posed. Wanted just to note on item 18, and you can maybe just read it shortly into the record if you could, if I may.
Item 18 is approve the retroactive grant agreements with community spay and neuter clinic and Sacramento Society for the prevention of cruelty to animals for high-volume, no-cost, low-cost, co-pay community spay-neuter services not to exceed $770,000.
Great. I just wanted to thank our staff for bringing this forward. I know in years past, it's been kind of a back-and-forth during budget time and so forth, but I think this is a recognition of the value of low-cost spay and neuter to our communities, certainly to our residents, but also obviously to the animals. And ultimately, I think it certainly results in better animal health and certainly helps cut down, I think, the flow of unwanted animals oftentimes that end up on our shelter, not just our shelter, but other shelters, and appreciate that this is, you know, coming in this format with a longer-term commitment, obviously with the caveats that are built into it. And I just wanted to ask the question too, that in the event that we were to assign additional funding to this, we could amend the contracts, is that correct, Ann, in the future? So, but again, I appreciate this. This has, I think, been a good while coming in, and it's a recognition of the good work with our partners in the community, so I want to thank our staff for bringing it forward. The other item I wanted to ask us to call out if I could for a moment is item 21, please.
Okay. Oh, item 21, I read that one into the record. You're introducing the ordinance amending the code relating to non-residential fee deferral, affordable housing fee deferral, and waiver and residential fee deferral programs.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. On this item, I'm supportive of it, and I appreciate the staff work that brings it to us with the addition of other applicable fees that could either be deferred or waived. But I want to raise a question, because I think it's timely. I think it's important that this board, if not today, obviously this is an introduction to extend the current program, but we currently cap the amount of dwelling units, the affordable dwelling units that can qualify for deferral, waiver, or actually the waiver, at 200 dwelling units. And I think that number's been static for, I know it's been static for a number of years, probably 10 or more, maybe even longer than that. And one of the questions that came to my mind, I shared this in my briefing, is that, you know, I trust that this is oversubscribed in a given year, and with the, I think, the housing crisis that we're all aware of, and certainly the challenges that are presented in trying to build affordable, quality units, this is a key piece that I think the county certainly plays a role in. And granted, certainly with a waiver, there, you know, there are offsets that then have to be accommodated within the various districts, but I guess what I'd like to have us, have a discussion around and maybe have an item come back to us to talk about, actually, because it's clear, the analysis here, this is no expansion of a 200-unit-per-year cap, but my understanding was, I had a chance after my briefing to have a follow-on conversation that we were already subscribed by early summer last year, and there's already a waiting list for this year on the affordable housing, on the residential side, for the waivers. And I'd like to have some analysis around and some discussion amongst my colleagues, and certainly with our management staff, about maybe expanding this cap to, you know, doubling it, or maybe to 500. Again, if we're trying to assist, you know, in the creation of additional affordable units, certainly in the unincorporated area of the county where these fee programs apply, and recognizing that we want to make sure the infrastructure is covered and the cost of, you know, the development of those areas, I just think it's key that we have a conversation about this number. I think the number needs to be updated, and would like to see us have an opportunity to talk about that. So I don't expect that today, but I'm very interested in us pursuing that and doing it pretty quickly.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. We have already been in contact with SHRA, and their staff is in the audience, as well as Bob Davison from County Engineering, in case there were any other specific questions you had about this item. But yeah, we've talked about coming back to the board probably with a workshop, so we can look at what the program currently is, and then what the opportunities are for that cap and for the, for the program as a whole. This one, this item, as you know, is to add other fee programs that are eligible for the, for the deferral and waiver.
Right. And so, and I appreciate that, you know, LaShelle and Bob are both here. I didn't have, I didn't want to get too deep into the day with the consent item, but I think it's important, and certainly if, you know, whether it's a workshop or another item that would bring to us, you know, staff consideration, recognizing the factors that go in this. I just, to me, this is one area where the county can, I think, you know, lift its hand and say, hey, we can help over here. Now, how we offset those, you know, either, you know, certainly deferrals or just delayed, and so there's, you know, today's interest rates is not probably much loss at all. Waivers, obviously, there's, you know, you're not going to gain that back through that development, but if we're truly committed, which I think we are too, you know, seeing to that affordable housing, because so much else relies on that. Getting things we do with homeless programs, with other, you know, at-risk populations, we've got this logjam, and Ann knows about it as well as anybody, that, you know, if we don't get units, you know, that have, you know, the availability for folks to move out of other parts of our system, you know, we're paying them, you know, on one end and probably treading water at best, and so, anyway, I don't, and you were going to maybe respond?
I was just going to say that we'll come back with a workshop to talk about this comprehensively.
Okay, good. All right. So again, I didn't, I appreciate folks being here today, I didn't have any other specific questions, and, you know, but I'm very interested in seeing us pursue a higher cap and doing that quickly enough so that maybe for this next, I don't know if there's, you know, a certain application period, but I understand there's people in the queue waiting right now, so, okay, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you Chair. I have some comments about item 7.
Okay. Item 7, Approve Relief of Accountability for Lost and Stolen County Assets for the Period of July 1 through December 31, 2020.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to comment and maybe express some outstanding concern that I continue to have about some of the assets that seem to walk away in this organization, including these large plotters and printers that are estimated, whose estimated value exceed $10,000. I know that in attachment 1 for this item, we have a matrix, and included in that matrix is action implemented to prevent future losses, which really doesn't give too much detailed information about how we are going to avoid some of these larger, more even clumsy assets from disappearing, but it remains very concerning to me that we have these high-value, in this case, it seems a couple of different plotter printers that are both, one's actually closer to $12,000, I think. But it does concern me that we seem to see this time and time again, and then on top of that, this is not the first time that guns have been lost in the sheriff's department, either lost or stolen, and some of the explanation given for the weapons include deputy was instructed with respect to weapon security protocols, and that's kind of it in terms of the stolen handgun, and with regard to the one that was, that's listed as lost, it just says the review of the weapon insurance protocols were conducted with all range staff. So I just want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to, you know, minimize these losses. I know that in the whole scheme of things, it may seem low, but certainly we're entrusted with these public assets, and to continually see some of these larger pieces of equipment disappear is frustrating to me. I don't know if David or anyone else has any comment about what we might do to continue to curtail this, but especially with regards to the weapons, it's very concerning.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. I cannot speak to the weapons right now. I have to speak with the sheriff's department before addressing that. But in terms of the, like, the big printers that you talked about, one of the things that came to my attention is that sometimes staff are not aware of the process for sending items to surplus. So when someone, when an item has finished its usefulness, we often surplus those items, and if you don't do the proper paperwork, the surplus folks can't confirm that they actually received it. So I think one of the things we need to do is really beef up the process on how we turn things into surplus, because it's really hard to imagine that a big printer just disappears.
Right.
So staff say, yes, we turned it into surplus, and surplus says we don't have any documentation of it, so we do need to work on that process for sure. And then work with departments on better keeping track of all of their items.
Thank you for that response. I, you know, I get it. I mean, we're, you know, we're a big organization, and we have a lot of assets, but it just seems like that shouldn't be rocket science. It seems like we should have well-established and well-understood protocols to make sure that things are barcoded, or however we're registering our assets internal to ourselves so we can track where they are. Seems like that, that should be a bit of a no-brainer, so I'd like to see in the future that, you know, I think, is this a, this is an annual report.
Yes.
This is, this should be a matrix that shrinks in future years, because again, especially with regards to the bigger items, and in some cases, these lethal items, we should be doing everything we can to see that they remain in a, you know, remain in our inventory of understood asset collections, and I don't know if it's appropriate to continue to use the word "lost" when, in fact, what your explanation was, Ann, is that there was just perhaps a misunderstanding in terms of how to surplus equipment, but that might be more informative for the board in the future so that we don't jump to conclusions that someone walked into a room and one day, and the, you know, the printer the size of a piano was, walked out of the building, so.
Understood.
Anyhow, I appreciate the shared concern.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just on that, the one thing that occurred to me with, with large items, is one thing for folks not to track what they gave the surplus, but if we sell and or dispose of items, I assume, even if it didn't have all the proper paperwork in it, that somebody at the, you know, at the back end is, you know, and maybe you do it in larger lots or whatever, but it would seem to me that you might have some record that, you know, whether it tied back and you put the code, but, you know, looking at some of the printers and so forth, that even, because if they gave the surplus, they gave the surplus, they didn't put the paperwork with it. But surplus still has to catalog that, and we either offer for sale or for disposal, or, you know, that's just different methodologies, certainly David could speak to it, but it seemed to me that there would be some way to align that, and obviously that's what this report says, is that we can't find it. So if it didn't get sold or didn't get dispensed, you know, even if it was in a bulk, that, you know, you're going to say, you know, we've got, you know, 15 printers and, you know, this and that, and, you know, they're all sold in one lot, some of these are, you know, a pretty, you know, they're not just run-of-the-mill. I mean, they're not, you know, multiple items of, you know, desk screens of computers or whatever, so I guess I'm just kind of curious about that. I don't know, David, I just, do you have some familiarity with at the surplus end of it, where you're tracking a lot of goods, and we make them available to the public and to other public agencies, that there would be some cataloging in some of the items, and even if it didn't match exactly with, because there wasn't any paperwork that followed it?
Right. Thank you Supervisor Natoli and Supervisor Serna for the questions. You know, one of the things that has happened with this report is, before, we used to include an extensive detail behind it.
Yes.
The reports that came in, signatures, more explanation. The request has been to kind of shrink it down, so I think we've shrunk it down a little too far, so I think we need to include some more information. You're right, sometimes the items go to surplus, but like Ms. Edward said, it just, it's an administrative error, and unfortunately, in the accounting terms, it's either lost or stolen. There's not a misplaced or, you know, administrative error, so, but there's no reason why we can't include that information on the reports in future years, so I think we can, we can do a little bit more on that. As far as the surplus items, depending on the item, sometimes they're traded in for other equipment, and the departments work directly with the.
Vendor.
With the vendors and does that. And what causes this, this report to come up is every three years, Department of Finance asks that the departments do a physical inventory, and it's on a rolling scale. So when departments go out and look for those items, they can't find them, and many times it's two years, three years, and so it's very difficult to find that information. But you're right, there are things that have barcodes on it, but some of these items that are about $10,000, an asset is only things over $5,000 and with a useful life of more than a year. So sometimes they don't realize that it's over $10,000, so I think we need to do a better job in identifying our assets and marking our assets appropriately, and we can work on that for us.
You're right. We used to get a lot of detail. This used to be a fairly thick report, and we.
Yes, yes, yes.
All the signatures, we had a deeper explanation about what was stolen, and, you know, and again, if it was defined as being lost, at least there was some more narrative behind it. Maybe that's somewhere, but this is a pretty abbreviated report, so that's good for saving paper, but doesn't offer some of the explanation.
And I would also add, items that are stolen, police reports are done, so the local police, whatever the jurisdiction is, for the one gun, the surveillance camera, and I can't, I think there was one other one on there, that was, there are police reports that were done that were filed with the auditor's office, Department of Finance.
But on the gun, even if the gun is lost.
Not on lost items, just on the stolen items.
Okay, but if it was a lost gun, you know, you know, it's in the, you know, in their line of duty, it's one of their, you know, and I think the county pays for the weapons, right?
Yes.
So it would seem to me that when it comes to weapons, that, you know, that registry, so that if it shows up out on the street, you know, police report or not, that there's some way to identify that, and I think that may be to some of the points that Sir Serna was making, so it may be that with weapons, and in past, we've had weapons stolen out of, you know, out of ranger vehicles, and I think even out of, you know, there was some lost, you know, rifle assigned to animal care some years ago, and so, but, you know, whether lost or stolen, it would seem to me that, you know, just, I think with the sensitivity obviously around, you know, weapons, and if they get into the wrong hands, that at least it's known that, you know, you can track that back, and maybe that information is retained anyway, with the sheriff's department, or with our park, you know, with our parks department, or with the animal care, I think those are the three, and I think welfare fraud may, some of those folks may have.
And I believe that's true. I'd need to follow up. I'm not a gun expert, so I'm sure there's serial numbers and things like that on there that can pull up that information.
Okay, just so that, again, it's held somewhere where that information's available, that that was, you know, was once property, you know, assigned to people who were, you know, working for the county of Sacramento, and, you know, it's now gone, but if it gets into the wrong hands, so.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Desmond.
Well, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. David, real quick, I, first of all, with the weapons, I know that they're entered into DOJ's automated firearm system, so that all that information is captured.
Should have asked you.
But, so, on a statewide basis, and it's very important, because Supervisor Serna is absolutely right, those are, even though the value is relatively small, the impact of a loss of something like that has potentially lethal consequences, so it's a big deal. But I don't know, you said every three years, departments in the county only do this inventory every three years?
No, every three years, Department of Finance asks them to do a physical inventory. Every year, according to our policy, the departments are supposed to be, do what's called a book inventory, which.
Okay, do their own internal to their.
So you do it every year.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
And I would just add that the lost and stolen assets are over $5,000. Guns aren't over $5,000, but because they're so sensitive and because of the issues that you just recently brought up, that's why they're on this report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have any other supervisors in the queue to speak, and I wonder if we have any public comments or comments on consent?
You do not have any public comments for consent, and you do not have any comments for off-agenda as well, so I'll go ahead and close those now.
Thank you. And I guess at this time, I'll ask for, call for a vote on consent.
I move a consent calendar.
We have a motion by Supervisor Natoli, and a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
All right. For item 37, this is County Service Area Number 1, Zone Number 1, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for 7-Eleven Orangeville.
Good morning, members of the board. Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division. As stated in the subject for this item, a 7-Eleven automobile service station and convenience store is approved for the southwest corner of Greenback Lane and Main Avenue. In response to a use permit condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate a benefit category change for County Service Area 1, which provides street and safety light services for the unincorporated portion of the county. In response to this application, a notice and ballot were mailed to the property owner on February 19th. The parcel is currently in the safety light-only category and has an annual service charge of $2.56. The proposed change would re-categorize the parcel to the enhanced street and safety light non-residential category with a proposed annual charge of $342.55. So if there are no questions from your board, we would recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider all testimony, close the public hearing, and direct a clerk, excuse me, to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Thank you, Dorothy. I don't have any questions in the queue, and so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any callers?
You do not.
Okay. And I see none, and so I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk if you'd please tabulate the ballot.
Okay. Can I get a drum roll?
Yes.
All right. So it looks like, I just want to make sure I see these docs. We have one ballot. The legal owner is SE Orangeville 1223 LLC. The parcel number is 223-0182051, and the site address is 9396 Greenback Lane, Orangeville, California, and they are in favor of the change.
Thank you servants. With that, since there is no majority protest, we request that the board adopt the attached resolution, and I can read into the record the fill-ins for the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests, which the board finds and determines do not constitute a majority protest. At the close of the, I'm sorry, section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot, totally 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category and 0% was in opposition.
Thank you, and Chair will move staff's recommendation.
Second.
And seconded by Supervisor Natoli. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay. For the next item, there will be a call transferred here shortly. The consultant will be on the line. Let me just answer that. Okay, so item 38 is the update on the 2021 redistricting process.
Good morning Natasha.
Hi, good morning. All right. All right, good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I'm Natasha Drain, governmental relations and legislative officer. Today, I'm providing an update on the 2021 redistricting process. I'd like to start by saying that we'll be back before you on May 4th for a board workshop on the 2021 redistricting process, which will include a comprehensive overview of the new laws affecting this process and other requirements, and staff will also present a proposed 2021 project plan, where we will seek your feedback. This presentation will give you a broad overview of the process, as well as the new requirements under the new Fair Maps Act, so as to give you a sense of the work ahead in the coming year. In the first portion of this presentation, I'll very briefly share what redistricting is, the timelines associated with census data, and when the county must adopt final maps, possible changes to this timeline, as well as give you a broad overview of the Fair Maps Act as I just mentioned. Redistricting will look very different than it did 10 years ago under these new requirements. In the second half of the presentation, I'll share that what staff has done so far to prepare for redistricting in this new environment, including forming an internal project. for redistricting in this new environment, including forming an internal project team, hiring a redistricting consultant, and finally, I'll discuss some next steps. Okay, so what is redistricting? This is the process that occurs every 10 years following the completion of the US Census. The Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is required to redraw the supervisory district boundaries, ensuring that those boundaries have substantially equal populations and comply with the Voting Rights Act of 1965, which generally prohibits voting practices and procedures, including redistricting, that discriminate on the basis of race, color, or membership in a language minority group. In order to draw, redraw district boundaries, excuse me, the county must use census data. There have been many questions about when the county will receive this data because of all of the reported delays in the release of the information. The census data was delayed for a couple of reasons, but primarily due to COVID impacts. Slide four includes two possible timelines associated with when the county will receive the census data. The timeline at the top of the slide is what county staff assumes will occur, given what the census has reported. By September 30th, the Census Bureau will release census data to all states. By October 31st, California will release state population adjusted data to local jurisdictions. While the state will receive the data at the end of September, the California statewide database, which is responsible for putting the state database together, will begin a 30-day process of population adjusting the data as required by the Elections Code. The county is required to use this population adjusted data and must wait to receive it from the state. What the state is doing during this timeframe is population adjusting the data to reallocate the prisoner population by last known residential address at which the prisoner was last domiciled. The state will also include historical elections results information to assist the state and locals with Voting Rights Act compliance. Finally, by December 15th, the county must adopt its final maps. This means that from the time that the county receives the state population adjusted data to when the county is required to adopt the final maps is a six-week timeframe. This is a quick turnaround to do the work required, but there's quite a bit that staff and the board can do in advance of receiving the data in late October. Again, this is the timeline that staff is currently working under. However, the second timeline at the bottom of the slide illustrates how the county might receive the census data a little earlier than expected. We learned last week that there could be possible changes to this timeframe. We understand that it is possible that the state will receive census data in mid to late August instead of September, but in a format that's called a legacy format. The statewide database has indicated that if it receives the data in this format, it will take two weeks to convert that data into a workable format, at which time it will begin its 30-day process of population adjusting the data. This means that the county could possibly receive the required data two to four weeks sooner than we anticipated. However, we will continue to work under the assumptions of that first timeline at the top of the slide. But I think the good news here is that there's a chance that we'll receive this information a little bit sooner. We don't know when we'll get the confirmation of whether we'll receive the information sooner, but as soon as we hear, we will certainly let you know. Okay. I also wanted to briefly mention SB 594 by Senator Steve Glaser. CSAC and other county partners are working on amendments to this bill, but in its current form, it would clarify that counties will meet the December 15th deadline if they pass an ordinance by the state. There are, there is some concern that because an ordinance takes effect 30 days after passage, counties would not be in compliance with the December 15th deadline. In other words, the concern is that counties would have to pass an ordinance by November 15th to comply with the December 15th deadline. This bill attempts to clarify that when the county passes the ordinance on its second reading, the passage, or excuse me, that passage constitutes complying with the December 15th deadline. The bill would also allow the county to adopt its final maps by resolution, as opposed to adopting it by ordinance, which is what cities do. We are supportive of this legislative effort, and I will keep you informed of the process. As I mentioned in the board letter, staff and county council recommend that the board do its first reading by December 7th, and its second reading of its ordinance by December 14th. If for some reason we think we need to be more conservative with this timeline, we'll certainly let you know as well. While the county has about six weeks to consider draft and final maps, as I mentioned earlier, there is quite a bit of work that we can do in advance of actually receiving the census data. This other work relates to the new requirements under the Fair Maps Act, which I want to talk a little bit here about. Assembly Bill, excuse me, yes, Assembly Bill 849 by Assembly Member Rob Banta was passed in 2019. It was co-sponsored by the California Common Cause. It's intended to maximize public participation and increase transparency in the redistricting process by outlining specific requirements relating to the county's webpage, public engagement, public hearings, and the maps. I'll briefly share some of these new requirements because it will illustrate some of the work that's ahead of us. Relating to website requirements, first, the county is required to create and maintain a webpage for 10 years dedicated to redistricting. The webpage must include an explanation of the redistricting process and how to submit public comments in all legally required languages. The webpage must also include links to the hearing calendar, notices and agendas, recordings or summaries of the hearings and draft and final maps. Staff has already begun work, and the county's redistricting website will be operational by your May 4th board workshop. Relating to public engagement, the county must identify local organizations, reach out to these organizations, and provide education information about the process and how to participate in the process. We must also create a signup process on our website for those interested in receiving information about the redistricting process. We'll do this through GovDelivery, and we'll tie that into our webpage, which again will be up by May 4th. We must identify all applicable languages in the county as required by the Elections Code. For now, that's English, Spanish, and Chinese in both Mandarin and Cantonese dialects. We must also create a process to receive public comment, including a dedicated web form and email address, and a physical address. Relating to public hearings, the county must hold at least four public hearings to allow the public to give input on the draft and final maps. One of these four hearings must be held outside of regular business hours. We must ensure that all locations are accessible to persons with disabilities. We must provide a five-day online notice for these required hearings, though that's reduced to three days after November 18th. We must maintain an update on the county redistricting webpage, a calendar of all the hearings. We must provide live translation upon request, and we must record the hearings or prepare a written summary of each public comment and the board deliberations. As it relates to the maps, we must enable the public to submit written testimony as well as to submit maps. We are restricted from posting the draft maps until 20 days, 21 days, excuse me, post-release of the state adjusted data. Draft maps must be posted for at least seven days before the final maps. And then finally, we're required to add demographic data to draft maps and must use the state adjusted data, as we talked about earlier. In January, the County Executive's Office formed a project team consisting of the departments most involved in the redistricting process, including the County Executive's Office with David Villanueva and myself, voter registration and elections with Courtney Bailey Canelos, public information Kim Nava, technology Rami Zaccaria, and Mark Valentine, who's assisting with the project management, the clerk of the board Flo Evans, and county council Krista Additionally, given the major changes in state law relating to redistricting, as a first step in the redistricting process this year, the CEO's office solicited proposals for professional redistricting services. In March, an interview panel consisting of the county project team, the board chair, Supervisor Frost, and vice chair Supervisor Natoli interviewed three firms. National Demographics Corporation, or NDC as we call them, received the highest score. We're currently wrapping up contract negotiations with NDC. NDC has been in business more than 40 years, and during that time has served hundreds of local governments in the districting and redistricting process. They are well positioned to assist the board and staff with this process. NDC will provide comprehensive services, including educating the board and the public on the Fair Maps Act and all the other requirements related to redistricting, assisting the county in securing an online mapping tool to allow greater public involvement in this process. The firm will advise on public outreach and engagement and will provide materials to assist in this effort, and NDC will draft maps, taking into consideration, of course, the input of this board and the input of the public as well. And this is my final slide. It is a draft project timeline, and I refer to this as a draft because I expect that this will change after we meet with the NDC on April 14th for our kickoff meeting. And what I want to do is come back to you on May 4th with this timeline, assuming we do readjust it, and I want to get your feedback on the timeline. I've broken down the work into four quarters. The quarter one, of course, is behind us, but as a reminder, during those months, we formed a project team, we issued an RFP, and we selected a consultant. In quarter two, we will inform the board of our progress, starting with this meeting. We'll hold a project planning kickoff meeting, as I just mentioned, with NDC on April 14th, where we'll finalize a proposed redistricting project plan. We'll come back to you on May 4th with a workshop that will be part educational and part discussion and feedback on the final project plan, and we will also begin the public outreach process. Quarter three is all about public outreach and the initial data analysis. We will draft a robust public outreach plan that we will bring back to you on May 4th for your review and for your feedback. One of the outreach mechanisms that staff is recommending that is not required, but we think is prudent, is to conduct five public outreach workshops, one in each supervisory district, assuming we'll be able to gather by then. If not, we'll hold them electronically or virtually. These public workshops would be in addition to the four required public hearings on the maps, and this recommendation will be included in that public outreach plan. And then finally, in quarter four, this is all about drafting the maps, receiving input from the board, as well as the public, and finalizing the maps for board adoption. Okay. With that, I'd just like to conclude by saying that the county has a lot of work, as you can see, ahead of it in the coming months, but guided by NDC, we look forward to assisting the board in this process this year. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Natasha, and thank you to everyone who participated in the interviews and all the organization that you did to help us pull it together. You're amazing, in my mind. And Supervisor Natoli had some questions.
Okay.
Well, I'll just second, you're amazing, so. Not just in my mind, but you are. Thanks, Natasha, and again, thanks to our staff, certainly, for the preparation going into this. You're going to come back to us a month, a little less than a month from now, and one of the things I think would be useful beyond just talking about process, because, you know, having participated in the interviews, there's some data out there. Again, it's not what we can rely on, obviously, as you've outlined, for any, you know, mapping considerations of Fair Maps Act, but there was information that actually showed the variation at least estimated, and I think, I assume that's publicly available, so I think that would be helpful to have that, Natasha, because again, it was, I think, useful, just in my mind, it was, it was a matter of one of the points that was made in one of the presentations, but I, I think that that would be useful to show at least what the estimated population is by district, you know. There wasn't more demographics behind it than that, but there have been ongoing population estimates that are provided annually through different sources, and they're not what we're going to rely on, obviously, for the processes you've outlined, but I would hope that we could at least have that, you know, visual to show and, you know, and talk a little bit about the variation, and there were different approaches in the interviews about what folks might suggest as consultants. Again, and certainly we'll hear that presentation, you know, more fully on, on the, on the 4th of May, but I do think that that information would be, be helpful, because I think it's kind of sets the tone as to, you know, what, at least, using some databases, what information is available really to populations, so I don't know if you want to respond to that or not.
We're happy to do that. I'll, I'll work with NDC and make sure that in that presentation we include the information. And they are on the line, so if there's anything that they want to speak to, we can have them do that.
That was, and again, just to be clear, it wasn't part of what their presentation was, but, you know, it was one of the presenters.
Right, no, but we can have them prepare similar information and bring that to you in May.
Yeah, I think it gives a good backdrop for, you know, some of the conversations and the work that, as you've outlined, is going to, the pace is going to be pretty, pretty rapid come, come the fall, but there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be laid, but I would like to see us have that information as a part of it, so.
Okay.
Anyway, thanks. That's all in.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Some of us haven't been through this yet, I think.
Three out of five.
Three out of five have not, so this will be interesting. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's a good thing Supervisor Natoli is still with us, because he's been there. But Natasha, yes, you are amazing. Thank you very much. And staff, it's my first time doing this, and when you get to the, the public outreach, definitely appreciate your, your suggestion to do one of those workshops in each of the districts. I think it's always difficult to get some folks to engage in, in this process. Certainly that will have such a dramatic impact on their lives. And as far as the four public hearings, I mean, if it's safe to do so, and even if we, I mean, I would, I would recommend that we consider maybe decentralizing a couple of those meetings as well, if, if possible. I don't know if the, the board has done that in a while, but maybe we could have a discussion about that, and maybe one or two of those meetings actually being in, in different parts of, of the county, just to improve the level of, I think, access and engagement in this process. I, I think that would be a good thing, but thank you very much.
Agreed. And I know at this time we do have Douglas Johnson, who's the consultant with National Demographic. And Douglas, are you on the phone, and would you like to say a couple words?
Sure, happy to. And I'm also joined by Justin Levitt and Doug Yocum from, from my NDC team. So we do appreciate all the work that the county staff have put into this. It has been great to work with you so far, and we look forward to working with you on all of the work that remains to go forward. And just on the estimated data issue, yes, we have been actually working very hard for the last about six or eight weeks to nail down the, the best estimates we can get, and we're very close, so we'll have a whole presentation for you as part of the workshop on, on that. But we are happy, happy to answer any specific questions you have, but mainly just looking forward to working with you through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. And did Justin or Don wish to say anything?
This is Dr. Justin Levitt. I'm happy to just say a couple words. It's very nice to work with you. I'm working on the estimates right now and have been for the last few weeks, so I look forward to sharing them with you at our next meeting.
Thank you, Doctor. And we do have a question from Supervisor Natoli at this time.
Yeah, just kind of piggybacks a bit off of Supervisor Desmond's point. I would just say that in District Five, it's the largest geographically, and to pick kind of a central location, you know, I have two, I have the second largest city in, in the, in the county currently in the district, but also, you know, there are four cities, and then fairly large, although certainly population-wise, not, doesn't come anywhere near the population in the incorporated area that Supervisor Desmond has, but, and I don't, it may be a little difficult if we're actually going to have physical sites for folks to come to, to pick a place in the, you know, in District Five, you know, where, you know, access would be, you know, kind of equal for everyone as it relates to travel distances and so forth, and, and so, I'm just going to offer this as, as a point, and again, if we need to do for other reasons in, in other districts, you know, another meeting or two, I think it behooves all of us, and certainly having had a little bit of experience over time, that I think, you know, the, you know, even with what the law has prescribed, you know, the access certainly via, you know, the methods we've been using now in great practice for a year relative to internet and to, you know, Zoom and so forth, those are all great, and people can go to those sources, and they'll be retained and archived and available for people at their leisure, but I do think if we're going to do physical meetings, we may want to look at adjusting that, and I do like the idea of, and, you know, maybe decentralizing, having a meeting, meeting or two or three even out in the communities, because this is a very important, not just exercise, but a very important process. It certainly provides the backdrop for where folks will seek to, to represent, you know, the people of this county and certainly of those districts, and so it requires a little more legwork and assuming, you know, some of the COVID restrictions that kind of inhibit us right now, you know, as we move along, are, we're able to, you know, have people assemble in different locations. I would suggest that's a pretty good idea. And, and I would also note that, as you go through this, you know, keeping us all informed, because again, even if you're having a meeting in, you know, in another geographical portion of the county, I think there'll be an interest by all of us, and so it may be, and I think we talked about this, you know, that you want to know those, those are Brown Act, so that, you know, we can hear from, you know, other constituents, you know, if we choose to, and all of us can be present, you know, at those locations when those public meetings are held, or if they're done via, you know, the electronic methodology, it's still make sure that we can be there, and I know Flo and Natasha have talked about that, but, you know, this is going to, you know, consume a bit of time, but it's very important, and it, you know, it will certainly be the backdrop for representation on this board for you it will certainly be the backdrop for representation on this board for, you know, for a decade or more. Thanks.
Great, and I didn't mean to pass you by, Mr. Don Locum, if you wanted to say anything.
That's okay, I'm good. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. Okay.
And we'll work with Mr. Natoli on a location. That's something that, because of the size of this district, will need to work out.
That was plural, locations too, right?
Sounds good. Thank you so much for being here, and thanks for all the work up to this point. I know we have a lot to do, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what my district's going to look like at the end of this year. It's like a mystery, so we'll work our way through it, and this is a receive and file, so thank you very much, Natasha, for the update.
Thanks.
Next item, please. Okay. Item 39 is a resolution approving the 2021 transient occupancy tax grant program funding recommendations. Good morning, Britt.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Britt Ferguson, the county's interim chief fiscal officer, and every year, as you know, we come before you and recommend that your board award TOT grant program funds to a variety of nonprofit organizations, community-based organizations. On February 24th, we came before your board with an update and progress report, and so I won't spend a lot of time repeating all of the information that was provided to you at that time. Just to note a couple of things. First of all, as you know, there is a very elaborate process that has gone through to evaluate the applications. We received far more applications in terms of number and dollars than is available in the $1 million annual grant program. There are subject matter expert panels in all of the various areas that spend hours reviewing the applications and ranking the applications, and then they pass those rankings on to the TOT Grant Review Panel comprised of two board members, Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Desmond, and the chiefs of staff of the other districts, which then makes a recommendation to your board. In this case, made a few revisions to the recommendations from the panels, but otherwise pretty much passed them on, and they're before you today. In addition, just note that a number of years ago, the board made the decision to split the $1 million into essentially two pots of funding, $500,000 that is awarded based on merit, based totally on the rankings in the different subject areas, and $500,000 for each district that must still be awarded to people who submitted applications and who were ranked and meet a minimum qualification, and all the other rules related to the process apply, except that rather than being awarded based on the rankings, board members can pick who to allocate the funds to. And in addition, in some cases, board members have chosen to take some of their other funds, their neighborhood funds or their community funds, and augment the funding that is provided. So there's a list in your board packet, Attachment One, which includes all of the recommendations for funding from the Grant Review Panel and from the individual board members for their $100,000 each, with one exception, and that exception is there's about $54,000 that is related to some of the proposals that Supervisor Natoli wanted to fund. One of the policies that your board adopted is that the amount of the award must be a minimum of $10,000, and that was done in order, staff recommended that, just to, the sheer volume and workload involved in managing multiple, multiple spa contracts would just become pretty overwhelming, and, but Supervisor Natoli did want to fund some projects that were less than, and I'm sure he'll want to speak to that. I have to acknowledge that in past years, we have occasionally allowed, inadvertently, frankly, allowed for less than $10,000 funding, and Supervisor Natoli, I think, probably remembered that, and so was operating it under assumption that that was not, that policy did not apply. We did not intend for it not to apply, we don't believe the board intended for it not to apply, but he has asked for a waiver of that policy, and so all those staffs not recommending it, because again, we think that, you know, if you start doing that, it becomes burdensome administratively. The truth is that, again, we can't say that it hasn't happened in the past, it has happened in the past, and so there's a list in Attachment Two of all of the projects that Supervisor Natoli would fund, would ask you to approve if you grant that waiver, and so that's what you have before you today, really two issues, one, to grant the waiver, and if you do grant the waiver, then to approve both, the resolution, both resolutions, both, Attachment One and Attachment Two. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Britt, and I also want to extend a special thanks to Supervisor Kennedy and Desmond for their work on the committee. I think that's got to be one of the hardest things to decide where the money goes when there's so many good projects, and it's, it's nice that you're willing to do it, and Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to extend thanks certainly to my colleagues as well for their work, and I know Supervisor Kennedy has participated on this panel, I think, for all his years on the board, if I'm not mistaken, so he's a veteran at it, and appreciate that, and certainly Supervisor Desmond for your work, and thank you to Britt, because Britt and I did have a conversation around this as we were narrowing the deadline or approaching the deadline for submittals. I wanted to say, you know, very frankly, certainly I had a much different understanding as related to the directed funds, the competitive funds. I understood, I have read, obviously, the policy framework, which I think one could extrapolate, certainly as staff has recommended, that the minimum level of funding would be $10,000, and that would apply to both categories. It was not my understanding that it applied to both categories, and certainly as others have on this board, you know, I worked with at least one colleague on this board to move some of the monies that were available through the directed account to assist with funding projects elsewhere in the county, and I think the fact that we have, you know, over 225 applicants for, in the various categories, certainly goes, one, to the need, but I think to the good work that goes on, both large and small, in communities throughout the county, whether they're in incorporated areas or unincorporated area. And the point I wanted to make here is that, and I said this to the county, I certainly wasn't going rogue, my understanding clearly was, is that for amounts less than $10,000, that we could do that under directed funds, and I get it from the staff perspective, that it's a bit more to administer, but I know we bumped that up a few years ago to $100,000, about 10% of the money that we set aside, except both for this part of the TOT program, but for other contracts and other contributions that we administer. And again, so it wasn't my intent to burden staff, nor to set up some of the grantees with the smaller numbers that are recommended here, or at least by this member of the board. I actually had made some calls to folks to see, you know, what would be acceptable relative to some of the requests they made. They're all within the category of the folks that applied under this year's TOT program, and I don't have any doubt in my mind that the list is there, that for the most part, if not entirely, they'll be able to expend those funds, or, you know, again, as each of us has, have looked at worthwhile efforts, everything from serving people in human services to arts and culture, to business economic development, and certainly human services under a variety of categories. And so, again, I, you know, I am seeking a waiver, again, if it's this board's direction that we not grant that, then obviously I have some more homework to do here, but I'm confident that the organizations that are being suggested will fulfill the obligations of the grant, assuming they enter into it, and that those monies will be expended wisely as they will with all the other recommendations that are here, so. And again, I would like to maybe have some conversation before we go into the next year's cycle about that, because I will say lastly, that I think when we reestablished the program in 2015 or 16, that there was that limitation on the $10,000, and then that got, you know, evolved over time, and again, you know, mistakenly on my part, if it was cleared to everyone else, it was not to me, and so I, you know, I apologize for that. On the other hand, I'm not apologizing for what I bring to you today, because I think that these are worthwhile organizations, all the folks who applied, and I would ask certain of my board members to support the waiver here today, and we can have a conversation about where we go next year, and sorry for the extra work, Britt, if we do approve the waivers.
That's all right. If I could just add, I think to Supervisor Natoli's point, the review committee is going to be recommending some changes for the policies for next year that will be coming to you later, and I think that would be a good time to relook at all of these. One of the things I think that created some of the confusion perhaps was that when the board, when the review panel recommended, and the board made the decision to split it into two pots, the policies were never changed. The policies are the same policy that existed before that. That was just sort of a vote to do that, and each year, sort of, the board effectively reaffirms that, but the policies have never changed. So the policies that existed with the $10,000, with all that stuff existed really right from the start, when it was just one lump of, you know, $1 million, and so maybe it's time to relook at that. Not something we're interested in changing, but if that's the will of the board, then that's obviously the will of the board on an ongoing basis, so we bring that back, and we'll make sure that we identify some of the issues. We've heard some other board members on other issues that they perhaps would like to see changed, and so we can bring that back and address that as we go into the next funding cycle.
Well, thank you for that. Just one other note, too, initially it was $50,000 in directed, and then we upped it to $100,000 either two or three, two cycles ago, if I'm not mistaken, so at any rate, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. So Britt, you and I have had some back and forth on this subject, so I just want to bring this up. On the board letter, or is it on Attachment One? I think it's Attachment One. It has, the last table shows district overages. I guess, let me just go into District Two first, and then I'll ask you the overall question is how are we going to deal with that, but, and I just want to make this point, and this is where you and I have gone back and forth a little bit, and that's fine. It's, some of it's an interpretation of the policies. There was one policy that, and you sent it to me, that said, "Unspent money will not be carried over year to year." I remember having those discussions, so I get what you're saying. I guess my interpretation, though, was that if an applicant did not spend the money, it meant that they could not carry that money over to the next year. I wasn't thinking about it from the flip side of the district discretionary money not being able to, and let me just say that I just think that there's a, and I'm talking about a small amount of money, I'm not going to split hairs over it, mostly because I have none, but I do think that from a fairness perspective, I mean, let's just say hypothetically that District Two, Three, Four, Five doesn't make any difference, you know, spend $100,000 of the money on one applicant because it was that worthy, and for whatever reason, it wasn't able to be accomplished, well, then I'm being told that that means that all the other districts have that $100,000 to benefit the residents of Sacramento County, often district by district, but sometimes, you know, we spend the money outside of our own districts. That would be depriving $100,000 for one supervisor that the other supervisors were not deprived of, and I just think that there's a fundamental fairness issue there. I'm not going to, we can address it when we look at the policies, so I'm not going to split hairs. I see right now, I'm at, you know, District Two is at 8,500, I'm just going to, you know, make your life easier, Britt, because that's why I'm here.
Oh, that's good.
And so I'm going to actually take the $10,000, because I had an overage of $10,000, in my opinion, it was an overage, because one of the applicants from last year was not able to fulfill it. Now, I was told at one time that that would be sent back to be redistributed, but that didn't happen. So this year, I'm going to let it go. I'm going to take the $10,000 that I was going to give to, or allocate toward the SPCA, and I'm just going to take that out of discretionary District Two funds. But I do want to have this discussion on what year-to-year rollover means when we have the policy discussion later.
I totally agree. I think that would, it seems fair that if it was allocated one year, it should be, go to that district, even if it didn't go to that person. So thank you, Supervisor Kennedy, and Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I too agree with my colleagues that I think the time is ripe for us to look at refining and revising the policies surrounding how we appropriate these scarce discretionary resources. I'll just, I just want to add that, while I understand and certainly sympathize with the administrative effort that goes into tracking these appropriations, being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, I just want to underscore the fact that, while $2,500, I'll just pick a number, may not seem like a lot in the whole scheme of things when we're talking about appropriating a half a million dollars. To many organizations, certainly many that I work with on a frequent basis, $2,500 means quite a bit in terms of what they, you know, do to carry out their missions, and, you know, I'm prepared to support Supervisor Natoli's, I don't know what you're calling it, appeal, I guess, today, because I think that principle is the one that I reflect on that makes me feel comfortable doing so, but it also makes me much more interested in perhaps us codifying that a bit more so that we don't have to rely on exceptions in the future moving forward, and I'll just, for the record, state publicly here that, you know, I was not under the impression at the time that I was working with my chief to come up with our appropriations, meaning District Ones, and in, I think, a handful of cases, we certainly respected the $10,000 limit, and understanding that limitation, that rule, took funds from other discretionary accounts that we've accumulated to complement the contribution from this year's allocation so that we could meet that $10,000 threshold. So that means that, you know, we've actually restricted the ability for us to provide assistance moving forward because of the use of existing discretionary funds for the district. So I think, again, the time is very appropriate now, because I think we're just, we're learning as we go along, and again, you know, you look at the list that Supervisor Natoli's presented, which, you know, reflects a lot of, I think, thoughtfulness on his part, and the amounts there relative to the organizations, I think, are, you know, are evidence that there's nothing magic about $10,000, other than, you know, it keeps the workload perhaps more manageable for us internally, but I do think, given the extraordinary amount of nonprofits that we work with and partner with here in Sacramento County, we shouldn't lose sight of the fact of the import of, you know, contributions that are less than $10,000, so, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, again, certainly thank my colleagues for their comments. I, again, back to, I think what Supervisor Kennedy was raising, though, is that if the money actually came back, it was there, it didn't get redistributed, it just got rolled back in, I guess, because it didn't show $1,010,000. I guess I would be of the mind, rather than have the 80-3-year discretionary funds, that if we need to have a follow-on resolution, again, and certainly, you know, the thoughtfulness that went into your approach, both as a panel member, but obviously in the, you know, in the directed funds, that, you know, again, it wasn't, the money is, it was available, it came back, and, you know, I'd be willing to consider, you know, we can, something can back to us to, you know, allocate $1,010,000 out of this fund to take care of that and to cover that, because I think clearly, you know, it's a rarity when monies do come back, and, you know, I don't know how many, and maybe Britt, you have a handle on that, but I certainly would be entertained, rather than have you eat out of your discretionary dollars, so I just, you know, I think.
So I can say over the years, it's not a huge amount, but I would say, you know, year to year, it's probably in the $10,000 to $30,000 a year, doesn't get spent, and every year, it just rolls back into the general fund. It's always been $1 million a year, so we've never, unlike your, you know, your actual district funds, your neighborhood funds, those funds which do carry over, we've never carried any of this over, so, but, yeah.
Well, I would just say, and it's up to, Supervisor Kennedy wants if he chooses to, but I'd be willing to, you know, we'd have to do, you know, another subsequent item, but to, you know, allocate this year, make a budget adjustment for $10,000, recognizing the money. but to, you know, allocate this year, make a budget adjustment for $10,000, recognizing the money came back, and to allow for it to be distributed as assigned and not have you recover that out of your discretionary money. So I'd be prepared to support that, if, give direction around that and have that come back. So. And then we're going to have a conversation about going forward, it sounds, at a future date, which is good, I think, with the comments that were made here.
I think we should have that conversation. I had one person who was not able to use theirs, and it was a timing issue and a matter of them, I guess, not understanding the protocol around signing the grant letter and getting it back in time, and we ended up funding it out of our own funds as well because it was too late to go back. So that, I guess I bring this up because I think we should maybe have that conversation around making, is there something we need to do to make sure they clearly understand how the money has to be spent and the timeline? And I don't think it's a staff's fault. I just think it was, in our situation, it was just one of those odd one-off situations that, I don't know how that happened, but it did. But I think we need to include that in our conversation around all this, especially if there's around $30,000 every year that doesn't get spent. That's amazing that it doesn't get spent, because you would think it would.
Yeah, as you know, one of the things that we really emphasize to people in the process is, you know, don't submit this if you can't spend it, because, and the panels really look to see the capabilities, sort of, not just the programmatic, but the administrative capabilities of these entities, because obviously, as you point out, in this case, it was probably a sort of administrative failure or basically on the part of the organization. But sometimes it happens. Some things happen, and sometimes they're just not able to, and, you know, and the policy is clear, it doesn't carry over for them, and we've always understood that to be, it doesn't carry over at all because it's a million dollars a year. So, but I think that we should add that to the, it's clear, there's a sentiment on the board to revisit all of this and look at it, and so as we come to you at the start of the next year's process, we'll make sure we include all of these issues and really provide more time to discuss and look at the policies and what your real intent is.
Thank you, Britt. I don't have anyone in the queue right now to speak. I wonder if we have any colors on this item?
You do not have any colors on this item.
Okay. It's a quiet day. So at this time, we need a motion to approve the TOT grant program and also to approve a waiver for Supervisor Natoli.
To move. Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Moved it, and Supervisor Desmond, second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please. Thank you, Britt. Oh, you're still here.
That was easy, that was an easy one.
What if you're not, I mean, what if you're not here next year? You're making all these promises of things you're going to bring back. Hope you're going to write notes. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item 40 is the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, Metro Air Park.
Thank you. Again, good morning, madam chair, members of the board. I am Britt Ferguson, the county's interim chief fiscal officer. And joining me in this presentation this morning will be Steve Hartwig, deputy county executive for public works and infrastructure, Troy Givens, the county's economic development director, and Colin Bettis, the county's debt officer. Bob Davidson, our special projects manager, county engineer, will also be available to answer questions that may arise. The genesis of this agenda item, as many of you know, goes back to early 2019 when some of the Metro Air Park or MAP property owners requested that an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EIFD, be formed for the MAP special planning area. Staff began researching this issue, and on October 20th, 2020, your board held a workshop on EIFDs where staff discussed some of the issues involved in creating such a district. At that meeting, Supervisor Serna asked staff to return with a resolution of intent, or ROI, to create an EIFD at Metro Air Park as soon as possible. Staff continued to work on this request, and on December 15th, your board approved an advanced funding and reimbursement agreement with the MAP property owners for the initial study and preparation of an ROI for a MAP EIFD. A lot of acronyms here. We then contracted with Kaiser Marston Associates, a real estate economics and advisory firm, to assist us in this effort. And then on March 9th, Supervisor Serna asked staff to bring forward the ROI for the MAP EIFD by no later than today's meeting. So EIFDs are one of a number of different mechanisms in California that cities and counties can use to pay for the construction of infrastructure and, in some cases, other things using what's called tax increment financing, or TIF. With TIF, a base year assessed value is established, and property tax revenue generated by the base year assessed value continues to flow to the taxing jurisdictions. All or a part of any growth in assessed value above the base year, the base year value amount called the property tax increment will flow to the TIF entity. In the case of a tax increment district in MAP, the county would likely be the only taxing jurisdictions whose property tax revenue would be diverted. This slide shows a hypothetical tax increment district scenario. You see the base year value in blue and the assessed value increment in red. Typically, the ramp up of increment is more gradual than shown here, although this is a, and although this is a hypothetical scenario, we have shown a more steep progression to illustrate the scenario we think is more likely in the case of the MAP EIFD. The theory behind TIF is that the property tax increment will be used to fund things like infrastructure, thus incentivizing development that would not otherwise occur, and so will pay for itself. If the development would have occurred anyway, however, then TIF would not be cost neutral to the county and would effectively be a windfall public subsidy to developers or landowners. So the key question in deciding, in our view, in deciding whether to form a tax increment district is whether it is actually needed to incentivize development or whether it is likely that development would occur anyway.
Excuse me, Britt. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Britt, just before you leave this slide, you know, I'm glad you prefaced this the way you did, which is, you know, the slope here of the increment, I would argue, is, you know, extremely aggressive and optimistic and probably not terribly realistic. But this does not necessarily reflect, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this does not necessarily reflect what has been assumed and proposed for a while now, which is that 100% of the increment would not be going to, back to MAP. What we're talking about is 50%. So wouldn't the more accurate slope be something that is halved here instead of what you've presented?
So again, you're right. This is a hypothetical. So, but it, we do think, based on, you'll hear, based on what the pace of development, that there will be a very steep slope. The slope would be the same, it's just the amount would be different. Basically, if it's half, the slope would be the same, but the amount would be different.
I understand. But for the purpose of being accurate in presentation to my colleagues and to the public, I'm interested in pointing out, though, that this is not, this is not reflective of what's being proposed. This is purely hypothetical, optimistic, and so it's, you know, I don't want to mislead anyone, I don't want to have you mislead anyone thinking that this is reflective of what's actually being proposed here.
Right. This is a hypothetical, as I said, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so, as I mentioned, under California law, there are a number of different TIF financing mechanisms. The MAP landowners have requested that the county form an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EIFD. Some of the key elements of an EIFD include, it involves the creation of a public finance authority, or PFA, that administers the district. This is a separate entity from the county. The PFA is governed by a five-member board comprised of three members of the Board of Supervisors and two public members appointed by the Board of Supervisors. To create an EIFD, the PFA must hold three public hearings. The PFA can form an EIFD without an election if less than 25% of the landowners file a protest. If between 25 and 50% file a protest, an election must be held. If more than 50% protest, then the EIFD cannot be formed. Once formed, the EIFD then adopts, excuse me, then the EIFD then adopts an infrastructure financing plan after approval by the Board of Supervisors and can issue bonds with approval by 55% of the landowners in the district. An EIFD can divert both secured property tax revenue and property tax in lieu of VLF revenue, which is basically, it's basically, it's sort of an equivalent amount. And EIFDs can exist for up to 45 years after the issuance of bonds is approved. So there is, there are other options to an EIFD. One would be to create what's called an Infrastructure and Revitalization Financing District, naturally referred to as IRFD. And in an IRFD, the district would be governed by the Board of Supervisors directly rather than a separate PFA board. Only one hearing is required for the formation process. A two-thirds vote of approval by the landowners is required to form the district and issue debt. The increment can only include secured property tax revenue, not property in lieu of VLF revenue. And IRFDs can exist for up to 40 years, and debt can be issued with a repayment schedule of up to 30 years. We are providing information on both EIFDs and IRFDs because there are advantages and disadvantages to each mechanism, and if the board is interested in doing some sort of infrastructure financing district at MAP, it is worth considering both options. Steve Hartwig is now going to talk about some of the recent changes in MAP, and then Troy Givens is going to discuss what has been happening in terms of development in MAP and in the region.
Good afternoon, Chair Frost, members of the board. Flo, I'm going to go ahead and use the overhead if possible. Yeah, that's a lot of work. Okay. Good morning again. One of the things that changed just within the last year is your board approved an updated financing plan, and it reduced fees to virtually all the properties by greater than 40%, in the neighborhood of 47%. So that, that change, and as you, anybody who's been out there recently has seen a lot of activity. There are a number of buildings now standing where about a year or so ago, a year and a half ago, there was only the one Amazon building standing. So that, that action by the board has really helped to incentivize what's going on right now out there at the Metro Air Park project. I'm going to cover a lot of the construction activity that's going on. The I-5 interchange, which is down here at the bottom, this is I-5 for reference, the legend is covering up the eastern SAC International runway. So the interchange is nearing completion. It's scheduled to complete in mid-May. There'll be, over the next several weekends, there are going to be nighttime closures of I-5 to do various parts of the project that will get it ready to open. The signage along the highway is going to be worked on, I believe, this coming weekend, and then the weekend after that, another nighttime closure on the weekend to remove the false work from the bridge structure. So a lot of, a lot of work going on there. It's getting close to being ready to open up that interchange. On Powerline Road, so along this westerly edge of the Parkway, or excuse me, of the Metro Air Park, the next phase from Sky King to Serna is already awarded for contract, and that will start construction in May. So just next month, we'll start the powerline road improvements. The next phase from here to, either to Alba or to Elverta, we're looking at, the design is underway right now, and we're looking at that being ready to construct in next construction season in 2022. The I-5 auxiliary lanes, which start off the picture here at the SR-9970 and I-5 interchange to Metro Air Parkway, those auxiliary lanes also are scheduled to start construction next month. The contract has already been awarded, and that work is already being worked on at this point to coordinate with the interchange contractor and the work that he's doing. Some of the developer projects for road and other improvements, Alba, which is, which is right through here, the westerly piece of this roadway to Metro Air Park is being done by North Point Development, and the easterly piece of Alba between Metro Air Parkway and Lone Tree is being done by the Oates Group. And then from the interchange to Elkhorn, that is being done by the Metro Air Park Owners Group. They are looking at, looking at construction for 2022 to add two additional lanes. Currently, it's a two-lane roadway. It'll be bumped up to a four-lane roadway with a signalized intersection at Elkhorn and Metro Air Parkway. One that we neglected to put on here, there's also the Elkhorn Extension, which takes the Elkhorn Boulevard onto the airport and ties in near the ARCO station on the airport property. That one is in design right now, and we also were able to procure a grant for about $11 million toward that project. So with the combination of the grant and some funding from airports on a portion of it, we were able to take that burden off the Metro Air Park owners. I guess the last piece I wanted to cover is, we have in the county, and Troy's going to talk about this a little bit more, there are 13 fast-track projects, and those are the ones where the county commits to shorter turnaround times for plan review, more coordination on the construction part of the process, getting the permits issued as quickly as possible. Of the 13 in the entire county, eight of them are out here at Metro Air Park. So I just want to give you an idea of how much is going on right now. There's a lot of activity, and actually, some of the board members may want to take a tour that we'd be willing to, to take anyone, any of you out there and kind of show you what's underway right now, because there's a lot of things going on. And there are no questions. I'm going to turn it over to Troy, who's going to talk more specifically about the development projects and the buildings that are going on out there.
Excuse me, Steve. We do have questions. Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah. This goes to your point about the fast-track projects. So how does that work? And how do people know that they can fast-track a project?
There are eligibility requirements, and actually, I'll call on Troy to help me with that one, but it's, you have to meet one or several criteria, whether it's new jobs created, whether it's new revenue toward, to the county property tax and so on that gets generated, or investment in the county. So the amount that they are spending to build their project, or the number of jobs they create, or the amount of revenue that generates to the county qualify for that, qualify for a fast-track, and it has to also be a project that already has a tenant under contract. It can't be a spec building.
So is that internal policy, or is that board policy?
That's an internal program that was created before I had come back to the county. So like I said, I'll have to defer to Troy on some of the specifics.
I support it. I'm glad to hear that folks at Metro Air Park are taking advantage of it. But, you know, there's been different iterations over the years. I guess I'd like to know a little more about that.
Right.
And, you know, who developed the thresholds for jobs? Anything that gets developed is going to have a property tax implication to it, so I-
Well, there are some other projects. I have the list. There are several out at McClellan. The Capital Commerce Center is also a fast-track project. Maya Theater is a fast-track project. There are a few in the Howe-Arden-Watt area. So there's, you know, a few throughout the county. Like I said, Lion's share right now are at Metro Air Parkway.
How about Mather? How about Mather?
I don't believe we have anything that's proposed right now at Mather that would qualify, or actually, anything proposed, yeah, that would meet those thresholds.
Well, I anticipate we're going to have a report back as we look at maybe some business assistance as it relates to coming out of the pandemic and so forth. And I guess I'd like to know a little more, so that I can get, you know, get a briefing from all of you, and I'm supportive of it. But again, you know, what thresholds trigger the fast-track? Because one thing that goes with fast-track is that you can jump the queue, and others wait. And again, we do that because of certain reasons, and then staff time gets dedicated to that, and then other folks wait. And I guess I'd like to, maybe in this forum, have a little more conversation about that, if we need to be more supportive, if we need additional resources to accommodate that. But a fast-track isn't just a benefit for certain development that we want to, you know, see occur with job creation as such. It does result potentially in others having to wait longer. And if I'm wrong about that, tell me so. But I don't think that's the case. You don't have unlimited staff and unlimited resources. And I'm glad, again, we're focused on this today, but I didn't realize we had kind of this internal, you know, benchmarks that if you meet, then you get to go, you know, go past go and keep going, and recognizing the tenants and so forth. And it's good work, economic development. So I see Hartwig's motioning to Troy to come up. But again, I don't want to lose track. We're talking about this proposal today, but you did catch my attention with that comment, and so I'm- and so I'm most interested in having some conversation about, you know, who gets selected for the fast-track and.
And we can definitely provide the specifics of that program and whether it's in an open session sort of workshop format or.
Well, we got to get some direction around it. Maybe something we want to be more supportive of. Again, I'm glad you're doing it and it's good and I know economic development has a strong answer to infrastructure.
We have been stretching our staff pretty thin to try and meet all of these that are, that are now in the fast-track program.
I know. Before you go, Steve, I, I do know that in some cases the fast-track is what gets them here. Otherwise, we wouldn't have gotten them, that business to the region. So it's, it's a good, it's a good program. Supervisor Cerna.
Thank you. I just want to make the comment and point out that when we say fast-track, it's, it's relative to a point in time that is, I'd say, much more recent than when the project actually started. In some, some respects, it's kind of laughable that you'd use fast-track in any context with this project. This project has been the poster child for, you know, a, a property that has been, had been entitled and ripe for development decades ago. So to think that it's fast-tracked now is fine, but understand, you know, everyone should understand that it's taken a long time for the county, the property owners, to get to a point where you can even begin to think about providing incentives to come out, out of the ground because of the debt load on this, on this property for so long. So I think it's an important footnote here. And I know that Troy's going to approach the podium and tell us what all the colors mean on the map in terms of prospective development, but it's a, just especially for the, our, our newer members on the Board, you know, this, this project was probably first entitled when, in the early 90s?
Yeah, before I was on this Board.
Yeah.
A long time ago.
I think I, no, literally, I think I was in my twenties, you know, and I'm now in my, approaching my mid-fifties here. So it's just one important part of the, the history of this that we ought not to lose sight of.
Right. And entitling the entire Metro Air Park, yes, was, was done quite a while ago. This is for the individual permitting processes for each of the projects that have come in and since the Board's action in June of last year, it's really ramped up.
Yeah, but there's, there has been a tremendous amount of carry though, you know, on that property and in various iterations of ownership and as Troy knows probably better than, than anyone, and, and the various, you know, bankruptcies that occurred. And I think it's been through now probably two and a half recessions. This property, maybe three. So again, it's just important to note that this is not, in my estimation, my opinion, this is not a typical project from a temporal standpoint.
Well, and I don't know that we had it on the slides, but perhaps Troy can even talk about that, that topic of the, the defaults and the, and the bankruptcies and where we're at right now with property and those that might still be an issue.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. And we'd be happy to come back and talk about the fast-track program. That was developed previously when we had a community development department that was established. Those policies were developed at that point in time when Lori Moss was leading that direction. So, good morning Board. Troy Givens, Economic Development Director for Sacramento County. I was asked to come and highlight the current status, so if we could leave this map up, that would be great, and talk about the pace of development. To your point Supervisor Cerna, pace of development is really a relative term. This area sat dormant for 20-plus years. I think the Board is, is aware of that. There were a number of issues that at the time with the building moratorium, we had a fee structure that was completely out of sync with the marketplace. As you had mentioned, there was a number of, the debt carried on this site made it almost undevelopable at the time. The county has worked with the property owners. The moratorium has been resolved a number of years ago. The county has worked with the property owners, as Steve had highlighted, to lower the fees significantly in this area. And we solved the Rubik's Cube of how to advance the funding for the interchange and get that built. The, really, there are two parts of this development. If you look north here of Elkhorn, you have the, really the, the industrial portion and then south of that, you have more of a commercial area. So it brings us really to the, the latest handful of years where again, we've solved these funding issues and we landed our first big tenant, a private developer out of a property that was formerly in delinquency. We had 13 delinquencies out at this site. Those delinquencies have been resolved. So all of the, all of the things that we've worked to help align here have fallen into place and we've seen a tremendous amount of growth. If you look at this map, the, the first site I'll point out here is the, the SMF1 for Amazon. That's the first building that was landed here. It sat there for maybe a year and a half to two years before we really sparked additional interest after we, and that was the time we were resolving the delinquencies out at these sites. So subsequent to that, we have SC Johnson north of that. That building is occupied as well as the Amazon Building, which has at times up to 2,500 employees. We have the Walmart Distribution Facility here. We have Project Shelby under construction, which we anticipate will be open mid-year this year. We have another building complete up in the upper right-hand corner, which we will be occupied by a Fortune 100 company as well before the end of the year. And within the last couple of days, we actually have status changes on this map. The orange are really under development or permits submitted and processed. So this site here was just issued permits a couple of days ago. So it is, actually started breaking ground now.
Is that General Produce?
Uh, no. General Produce is located here.
Okay.
Uh, that has not broken ground yet, but permits are submitted. We have a site here, Project Mustang, which was also submitted, was issued permits in the last two days. So we're having trouble keeping up with the map, actually.
Are these all code names you're giving us?
I know. What does it mean?
Project Mustang and.
Well, if you notice, there's Project Shelby, Project Mustang, Project Mercury, Project Capri.
What is going to be in there?
And Project Fiesta. They're all in the Ford family.
Oh.
So we don't name all of them. Some of them come to us, some of them we just add on to.
Mr. Cerna, what kind of car do you drive? F-150.
Having said that though, we, we've seen a tremendous amount of growth. So we have, we anticipate that at the end of this fiscal year, we'll be at 20% build-out of the site. And by the end of 2022, we'll be at approximately 35% build-out, approaching 40 depending on a couple of things. We've had 13% land sales happening with more pending for additional development. And given the, the macro conditions with retail transitioning to more of an e-commerce format and the geographic advantages of Metro Air Park, we anticipate particularly the industrial continuing at a really accelerated pace. We have another 2.6 million square feet that were, that we know is targeting in on this area that we've been working with prospective developers on. And our challenge has really become availability of land and then some of the zoning, the underlying zoning, because this was, to one of Supervisor Cerna's points, this was planned 25 years ago. The market has shifted more than once in that timeframe and some of the underlying zones that were approved at that time, which were anticipated to, to, to come to fruition, like the office market out there and some of the R&amp;D and so forth, are really going to struggle in this area given its location. From downtown, the office market is a completely different market than you have around the subregion of downtown. So as this continues to develop out, we see a, a pretty, this is, in my 30-plus years here at the county, this has been the most torrid pace that we've seen in industrial development. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Supervisor Cerna.
Great. Thank you Troy for the, the summary of what's currently going on out at Metro Air Park. But back to your 30-plus years of experience, can you speak to the general fragility of the, the, the market for the kinds of uses that are out here, especially given the fact that we in the region, correct me if I'm wrong, we have places like West Sacramento and others along interstate corridors that compete pretty fiercely against Metro Air Park in terms of the kinds of uses and space requirements for various tenants. And wouldn't you agree that just because the market may seem very, very optimistic for Metro Air Park today, that things could turn fairly quickly? And just because we have a trajectory of absorption in terms of the acreage and space out here, the way we've enjoyed for the last, let's say, three or four years, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be the same over the next 30 years, correct?
You, you, it is a good indication of what's happening right now. Projecting that out to the future is a difficult proposition. If I could do that, I probably wouldn't be employed here. I would probably be on Wall Street.
You'd have a better job.
But to your point, I think that we do have several competitors up and down the valley. And we do have unique geography here that is highly prized. So when you look at this geography compared to woodland or other places, we have two advantages. We have our location and adjacency to the airport and we also have the ability to accommodate 500 to a million to 2 million square foot buildings out here, which we just don't have of a lot of ability to do that up and down the West Coast. So it is uniquely positioned. At some point, that advantage goes away, obviously, as more build-out occurs at this site. But, so projecting out how far that goes is a very difficult proposition to your point.
Thank you.
Troy, one of the conversations that we had around possibly over 25 years, the market, everything's changed and it could be, the zoning could be possibly changed. If you were to do that, something like that, how would that impact the fees for that plan?
We would have to look.
Would it be redistributed to others or is there a way to do it so that it's?
We would have to look at the financing plan as well as the rezoning of those properties. If, if we had, and I do have a zoning map here, that may give some context to that. So this is the same piece of property, unfortunately, oh, great, we were able to zoom in. So if we had all of this property zoned industrially, I think we could, we would be busy, our staff, Steve's staff, everybody would be busy for the next several years building this out. But we have this yellow spine here, which is zoned commercial office. We have what we refer to as kind of this finger area that comes up that is zoned kind of highway commercial oriented. There's demand for that certainly. It also includes hotels and other things, but there is plenty of demand for industrial there as well. And then these two areas of red, which we have, we are fielding multiple calls weekly from both local and national developers that are looking for property out here to try and figure out. But that's, that's an individual rezone, which is a lengthy and expensive process with no surety as to whether you're going to be successful at the end of that. So I, I think there are some fundamental challenges with some of the underlying zoning. Those properties that are zoned either adjacent to the, the interchange and are zoned commercial are going to develop with what you would see typically on the commercial side. Those that are currently zoned industrial will probably be advancing very quickly as well. Those that are kind of in that, those other categories are going to have some challenges. Now, it could be county initiated or it could be initiated by the property owners. One of the challenges with that is it opens up the EIR, which is a lengthy process as well.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you Chair. So a couple of things. First of all, Troy, has GSAC weighed in on this subject specifically?
I've had conversations with Barry and obviously this is an area of interest because they market our area regionally and are a, a great partner in that effort. So in those conversations, and I don't know how freely Barry would appreciate me speaking on this, but he has weighed in and he, it's just like any other tool, it can be very effective in the right area. Barry would like to target, if I'm interpreting his comments correctly, he would like to target higher-end jobs, higher wage jobs, is what he has shared with me for this type of tool.
But that doesn't, this doesn't preclude that?
No, it does not.
Right, right, okay. I just want to keep that in mind because, you know, we pay a fair amount of money for dues every year and, and we work with them and, and we do have a good partnership that, you know, they're an important part of our, as are you and your staff, of our economic development plan. So I just don't want to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I do know that they have targeted the I-5 corridor very high on their list.
That's correct. And the adjacency to the airport is important as well.
Right. Sometimes to the detriment of further south, but that's okay. So the other thing is, now you and I worked together to try to take a look at Stockton Boulevard, if you recall?
That's correct.
And whether or not, and I think we looked at an EIFD actually, and I really appreciate that. And it turned out that at the end of the day, we went through the exercise and it didn't work. But it, it was mostly, now, help me out with my recollection here, but it was because we couldn't even establish it under the guidelines and no matter how creative we tried to get with the district boundaries, it just didn't work.
That was correct. It was, it was challenging in the sense that there was, in that area of your particular district, there's a lot of residential interspersed with some of the other areas.
Which is exactly why I wanted to do it, but.
Exactly. But it, it created a challenge from a boundary and a voting standpoint to be able to get enough critical mass to establish something that would, we could meaningly, meaningfully bond against or whatever the case would be going forward.
Yeah. And, and I, again, I appreciated your staff's work on coming to a decision, whether it was the one we wanted or not, happens. But on this particular property, it's not the case and it can be established. It's just really the concern is, is how will it impact the general fund? That's the biggest.
I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay. And I will, you know, echo what Supervisor Cerna said. I believe West Sacramento was the first to do this in the area. And I don't think anybody's been more aggressive at economic development than West Sacramento has and you can, you know, it's, it's noticeable if you look across the river. And, and I guess I'm a little concerned that we're looking at, you know, from such a strong perspective of walling off the general fund this way, when that's exactly what we all complain about, the lack of, we all, you know, local government in general complains about the lack of tools since redevelopment went away and this is what some call redevelopment light. And that's, I, I don't want to lose the vision of what economic development is and I'm not telling you certainly anything you don't know. And it's an investment. And with investments, there are risks. There's no question about it. But, you know, to just look at this as we need to wall off the general fund, I think is short-sighted and that this could be a significant investment into what at the end of the process would actually, the county would be whole, we create more jobs, you know, and so I just, you know, wanted to pontificate that, I want to protect the general fund, but at the same time, sometimes we have to take a little risk and, and make some investments in order to get that economic development that we all want to see. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, I think, Madam Chair. Well, thank you Troy and Steve and Bree for your presentation. I guess a couple of things come to mind here and we had this conversation almost a year ago now, I guess, when we were talking about this, the whole concept of the EIFDs and appreciate the background too on the, on the infrastructure revitalization financing districts, but those require a two-thirds vote. Obviously, that's a, a challenge unless you've got, you know, you know, a limited amount of ownership, I think it becomes very difficult to do that along commercial strips and so forth, where you have multiple landowners and, and such. Not impossible. But I guess what I wanted to ask about, and I appreciate Supervisor Cerna asking about this, is that, you know, why we haven't considered this tool and we look at base conversion, you look at McClellan and Mather, and we participate, participate obviously in Army Depot, which lies within the city of Sacramento, but when I think about all that property on Mather, particularly on the western side, that's under the airport's umbrella, and Mather, particularly on the western side, that's under the airport's umbrella, and I mentioned this a year ago, you know, why we wouldn't have looked at an EIFD? Again, you know, where you have the ability to create jobs, you have older infrastructure, and, and maybe in that case, even a IRFD might be the, the concept. And then I think about this, this before us today, and, you know, there's calculations, and I, and I appreciated, you know, the hypothetical, but I think to Supervisor Serna's point, you know, you could draw another hypothetical that could show something far different, and I think that, you know, the pace of development today, you know, could very well not be the pace of development tomorrow, in, you know, in literal terms. And I just think that, that, you know, as I read the staff report, one thing that kind of jumped out to me, and, and it was concerning, because I think, you know, it's kind of how the picture is painted, and granted, you're going to bring us your best recommendation, and, you know, that's what we're talking about here at this moment, but on page three, that, you know, you talk about the theory in that last paragraph, about the theory behind the tax increment financing, and the last sentence concerned me because, and again, I'm not saying that this couldn't be true in some cases, but I certainly wouldn't want not any inference to what we're considering here today, that says if the development would have occurred anyway, and then it says however, then the tax increment financing, TIF, would not be cost-neutral to the county and would effectively be a subsidy to the developers. Now, again, I'm not saying that, you know, if, if there was a correct portrayal in, in the future bore that out, that that wouldn't be true, but that's what we're talking about here, is, is a subsidy to developers, whoever they might be, is, I think the idea is, is to assure that certain infrastructure is built, and then, you know, granting certainly the things that have been done by this board with staff recommendations in the past. So I guess I'm a little concerned, Troy, and I don't know whose choice of language that was, and again, if it's, if it's something that, you know, staff believes is true, is applied here, and that wasn't, was directly said, but certainly if you read the staff report, we're talking about a particular development. So I guess I'd like to have a little, you know, feedback about what was intended in that commentary.
Sure. I think Britt's going to speak to it.
Okay.
You're still here?
Probably wishing he wasn't. Hi, Britt.
Yes, so, so that particular comment was made in the, in the context of sort of the theory of tax increment finance.
Okay.
But I will say that it is potentially the case, that could be the case here. And if you look at what we believe in terms of the pace of development that's likely to occur there, basically, as Supervisor Serna rightly pointed out, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, but all the indications are, as Mr. Givens indicated, that there's going to be, we're getting up probably close to, almost assured, close to 40% build-out of the area that can build out without rezoning, and the pace, every evidence, reason to think that pace is going to continue. And to the extent we do provide a subsidy to the developer, and it's not needed, then it is sort of a windfall subsidy, and, and this, this project could potentially be on that road, based on what we're seeing in terms of the pace of development out there. So I think, I think that is a real possibility here, can't say for certain. And it's certainly not anything negative against the developer, I mean, any developer would love to get, would love to get that. I think the real issue is, and this is sort of, we get onto this as we go further here, the real issue is, is it really needed to incentivize development? And that's really the question. We can't say for certain, all the evidence that's, we see now suggests maybe not, but again, we can't say that for certain, but if we, if, but if it was, that would be the effect of it.
So Britt, while you're there, then, and I'll just take you to page five, on the top of that page, because again, there's another reference here that kind of jumped out to me. It says, on the first paragraph, carry over to the top of that page, in the last sentence, it says, "If an EIFD were to divert all the tax increment in VLF revenues generated in MAP, it could," and I emphasize "could," "cost the county over a half a billion dollars over 45 years."
Right, and that's not what's proposed. The developers are proposing, as Supervisor Serna rightly pointed out.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. So 50% over that period of time.
Would be, about 260, 255.
Would be about, yes, would be less than that. It would be about 257 million, yeah, that's correct.
Then the question then, with that backdrop, but do we not, we have the developer request, and obviously, you know, that's part of the consideration of us rolling into the staff report. But do we not have the ability to determine, one, assuming that we were to proceed forward, to determine the percentage? It doesn't have to be 50%, it could be something less than that, and I think there needs to be obviously, you know, a nexus behind what would be anticipated and such. And secondly, does it have to be 45 years? You know, 45 years from now, I'll be 111 years old, I know I'm not going on this board, but, you know, it's like, so if you, to my question though, can you determine the percentage? And secondly, the amount of years can be shorter, much shorter than that, compressed?
The answer to that is yes, and I think there are a couple of options, and actually, we had a further presentation, but maybe just to sort of jump ahead here. There are a couple of options. One is to wait and see, right? If development is occurring at this pace, and we'd have every reason to think it will, there's no reason, you don't need to do it right now, you could just wait and see, and if that development continues, then you would never need to do it, and we would all reap the benefits, and there would be no cost to the general fund. Another option would be to look at something different than that, and you, you may have noticed in the, in the board letter, we did identify, if the board wanted to proceed with this, we did identify a structure that we would think would be the best structure, which actually has some of those components. We also identified some other things that we can do that have been sort of talked about here, you know, instead of this, or before we consider this, such as the rezoning, initiating the rezoning, such as refunding the bonds. We're now at a point where, we haven't been at that point before, where we had the coverage to be able to refund the bonds. By refunding the bonds, we can reduce the debt service requirements further out there, and that would be a win-win for, for everybody. It would be, there would be no cost to the county, and there would be relief, further relief to the developers. So there's other things that we can do besides doing this as well, so, and Mr. Bettis is here to talk about the refunding, if you'd like, and we can talk about some of the, we could also talk about what's in that resolution, what we proposed, if you want to do it. We're not, as you know, we're recommending against.
Right.
Doing it, but if we did, that has some of the limitations, and really focuses on sort of front-loading some of the development out there with a payback from the developer then, for the, for the cost of that over time. But, so there are some things you could do, but again, we don't think at this point there's any real urgency to do anything. Things are moving along for a lot of the reasons that have been identified, the change in the fees, the pending completion of the interchange, the changing markets that Mr. Givens talked about, and, and where we are in the market. And so it just, it just doesn't seem like it's needed right now from our perspective.
Okay.
And so that's sort of where we are.
Yeah, thanks, Britt. Could I just ask you a couple other quick questions? And so this, there's the property tax and the vehicle license fee, and obviously, that gets compounded by the triple swap and all the way the state finances. So why does the VLF have to be a component? Can it not only, can it only be the, the property tax increment?
Yes. You don't have to do the VLF, you can do the, you can do the VLF, yes.
You can do the VLF, but, and then, so that's a part of any consideration on this, as to what components, but, but those are the two, which again, are significant, you know, funding streams for, for counties. And then, lastly, the, and again, maybe this was a part of presentation, I don't want to dive into all, but we got this page upon page of charts, and, you know, anticipated dollars, and then, you know, all the sum totals about, you know, what would be potentially diverted from the county. Where is the consideration, though, for, because I think the part of the backdrop, and it's what Supervisor Serna was saying, is that, you know, people may see it, things are robust, they're gung-ho right now, but, you know, the bottom falls out, and, and so then things languish, and so, yes, you're going to have certain properties that'll be on the tax roll, but then, any income projection, as it relates to any growth, will be modest or maybe nonexistent. I mean, rarely you hit a Prop 8 where you're going to actually see a devaluation in, you know, in buildings, but it's not just the property tax component, it's, it's the job generation, it's the income that, you know, returns itself to the economy. Is there a calculation, when you look at EIFDs, that give you some of that valuation of, you know, again, Amazon's there with 2,500 jobs at times, and, you know, you know, and then you get Project Mustang, and Shelby, and all those, and whatever they bring? So, but if you don't have those, or if they were to, you know, not materialize or go away, there's another calculation, I guess hypothetical, but I mean, that's, to me, that's kind of the backdrop by which we, as a board, I think should consider some of this, you know, because this is obviously the first, you know, this is our first consideration of venturing into this, and so, could you just maybe, in a short answer, are we going to have that information?
Yeah, so we didn't do that analysis. I think the issue comes down, again, to really whether, to what extent, the judgment is that this development is pretty much going to occur anyway, and how much risk in terms of the general fund you want to take to mitigate against that. You can look at that elsewhere in the county, too, but this area seems to have a pretty, it seems to us, the risk is pretty low, that this development is not going to continue at a pretty strong pace for the foreseeable future. But, yeah, there is some risk of that. And, you know, you could look anywhere in the county and make those kinds of judgments. That's why you have reserves, we always talk about reserves in the general fund, you weigh risk, right?
Right, right, right.
And so that's a judgment call. We've come to a particular judgment about it, based on a lot of what Mr. Givens has said, but of course, everybody has to form their own opinion about that.
Okay, just last point then. So on that, though, if, if this board chooses to go ahead with some resolution of intent, whether it's today or in, in the near future, you know, that starts a process. I would just say that I think for purposes of at least having information that makes certain assumptions, that, that, you know, without, again, you know, having people spend a lot of time on hypotheticals, but, you know, that part of the analysis, and you're right, you could do any part, you know, any area of the county, pick or choose, this is what the focus is on, on Metro Air Park and surrounding environments there, and so I do think that if we choose to go ahead, this board members would like to see a bit of information behind that for the record, because again, to all the things that are stated here, that, you know, I called out a couple of them, and again, I appreciate you responding to them, I think that would be an important basis of information, whatever it shows, and whatever assumptions are built into it, I think it would be helpful as a board would, you know, proceed forward with considering this further, if that's what we choose to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. So at the, at the risk of rudely preempting the balance of the presentation, I'm assuming there's another slide, or someone wanted to put a bow on this, but in lieu of that, what I would like to do, given the nature of the comments so far from my colleagues, I guess I'd start with my own comment, and that is, I want to thank you, Britt, for doing what you're supposed to do, which is protect the general fund, right? And I think we, we know you quite well in that role, and appreciate that. But when I, when I look at Metro Air Park, as I've said earlier, I don't think it's a typical development, I think it's a, it's got a history that is unique in terms of the challenges that it's faced for not years, but decades. I don't, I don't agree with the general premise that staff set out to develop both the, the draft ROI and the board letter, and I found it quite, actually disappointing, that there'd be this amount of assumption, and optimistic assumption at that, that what is the condition today will be the condition tomorrow. I think that's actually a fairly dangerous premise to, to work under when we're talking about a fragile project. And while, again, you know, we're, we're, you know, very fortunate to see projects continue to come out of the ground, and tenants, prospective tenants express interest, I think there is the, the possibility of looking at some perhaps enhanced uses in the future out here, as to Supervisor Kennedy's point about GSAC and, and the focus on the I-5 corridor, I think we have an opportunity in front of us to not just finally begin to enjoy the, the interest in the, in the, in the project, but I think capitalize on it in terms of really making it a, a project that at build-out, we can be proud of in terms of not just the number of jobs, but the quality of jobs, and its overall economic impact to the, the county and to the region. So I know that, I think, Madam Chair, we're going to have one or two.
We do.
Speakers, and I know at least one of them is a representative for the, the property owners, but what I'm going to suggest in terms of a, a way forward before we hear from them, is that we take the time to revise the, the draft resolution of intent. I think the, the current draft, the way that, that staff's proposed it, in the event that it was the will, or is the will of the board, that we want to move forward with a resolution of intent. I think staff missed the mark on it, quite frankly. I think it's much too detailed for, for an ROI. I think what, what perhaps happened is the staff got so close to it that we looked, we thought that this is the EIFD itself, which I appreciate, but I, I don't know that the resolution of intent needs to be as limiting, restrictive, as the draft has been proposed. It sounds to me like there's, you know, I've been listening carefully to, to my colleagues' comments, but it sounds like there's a majority interest to move forward with an EIFD at, at Metro Air Park. I'm going to be that bold to, to assume that at this point. So after we hear, Madam Chair, after we hear from the speakers, I will be moving that we move forward with the pursuit of an EIFD for Metro Air Park, and that we come back on April 20th with a revised ROI, and in the interim between today and the 20th, again, if it's the will of the board today, I will take the responsibility of working directly with, my office will, with, directly with the property owners, their representatives, and certainly our county council's office, to revise the, an ROI that we can then have for our consideration on the 20th. And so I'm going to put that motion on the, the table right now, even though we haven't heard from speakers, and I would ask for a second. Thank you.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second by Supervisor Serna and Kennedy, respectively, and I believe at this time, we do have some, someone on the phone to speak. We have one public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Please transfer the caller.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Chair Frost, members of the board, my name is Tom Ramus, and I represent the Metro Air Park Property Owners Association as, as a project manager, and wish I could have been there in person, hopefully that can happen someday soon. But first off, I just wanted to say that we, Metro Air Park, support and appreciate Supervisor Serna offers to assist in bringing forward a proper ROI for your consideration. MAP has had a long history of collaboration with county staff and the board on all matters related to this project. These reports and ROI's for you today, however, were not a product of any collaboration. What has been presented to you here is a false choice of supporting an inappropriately and flawed ROI, or rejecting the idea of an EIFD to support economic development at MAP. We can do better. You know, I could take time here to rebut what is in the staff report, but all that, the need, the benefit, and the details, that can be flushed out once the formation process commences. But I think I would like to mention a couple of things. I mean, we, the 50% tax increment, the freeway funding, the fees, I all, I can all explain why all of those are happening and what they are, but I, I'll just stick with one thing, in urgency. I saw Mr. Ferguson saying, "There is no urgency, if things don't work out, we can do it later." If we wait for that, this will not be a successful tool. We are benefiting from a surge in development right now, and that's good for all of us. But that is the opportunity to take advantage of this EFID instrument, in that we can capture tax increment from this surge, and then it can be doled out in the future as needed to fund projects. This is not a static thing in EFID. We set the parameters, and they can be adjusted over time as need arises. We're not looking for a windfall, we're looking to develop a successful project with all parties benefiting. So with that, we think with Supervisor's efforts, along with inputs from all parties, a proper list, a proper resolution of intent can be brought forward to you soon, hopefully on the 20th, and we can begin the real work of creating an EFID that produces maximum benefit for all. benefit for all parties. That's all from me. I'll answer any questions, if there is any.
Thank you, Tom. I have one, I have a question, I'm not sure who it's for, it might be for Troy, that, or for Britt, regarding moving forward with, if we were to move forward with an EFID, no matter what, we could put limitations on it, as far as what we ended up authorizing, but ultimately, there's a separate board and separate control as to how that is managed. So they could borrow against those, that tax increment, they could, there could be down-the-road changes in, in the way they take advantage of that. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly? Oh, he touched the wrong button.
That is correct. The, those, whether the funds are bonded against, or the tax increment is bonded against and so forth, would be decided by that body, which would be made up of three individuals from the board, two individuals from outside the board. And they would be establishing some of those parameters as you, as you advance. The board could provide direction on that, obviously, on what they would like to see, and there would be three members sitting in that process.
Would it be three members of the board, or a public member, two members and a public member?
Let me double-check on that.
Three members.
I believe it's three members of the board.
Yes, three members of the Board of Supervisors, two public members. There is also a point in the process in which the board, as the Board of Supervisors, has the, has to make the decision to give the final authorization to divert the county share of the property taxes, and that occurs at a certain point in the, in the formation process. So that'd be sort of the final point at which you would have the ability to say, no. That would be after a lot of work, and a lot of ways down the, or to, you know, but, but you don't really have the ability to control the plan, that's really the EIFD, the Public Authority Board, but you do have that final decision on whether to contribute county property taxes.
Okay, so I'm just going to, I just want to just make a couple of comments. I am not opposed to supporting some kind of economic development support, and I, I'm not sure I'm comfortable moving forward with an intention for an EIFD. I would probably be more likely to be excited about revisiting some of those opportunities and seeing how can the county assist in making that situation better and promoting the Metro Air Park in a different way. Staff listed some of those ideas, ideas, but I think at this time, I'm probably, I'm just not sure that committing, you know, 40 to 45 years of tax increment, to, unless it was, you know, a project that we knew there was no other way that, that we could stimulate it, some kind of development out there. I think I'm just not ready to support moving forward with the EIFD at this time. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and certainly appreciate the discussion. A lot of these things are new to me and difficult for me to figure out at times, so I, you know, I, listening to the colleagues, or the comments from my colleagues are very helpful to me. I certainly share Supervisor Kennedy's comments about, you know, this is about maintaining our competitive edge here in Sacramento. You know, there's, we are surrounded by counties and cities, including West Sacramento, as Supervisor Kennedy mentioned, are very aggressive in identifying opportunities to spur investment, attract investment. And I think we need to be doing, be doing everything we can to make sure we stay ahead of some of these other jurisdictions. And I certainly balance that with the, you know, legitimate concern of doing something that's going to negatively impact the general fund. But I, but I do think if we, if we maintain the competitive edge, in the long term, the general fund is going to be better off, because we will have a more thriving local economy. I'm also very, you know, Supervisor Natoli mentioned several things that I was thinking about as well, as far as the, kind of the prescriptive nature of this ROI that was in front of us today. I mean, it certainly seems like there, there's an awful lot of flexibility in this kind of vehicle, an EIFD. And, you know, whether you do 50%, you could even do less than 50%. You could, you could, it seems to me, you could, the EIFD board, they could ultimately decide, and I don't know how prescriptive the, the guiding document ultimately has to be, but you could decide not to use the property tax in lieu of fee. You could decide to start it out for maybe a shorter time period with the ability to extend it, if necessary. Am I wrong in, in those statements, either Britt or Troy? You could have just yelled from up there, Britt, I'm sorry.
No, we needed you to come down.
Come back for a sick time. So, okay, so, and so I do agree, you know, Supervisor Serna's, you know, generally speaking, to, to give more latitude to the EIFD board about these kinds of, of issues. As this, as Metro Air Park continues to develop, and maybe as economic conditions change, there will be some flexibility along with that. So, you know, I, and when this does come back, and with Supervisor Serna's work that he'll be putting into this, I would also like to see, because I'm going to support his motion today, but I, I don't think we've had enough of a discussion about the IRFD. I mean, we've talked about it a little bit, and I think, I don't know if that was going to be part of your, you're going to have more presentation about that, and I would have liked to have heard from, from Mr. Ramos about, what are the pros and cons of that? Is, is that an alternative that is, is feasible, as a way to provide them with the certainty that they need, and to encourage continued investment in Metro Air Park? Can you respond to that, or maybe should we hear more about that when this comes back? I don't, you know. And objective, I also agree, you know, the, the staff report certainly was, you know, seemed very one-sided, predisposed to be against this notion. And I really want to hear, you know, a balanced, objective assessment of, you know, pros and cons of using an IRFD versus an EIFD.
Right, so we don't know why, I mean, they proposed an EIFD right from the beginning, and so we don't know why they picked that versus, for example, an IRFD. The staff report highlighted what were really the key differences, which involve length duration, maximum duration, maximum amount of bonds that can be issued, governing structure, which is, of course, it's the Board of Supervisors directly versus this public finance authority, the ability to use the property tax in lieu of VLF, which is, which the EIFD has, but the IRFD does not have.
Right.
So, and there's some other more technical differences. So, again, why they picked one over the other, that I don't know. We just felt it was important that you understand that there are options, and that there are some advantages and disadvantages to the two, to the two options.
And I understand the structural differences and the, kind of the procedural differences that you pointed out. Any word from, and I don't know if, if Tom is still on, on the line, would it be appropriate for, maybe for him to weigh in on, are there benefits to the EIFD that, that would not be available through the IRFD process? That's what I'm trying to work out.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you, the, the VLF would be a major benefit that would be with the EIFD, because that...
But that's not a mandate in the...
No, it's not, but it, but it's an option that doesn't exist, so it allows you to generate more revenue. The, the length of, the length of time the district would be in existence, particularly the limitation on how long bonds could, deck, bonds could be issued for. It's 30 years under the IRFD. But for the most part, you're not going to issue bonds for more than 30 years as a realistic, a realistic option. I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at some of the technical difficulties. There's probably some differences in the sorts of things that can be spent on, but I don't think for the sorts of things we're talking about here in terms of infrastructure, it's probably much of a, much of a difference. So, and then there's the governance structures, how much control does the board as a whole want to keep over this versus, versus not? So, and we, when this comes back, we can bring a more detailed analysis of the difference, if you'd like.
They're getting Tom Ramos back on the phone for you, Supervisor Desmond.
Mr. Ramos, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Tom, thanks for dialing back in. This is, this is Rich Desmond, and something I'd like to hear you comment on is, had you considered this, this other vehicle, the IRFD vehicle, and if not, why do you, would you think that is not a viable option?
Well, I'm not, I don't feel like it's not a viable option. I wasn't as familiar with an IRFD. I was familiar with the EIFD concept. I, I am, I did grow up in West Sacramento, and our business is over here, so I'm very familiar with how that worked and how that process was. And it was a very valuable tool for the Bridge District there, and then subsequently for further economic development around West Sacramento. So that's really what I was familiar with. And then talking with, you know, the consultants that we brought on, they were familiar with the EIFD, too. I asked the other, the other day if, are there any RFDs in, in play now? And if there is, no one knew of it. It's, it's a little different, there's positives and negatives. One of the things that requires a lot of votes for creation, as well as bond sales, which, you know, makes it a little more, more difficult. And then with, you know, the VLF, the VLF having that in the EIFD, you know, it, it can attract more monies sooner, at whatever percentage we have, in order to, you know, incentivize the development and, and, you know, get the infrastructure to happen quicker. So, one comment on the 50% and the total amount, you know, that 50%, if you use that or something lower or higher, that's a cap, and that can be adjusted. And at Metro Air Park, especially with the, you know, the tax increment that could be created, as this EFID matures, that percentage will, will no doubt be lowered on an annual basis. And so, the, you know, it's really the, just what the total amount of monies that we think are needed to be brought into the over 450 to 500 million in infrastructure that is either been put in, or will need to be put in. And we're talking about possibly 10 to 20%, you know, anywhere from 50 to 100 million. So it's, it's, you know, in the scale, it's getting the right fit to fit, you know, the needs, and, and no more.
Okay, well, thank you, that was helpful, that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I don't have any more questions, I just, I wanted to say that I think it's important certainly to, you know, give the opportunity for my colleague to, you know, work with county staff, to, and others, to, you know, craft a resolution of intent, you know, for certainly in the timeframe that he's outlined here, which is a pretty short turnaround, but I, again, I know, you know, put a lot of effort into this. So I'm supportive of that, and I just wanted to say to this idea of governance, though, that, you know, even if it's a shared arrangement under the EIFD, the board still is the controlling arm. Yes, it would be three members of this board, but I trust that, you know, unless they're appointed for life, that they're, you know, that, that, you know, it will be from our own ranks, and so whoever sits is the five board members at any given time, will be the, the, parties will make decision about who represents this board and the county, and the county's interest, along with obviously the other two members which are appointed. I have no idea what the terms are, maybe that's a detail that's for later, but, and so, you know, again, I have, you know, you know, strong confidence, great confidence that if we choose to do this, and certainly do it with our eyes open, and I think that's an important part, and I certainly, I thank Britt and Troy and Colin and others who contribute to this, because I think that's, it's important if we're going to embark on this. But, you know, I don't think we lose control, and I think if there are, you know, points that we need to make sure are clear as relates to whether it's VLF, or bond capping, or percentages, or schedules for construction of improvements, whatever they might be, that I would hope that that could be embedded, obviously, in the, not only the understanding, but it resolutions that would, you know, and subsequent actions that would be called upon by this board that need to be made, including obviously some determination at a future date about, you know, basically diverting the tax increment for the purposes that have been discussed here and will be discussed in the future. So I support the motion here today, and again, I trust we'll see it in a couple of weeks, and I think this discussion and the, you know, staff information, certainly Mr. Ramos and, and his parties, their, their contribution to it all, and again, I, Mr. Serna's guys work cut out for him, but I know he's up to the task, and so I support the motion.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. And I just want to clarify from Supervisor Serna, are you, is your resolution moving forward with, with an EIF, with a resolution of intent for an EIFD, or are we still looking at the other opportunities? Or are we just closing all those out, and we're headed for...
Move ahead with an EIFD.
Okay, thank you.
And a resolution of intent to start that process.
Okay. And I do not think we have any other callers on the line.
No, we don't.
And I have a motion from Supervisor Serna to move forward with a resolution of intent for an EIFD, and I believe it was Supervisor Kennedy that seconded that motion, and so please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Frost recording a no vote. And for item 41, this is the report on COVID-19 response.
Good, good morning. One minute away.
Almost. Good, thank you.
How are you, Mr. Hunt?
Good morning, I am great. Good to be here with my trusted companion, Dr. Olivia Casiri, your health officer.
Good morning, Dr. Casiri.
Good morning.
Mostly good news. Wanted to bring you up to data on where we are, or at least where we were yesterday. This data was taken right off of the California Department of Health's website, and as you can see, we're still well above the cases per 100,000 to get down to the orange tier. But you know my footnote, and guess what? Today, we hit that 4 million mark, so the target just changed. And I just want to remind you of what I said before, the state targets are shifting sands. So we're closer. We also got some news that our seven-day average was up to nine. A lot of this is due to delayed reporting, some of it is due to youth sports, but as Dr. Casiri has, has said, that actually is not a significant concern, because we're able to contact those coaches, we've got the staff available to contact tracing, get those folks in quarantine, and that's not a major concern for us. So we've got a ways to go, but it's not bad news.
Jim, can I ask you before you, Madam Chair, you leave that slide? So, again, good news in the sense that, you know, the target adjusts to, I guess, a maximum 5.9.
Yes.
Where he's showing a 7.5, that's the same, same number we were at when you were here two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
And so that hasn't budged at all?
It's, it's been concerning, because it has fluctuated up to eight, maybe about 8.2, and then down to seven, and, but the average has been 7.5. So we have plateaued. Next week, we'll see that raise up to nine. It's going to go down from there. The data that the state is using is about a week old, so we're already down from that nine, and we are cautiously optimistic we'll go down from there. But it will be a few weeks before we hit that 5.9.
Okay, so, again, that was a good part, might have been a part of my question on this, then, I know there's, you know, building certainly, I think, some enthusiasm, obviously there's, you know, continued frustration with folks, too. So, without any certainty to it, are we still cautiously optimistic that by end of April, we could, you know, meet the numbers for the, the orange tier?
Yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Good, okay, very good.
Getting some very succinct responses.
Yeah, as I said, you must have listened to Britt earlier.
She didn't have to come down from the attic.
Yeah, no, that's right. Thank you, okay.
One thing, of course, that's of concern, is the difference between the equity positive, positivity rate, and that for the general population. We have narrowed that, and... We have narrowed that, and Dr. Casiri's staff have done a great job of reaching out to those vulnerable communities. But of course, that's, to some degree, counteracted by the movement to the MyTurn system statewide, where anybody in the state can make a reservation in Sacramento County and come get a vaccine. And the people who use that system by and large are computer literate and have access to computers. Many people in our lowest quartile don't. So those are opposing conditions, but we're getting closer. We meet the target, so that's still good news. More good news, the supply of first-dose allocations has increased dramatically. And one of the issues I know some of you were concerned about is are we getting our fair share? The 33,000 doses is 3.84% of the statewide total to local health departments. Our population is 3.88% of the state, so we are so close. And this is really because it's population-based. Right now, it's on the 50 and older, and in two weeks, it'll go to 16 and older. So we're going to get our fair share, so we're pleased with that. And I'm really pleased with this. This is what everybody wants, you know, a Beatles song, a ticket to ride. This is my ticket to travel. There you go, Supervisor Kennedy. Glad to see that. So at the correctional facilities, we continue to vaccinate. Dr. Damián is doing a great job there. And Dr. Casiri's assistance with getting a lot of the vaccines, especially the Janssen vaccines out there, really helps. But you can see the issue really is with the Moderna vaccine and getting the inmates a second vaccination. We have vaccinated 1,008 people, but only 701 have completed. And some of those who have not completed are still incarcerated, and we can reach them, but many are not. And Dr. Casiri's staff will have to try and track them down and get them their second dose, or they'll need to voluntarily go in and get their second dose.
Excuse me, Jim. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Jim, so relative to the incarcerated folks here in Sacramento County, do they get the same kind of card that you just showed for your own vaccination?
Yes.
And I have to believe that there's probably many instances, especially with regard to the main jail, where they get the first dose while incarcerated and a second dose when they're not. So is there, is there any particular challenges, given the fact that you have that split in condition when someone might receive the vaccination while they're incarcerated?
Dr. Casiri?
The challenge we have actually is getting them back for the second dose, but otherwise, all the doses are entered into a state system. So even if they get the first one when they're still incarcerated, if they show up again and they've lost their card, we can still look up the records and get them vaccinated for the second dose.
Got it. Thank you.
A particular concern is that more than half of the inmates contacted have refused the vaccine. And again, Dr. Casiri's staff will be going back for more education, but that's a concern. You want good news? This is good news. This projection was done by Luke Shield of California, and it is a projection, but they've advertised it widely, and quite honestly, we don't see any need to dispute it. But you can see how dramatically it ramps up from here, from April 6th to 13th to the 20th, just almost a doubling in two weeks. Whether that really happens or not is another situation, but it's very likely. And one of the things that has been a concern is the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, the Janssen vaccine, and the loss of those 11 million or 15 million doses out of Baltimore, whatever it was. California's been, or the US has been getting its supply mainly from the Netherlands. And in all that I've been able to get from the federal government and the state government, they don't believe it will have a significant, if any, impact on allocations. So what's really interesting is this statement that, on the manufacturing problem, Johnson &amp; Johnson said it was still planning to deliver 100 million of doses by the end of June, and it was aiming to deliver those by the end of May. So that's just exceptional news. This goes back to something I showed you a few weeks ago, where we've done a great job of vaccinating, unfortunately, for Sacramento County residents. Because it's based on where you live or where you work, we've been vaccinating an awful lot of people outside of Sacramento County. Now, with the MyTurn system, on Thursday, they're going to implement what they call geofencing, which means for the clinics that Dr. Casiri controls, we can fence off our clinics geographically, and when somebody outside the county tries to make an appointment, they will be asked two questions. Where do you live? And where do you work? And their addresses that they include in the MyTurn application are not verified. So somebody from San Francisco could make an appointment in Sacramento, use a Sacramento address, and we'd never know. But again, even with geofencing, it leaves us where we have been, that we will be vaccinating our people as well as people who work in Sacramento County. So we're behind because of that.
Supervisor Kennedy had a question.
Yeah, Jim, just for clarification on this, so I'm getting the numbers right. So it says, let's just use El Dorado County as an example, 16%. Does that mean that 16% of El Dorado County has been fully vaccinated? Or 16% of our vaccinations are from El Dorado County?
16% of El Dorado County residents are vaccinated.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if I could have the overhead for just a moment, please. And by the way, I wanted to show you this. This little tiny thing is where our medical professionals get six doses of the Pfizer vaccine, and it's these little tiny vials that make such a difference to all of us. So I would like to take the opportunity to read something to you that was published at 11:04 this morning. "California Will Retire Its Color-Coded Pandemic Blueprint On June 15th And Allow Almost All Sectors Of The Economy In All 58 Counties To Reopen At Or Near Full Capacity." "The move signals a dramatic shift in the state's pandemic response. In eight-and-a-half weeks, state officials expect to have enough vaccine that every person 16 and older in California will be able to make an appointment and get the shots in a timely manner, and they anticipate hospitalizations due to COVID-19 to remain very low. We are at a stage where we're ready to consider the next aspect of our pandemic response. We look at what is beyond the blueprint that has been guiding California since August. This means an end to our color-coded tiers. We can see the movies and go to the beach and see family. Importantly, the state's mask mandate will remain in place indefinitely, even as businesses and other operations reopen. That's largely to continue protecting those who will not be immunized by the summer, in particular, children who are not yet approved for vaccines." That's big news.
Yes, Supervisor Serna.
It is good news. Thank you, Jim. So on that last point, though, about, did you say, did you characterize it as a mask mandate will continue?
Yes.
Okay.
I should say, that's the words from the San Francisco Chronicle.
Okay. So it's not a mass, it's not a strong recommendation? It's still posed as a requirement from the State Department of Health Services?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Want to say that again?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, yes. The mandate that we have right now from CDPH will remain in place.
So for instance, I assume that between now and the 15th, we haven't brought this up lately in the last few meetings, but I assume in that span of time, we get to open these doors and have people back in here finally, so that they can petition their county government in person instead of having to rely on technology and phone system.
Yes, and actually, we, the state did release some guidance end of last week for meetings, but we had to ask for some clarification, because it wasn't clear which guidance we were supposed to use for public meetings. So I'm hoping to have a response pretty shortly, and I'll be able to share it with Clerk of the Board.
Okay. So I guess what I'm getting at is that I'm trying to envision what life's going to be like after the 15th, and I-
June 15th.
Yeah, that's right, June 15th. So we would have people here, but they'd still be masked. We'd be masked.
Yes.
Would they be social-distanced?
Yes.
Would we have Plexiglas?
Three feet or six?
The six feet for adults. The three feet only pertains to children in classrooms.
So we'd still have a capacity limit in here?
Yes. There will be capacity limit, and that's why we're requesting clarification from CDPH, because there are different types of guidance, and we needed to make sure that we were using the correct one.
So it's good news, but it's not that we're going to be fully-
We won't be back to normal pre-COVID, but it's definitely going to be an improvement from what we have right now.
And we need to keep in mind that we're still in the red tier. We have ways to go before we get into the orange, and this will happen in June.
I just, I ask those questions just because someone watching what you just said would could easily make the assumption, oh, that things are, things are going to be pre-COVID on June 16th.
Not yet.
No, not at all. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. That's good clarity. Supervisor Nottoli.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on that, because it occurred to me, you know, as good a news it is, and thank you for sharing the currency of it, Jim, that, you know, I've had comments, you know, in the last couple of weeks about, you know, when do we get to green? Well, just because that beyond-the-blueprint goes away doesn't mean we're getting to a full green. It's going to be some muted color of yellow to green in light of what we just described. I mean, you know, if there's still going to be a requirement for masks and for social distancing, for assemblies and so forth, it's a restoration of many things that obviously have been implemented, you know, and is being prohibited, and or guidance offered against it over the last year. It'll be, you know, a year and three months by the time we get to June 15th. But nonetheless, it's not a full reopening. It's a vast improvement. I wanted to ask as relates to that, and maybe this is something that you'll have more information on as the weeks move ahead here. Will this still require, then, once that that ends, June 15th, this colored-tiered approach, will it require emergency health orders, though, in order to, you know, guide activities in this county? Or will it be, you know, will it no longer require you, Dr. Casiri, to issue those health orders, and, you know, it'll be just a statewide application irrespective of county or city jurisdiction?
The health orders that we have, since they do follow the state, health order will go away.
Okay.
But as I mentioned, the masking mandate will still remain, and I think if we still have COVID-19, and if we're not back to normal, we'll still have the health emergency. But definitely, as we know more detail, we will let you know.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thanks.
Dr. Casiri?
I just have a-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Casiri. Supervisor Kennedy.
Okay.
Yes, I just have a few updates to add to what Jim Hunt has provided. I know that the supervisors have been very interested in knowing about the pop-up clinics that we've been setting up in, especially the health equity zip codes. And I did include some of the ones that have occurred in our update that we provided. But I do have some updates here, and I know probably some of you have received emails already about the upcoming clinics. But in case you are interested in either visiting or getting involved, I just wanted to make sure that you have that information. So I'll read through them real quickly. So we're planning one for Liberty Towers, and it will be, I believe, the 14th. And then Laetata Elementary School, 500. For Liberty Towers, it will be 2,000 doses. For Laetata Elementary School, 500, and that will also be on the 14th. Luther Burbank, we're planning to have 4,000, and that will be on the 19th. And Fruit Ridge, 200, and that will be on the 10th. For Thale Farms, 1,000. We're still determining the date for that. And then we also want to do one in Gault, and another 1,000, and that date is still to be determined. Gault Marketplace, 1,000 on the 18th. And Rancho Cordova, 1,000 on the 16th. SAC High, 1,500. The date is still to be determined. And also, with assistance from Supervisor Kennedy's staff, we are pursuing an MOU with Sears, so that we can use the old Florin Mall, the parking lot, and probably the building. I wanted also to give an update on the unhoused. So far, the vaccinations we've given among the, in the shelters is 392, and in the unsheltered is 493, for a total of 885. My last update is just to say that this week is National Public Health Week, and some of the topics that we are focusing on for this Public Health Week is rebuilding after COVID-19, advancing racial equity, and strengthening communities, and uplifting mental health and wellness. And again, want to thank you all for the support that you provided, because with the CARES money that we got, we were able to work very closely with community-based agencies, and we've been providing reports to you about the work that they've been doing. And I'm hoping that at some point, they will, you'll have representatives here who will give you testimony of, you know, how the support that they got, how it helped them through some difficult times. And so we are also, again, planning to be able to continue those partnerships and build on them. We recently just set up a stakeholder group to help us with making decisions on where we put the pop-up sites, and also on other decisions as we move forward with looking at health equity. So that's the end of my updates.
I just wanted to make note that June 15 is a Tuesday board meeting. So we may want to have a plan for that day, because I have a feeling there will be a lot of happy public comments. Hopefully, happy. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, we'll talk about that on the 16th. So the, a couple of questions. First of all, thank you very much with all the help in South Sacramento between Pennell and, and I think the Sears opportunity is huge. I mean, we have an indoor facility that's vacant and giant, and we can really accommodate, and so I really appreciate your support of that. On the Laetata Floyd, you said there's 500 doses, I believe. Are those going to be limited to the people who live across the street in the two public housing complexes?
Yes, we are targeting the people who live in that neighborhood.
Okay, because I think there's like 750 or something like that, so it's still short. So that's why I'm hoping we do, because it will also go a long way to help us with our health equity criteria.
Right, and it won't be the last time, but sometimes, and probably you've noticed that for some of the clinics, the capacity varies. For some, it's 4,000, others 2,000, 1,000. It's all depending on the space, and also the capacity, and also the resources to support. But it doesn't mean that if we do it once, we won't do it again. Also to point out that with these, we are actually using the Johnson. So one dose. We're very appreciative that, you know, we're getting more of that, and there's been a very good response from the public. They all just get one shot, they're done with it. So it's quite popular.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Kay and Jim. Appreciate everything you're doing, and especially getting these clinics up and running in Foothill Farms. I'm still beating the bushes to find, you know, locations in North Highlands and West Ardern Arcade. You know, what I'm finding is, even though we have that clinic in McClellan, which is right there, you know, next to North Highlands, a lot of folks in those communities, you know, they want one in North Highlands, because obviously, the mobility issues, the access issues, and just the comfort level, I think, makes it really important to have one closer home for them. So we keep working with your office, and Mike has been great in your office, so really I appreciate that. When it comes to the unhoused, you mentioned 885 total?
Correct, yes.
So, you know, I know we're working with your office. We sent Carmichael Presbyterian Church, that works very closely with Carmichael Heart, and they're kind of an- kind of an epicenter for, for, um, uh, homeless resources out in, in my district, in Carmichael anyway, um, and we'll continue to follow up on that, but boy, aren't the projections that we have, maybe we're at about 10,000, uh, unhoused individuals in Sacramento County? Any, any thoughts on, on what you're gonna do to, to improve on those numbers? Because I imagine it's a very difficult population to get, get vaccinated, of course, but can you tell me a little bit about your, your plans going, going forward with the homeless population?
Yes, thank you. So a couple of things we are doing, one is working with the, uh, homeless service providers to do the outreach. We are also going to have nurses that will also go into the, the different shelters as well as going to the unhoused to be able to, uh, provide education, because what we've found is sometimes it takes more than one visit to convince them, and so we'll have nurses to be able to do that and, uh, do, uh, be able to go as many times as possible. We are also actually working on a contract with, um, actually I think they've already started with the, uh, MIH units that we used very successfully for doing testing within the, uh, long-term care facilities. They're now moving over to assisting us with, uh, uh, the vaccination in the homeless shelters, so that I think will speed things up a bit. It will take some time because, um, as, uh, we've all mentioned, that sometimes it takes a while to build that trust and get them to actually get the vaccination.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I, I want to, uh, echo the thanks and appreciation certainly to, uh, Jim Hunt and to Dr. Casiri for, you know, the weekly reports, uh, and again, obviously we've been in session more frequently, so you get to spend the, the mornings with us just about every, every Tuesday, and, and, uh, get to hear about all the other things that they, that are going on in the county, but again, this is obviously, uh, you know, of highest priority, and certainly, uh, I think the currency of the information and your assessment and keeping us informed, and the work that goes on with everything from, you know, clinic sites to testing to, uh, I think, uh, the partnerships that we've developed over time, certainly over the last year. You mentioned this week's Public Health Week, I think the whole last year has been Public Health Year, uh, and, you know, and more than just in, in, in a, in a resolution format, certainly, uh, all the tremendous efforts in this community and certainly, you know, in our state and nation around the world by public health, uh, providers has been, you know, it's been truly the, the, you know, mark of the, the difference in, I think, uh, you know, that we're seeing today, but, um, again, thank you for, for, for your, your, your good works. I wanted to ask about, I think Jim, you'd sent, and you mentioned the clinic as you were reading through the, one at the Gault Market, uh, in 1,000 doses. I know there's gonna be, you know, work with some of the partners, uh, to, um, do outreach to, uh, farm workers and farm worker families. I think the logistics though, uh, I mean, it's during the week, it's on, if I'm not mistaken, it was gonna be on the, on the 18th?
18th.
18th. I'm just concerned that folks who are employed right now, and obviously we're not in harvest season, we're in planting season, and certainly with some of the crops that you see in, in this county and in the region, people are busy, and I see them in the fields, uh, as I leave my house nearly every day, and, you know, with some of the trees and vines and so forth. Is there any ability, um, again, without having a specific site, but to, I know you're working with La Familia and with others, and, and I, I mentioned South County Services, they're a small provider, they don't have a lot of capacity, but they certainly have contacts with a lot of those families and, and, and maybe, uh, parties of, of interest. Is there any way to, if you had a team, uh, you know, you mentioned our, um, a team of folks that assisted with the assisted living, but we could actually, with either the farm labor contractors and/or the, uh, you know, the operators, uh, of some of the farms and ranches, some of the larger ones anyway, where, you know, during noon time or before their, you know, their, their, um, assignment ends on any given day, 'cause a lot of them are out there very early, they're out, you know, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock in the morning, and, you know, and they wind up, uh, mid-afternoon. Is there any way we could get out to those folks in a, in a way we could actually take it to them so that, you know, if we work with the employers and, um, I have nothing else, have a, you know, a pop-up right on the, right on the farm, right on the ranch, right at the, right at the vineyard, uh, the orchard, uh, and, uh, you know, some of these are larger than others, so again, I, you know, there's, there's realities of that. So I guess that's my question now.
Yes, we, um, we have had, uh, pop-ups before, and I believe it was with one of our pharmacy partners, I forget which one, I don't wanna be wrong, but, uh, yes, we have had pop-ups where we're working with, uh, the operators or the employers and actually going to the farms, and we will do more of those. We have also worked with the Mexican consulate to be able to offer more of those opportunities, so we'll continue to do that.
Okay, and I, I know you worked with the Farm Bureau and with ranchers and farmers who, again, you know, you had a pretty successful one, I think, in, in Elk Grove or at one of the pharmacies, uh, recently, but I'm just wondering as we get, you know, deeper into the, uh, growing season here, um, you know, some of those, you know, efforts where there, you know, a lot of manual labor involved early on, those folks may not, you know, return until, you know, harvest time later in the summer, and I think the idea with, with equity and so forth is to try to, you know, while these folks are, you know, certainly, you know, you know, not, not only employed, but working here in our county and certainly in the region to try to get to them and to their families, and, and, uh, I think if school returns, there's certainly an entree there, I think, with some of, you know, the folks who obviously have children and, and such, but, um, if my office can be of assistance in any way, I mean, I don't have a lot of contacts with, you know, certainly farm labor contractors and so forth, but there, you know, there are any number of folks that, you know, between San Joaquin County, obviously, Yolo, Solano, um, and probably, uh, up and down the valley, that might be of assist that could help, you know, us, you know, make a contact and, you know, 'cause I think the, the window of opportunity with some of these folks is gonna be, be lost, uh, over, you know, of course, you know, a few, a matter of few more weeks, you know, they're gonna either move on or they're gonna be employed elsewhere and, uh, maybe not in the same numbers that we're seeing right now with the, with the pruning and tying off the vines and so forth, and, 'cause, you know, as I said, you know, there's 30 or 40 people, uh, you know, working in one individual vineyard and have been over the last week and a half, you know, just, just, you know, not too distant from my house, so. I also just wanted to, to ask real quickly, the, um, uh, with the, the vaccines that we're receiving then, are there any other ones that are contemplated? You know, there are other folks, you know, you know, the AstraZeneca is not being used here, but...
Not yet.
And there's others that are under development, is there a couple others that are awaiting approval that would open up more vaccines, as should they get the, uh, CDC and FDA approval?
Um, my understanding so far is the AstraZeneca that's in that process, but I don't know when that's going to happen, but, uh, I also understand that we're going to have, um, uh, that supply is going to increase, um, for the ones that we have right now, and, um, also I wanted to point out something you mentioned about families. So for all of these clinics in the health equity zip codes, we can actually vaccinate the entire family, that's an exception that was made for medical, uh, so we don't need to wait until next week to be able to, to provide it to anybody o- over the age of 18, which, since we're using Johnson, we can only go down to 18, but otherwise, yes.
Okay, but, but I guess my question, so AstraZeneca is the only other one that's pending, there's no other, uh, vaccine manufacturers that have, um, you know, vaccines that are pending before, for approval?
I'm not aware of any others.
Okay.
I could check into it and see.
No, I just was, I, again, I just...
The, the practical matter is that, given that chart I showed you and the supply we're gonna be getting, we will have an oversupply by summer, and so there's, we're not looking for any other vaccines.
That's...
And it will take a good effort for us to ramp up to actually administer the volume that we will be getting in the coming months.
Right, and we have sufficient resources to do that, I guess, going back to the discussion we had in chambers many months ago, but, so you have sufficient resources, assuming you can get the personnel and the partners?
Yes, yes, we're working very closely with our partners.
Okay, but we're funded, so we have the funding available?
Yes, we have the funding.
So, okay, that's not the challenge. One, one last thing, I mean, I don't know if there are callers on the line, but we did, maybe this is back to, to Ann and, and Bruce, but, uh, you know, as we're looking at COVID relief funds, separate apart from the, the health, uh, issues here, others who are seeking some relief because of, in costs they're incurring, and, and I know we receive, often receive correspondence from park districts, uh, you know, and, and they continue to trickle in, so I think it needs to be a part of our consideration. And lastly, where, with the meals, uh, the dining-in program, we extended that to the end of this month, I believe, but if, if the blueprint doesn't go away until June 15th, are we, uh, looking at something that would allow us to ramp down rather than just to, to, to end it on April 30th or to transition for folks that we know are, you know, are, you know, food fragile as it relates to, or vulnerable, uh, because of, now they've been identified, obviously, through the processes that we've utilized with Area 4, so where are we at with that?
So, we are, uh, the current date is April 30th, as you mentioned.
Yeah, yeah.
And DCFAS is working very hard to try to transition particularly the most fragile of those families over to Meals on Wheels, and they're working with the, uh, area agency and agency to that effect, and I can provide you a full update on that, but it's an active effort that they have on that. We're still targeted though for the 30th, and, uh, we are looking at this new source of funding that you just mentioned Supervisor, to see if that provides any opportunities, but at this point it is the 30th, and we're trying to transition those families.
Okay, could, could, if I can make one last statement then, the thing is, it's, it's very critical, 'cause in, in years past, we've had a waiting list for Meals on Wheels, and we've done a really good job in recent years of, I think, certainly with board support and DCAFS and, and others, uh, to, um, you know, you know, to, to really narrow that down, if not, to not have a waiting list, particularly for those that are fragile or vulnerable.
Right.
And there are assessments made in the field on that, but I would like to say that, you know, there should be no gap, if we've identified folks as being fragile or vulnerable, that, you know, somehow there's gonna be this waiting list, and there's gonna be, you know, so if we can, you know, have some assurance as you work through this, uh, at various levels, that we're not gonna have some window where, you know, 80 or, you know, I'll just pick a number, you know, whatever number of folks that we know, but we haven't got enough capacity in Meals on Wheels to transition them and do it, you know, quickly with a, you know, with a, basically a seamless handoff, and so if we could have some information regarding that, I, I trust if you say that's what we're gonna do, but...
Yep.
You know, making sure that, that that's actually gonna be, uh, occurring, I think is really important, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Dr. Casiri, you mentioned a number of pop-up locations and the corresponding, uh, number of doses that, um, are being assigned. The, the one location you mentioned was Fruit Ridge, I assume you mean Fruit Ridge Community Collaborative?
Yes, that's correct.
And I believe you cited 200 doses.
Correct.
That's one of our, uh, uh, most challenged neighborhoods in the unincorporated county, the area around that, uh, that school, uh, former school site, um, and you, you've certainly underscored several times in your presentation today the fact that, um, there'll be other opportunities, uh, to perhaps have, um, um, vaccine available at these sites, uh, depending on future allocations. Is that particular site, uh, receiving the lowest number of doses that you recited because of, uh, constraints on the site? That, I mean...
Yes, it was constraints on the site, um, and also this is the first time that they're having it, so, we, when we've been working with different, um, uh, agencies, sometimes they want to start small and make sure that they, you know, they, they work out all the kinks, and then if, if everything goes smoothly, then sometimes they do ramp up, so this doesn't mean that it will stay at 200. It's, it's just that that's what they wanted at this time, but we can, we'll definitely look at how it goes and then make adjustments.
Uh, you and I and my chief of staff, Lisa Naba, we, the three of us talked, I think it was two Mondays ago, about, um, uh, my office helping to sponsor something at that particular site.
Yes.
So I just wanna say publicly that I'm still very interested in doing that. I know that the one that's, that you're referencing was planned before, I think you and I talked about it, but, um, assuming it all goes well, um, on the 10th, when that, uh, site will, um, provide vaccines, um, I'd like to see us, uh, do what we can to, uh, stay focused on that, um, that site, and you'll recall during our conversation, um, that's one of our birth and beyond sites. I think we should be looking at all of our birth and beyond sites and all of our family resource centers, um, as, uh, places that we should be offering, uh, the vaccine, so I'm hoping that there's strong coordination with, uh, with, with the, the right, uh, personnel to see that, um, we take advantage of those, uh, those sites.
Yes, we have been working with them and also the Black Child Legacy, so those are, and that's how we came up with some of these sites actually, and they're providing the, uh, resources, uh, to be able to, um, make sure that everything runs well.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, this is probably from Ms. Edwards. When are we going to hear about the latest Relief Act monies? I just wanna, you know, make sure that the board is out ahead of it this time, and we don't, um, make the communication errors that we made in previous go-arounds, and, for a couple of reasons, one is the confusion, but also, I, I fear the expectation, because people keep throwing out these huge numbers, um, that, like, is often the case, that this money in people's minds out in the community is gonna be spent five times over, and we're talking one-time money, um, so I just wondered when we're going to be a part of that discussion.
Yes, thank you for asking, the, um, I, I suspect that money's been spent about 10 times, uh, based on information I have, so, um, we internally, in my office, have been looking at, okay, who can lead the effort on this? We wanna have a strategic plan on how we're gonna spend that money and not, um, do these one-offs, a, a real good plan, and so we've come to the conclusion that we need some help with that, and so we are in conversation with two consultant vendors that have experience doing this in other states and other, um, local governments, and we are poised to make a decision this week that we will bring to your board on the 20th, uh, for contract authority to enter into an agreement with a consulting firm, and they've got some, both vendors have some great plans on how we can do this very quickly so that we get ahead of it, but that we actually have a plan for spending, understanding it is one-time money, we do have a longer period of time to spend it, we have until 2024, uh, but it is one-time money, and, um, so we're, we will bring that to you, um, on the 20th.
Thank you, I appreciate that approach, you know that the word "plan" is one of my favorites, so I, I do appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy. And at this time, I know we have, I believe we have some folks on the phone, there were three individuals, Emily Fulton from El Camino Parks and Rec, Paula Hansen from South Gate Parks and Rec, and Mike Heller from Rio Linda Parks and Rec, who had requested to, um, make a, a public comment, um, and give us an update on some of the things that are happening, uh, within the park districts and the ways that they're, the experience they're having with COVID and homelessness and so forth, so I think we'll bring them first, and then we'll see if there are any other callers after that. Yep, and they're on the line now. Okay, great, and, good morning, I, I'm assuming Emily Fulton is going to shout?
Yes. Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors, for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Emily Ballas, and I'm the General Manager of Fulton El Camino Recreation and Park District. I'm joined by my colleague, Mike Keller of Rio Linda, Alberta Recreation and Park District, and Paula Hansen of South Gate Recreation and Park District, and we represent the county's Recreation and Park Special Districts and are here to discuss the impacts of COVID on our agency. Recreation and Park Districts have experienced what I like to call a COVID trifectum, it's the loss of revenue due to closed programs and rentals, exponential higher expenses due to our parks seeing record use, while at the same time being left out of all COVID relief funding. Recreation and Park Districts have been at the forefront of welcoming residents to our parks, providing an oasis from the pandemic. When Governor Newsom invited people to go to parks as a respite from the lockdown, our districts answered the call and we stayed open, and we continue to provide diverse services during this unprecedented time. We've expanded our affordable care, uh, childcare services and educational support. My district has a police department that partners with nine other districts for patrols throughout our county footprint, ensuring our parks stay safe. Some of our districts are now serving as vaccine locations, and we all work compassionately daily with the homeless population who have taken up residence in our parks over the last year. While we rose to the challenge of 2020, our agencies have not received the financial support necessary to ensure our recreation and park services continue to be available. Both federal relief packages failed to directly allocate any funding to Recreation and Park Special Districts, simply because we fall outside the federal government's definition of a government agency. We aren't a city, we're not a county, and we're not a state, and as a government agency, that means we don't qualify as a business or a nonprofit. This means our agencies have suffered financial hits, yet we've received $0 in relief. We know that you all appreciate our work, and we know that you all value the contribution... We know that you all appreciate our work, and we know that you all value the contributions Recreation and Park Districts make in our communities. And now we need you to know how thinly we've been stretched financially providing these services for county residents. Today, we ask that you consider allocating County COVID Relief and Rescue Plan funding to Recreation and Park Special Districts, so we may be able to maintain our critical and essential services. I thank you for your time and attention to this important discussion, and I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Mike Heller of Rio Linda, Alberta.
Thank you, Emily. And thank you, Chair Frost and the Sacramento Board of Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Mike Heller. I'm a county resident and active park user, and currently the district administrator for the Rio Linda, Alberta Recreation and Park District. As Emily had said, parks have remained open during the complete COVID-19 pandemic. This was encouraged by the governor, and more importantly, it made sense for our constituents. Parks and open space provide an essential service to the residents that use them. They allow for children to play, as well as adults to recreate and improve both their mental and physical well-being. Since the beginning of the pandemic, like many, special districts have faced the challenges of high unemployment costs, employee safety, personal protective equipment, enhanced custodial services, and increase in materials to keep our amenities safe for our residents, and most importantly, a large revenue loss from council programs and classes. Additionally, special districts have and continue to provide such things as childcare, educational learning hubs, outdoor recreation, the delivery of meal services for seniors, modified special events, and that's just to name a few. My district has been providing additional services to assist in reaching the needs of our community in collaboration with other public agencies like our local school district. These additional services and the training involved have proved to be more expensive than anticipated as we comply with COVID-19 guidelines and safety requirements. Unlike many other sectors within the county, including local governments, businesses, and nonprofits, special districts have not received any financial support to date to meet the increased needs and demands of the response. Recreation and Park Districts are more than just a green patch of open space. We offer many valuable programs and classes to local residents. We also stage large community events that often attract a regional audience. These programs and events are often the lifeblood of our clientele. It allows residents to attend a local, well-planned activity that is safe, convenient, and neighborly. Recreation and Park Districts have had to think outside of a box that didn't exist a year ago to continue to offer these events both safely and within the guidelines stipulated by the California Department of Public Health. Often, this has created additional expenses which were not budgeted for. But rather than disappointing community audience, we've chosen to pursue these events. A lot of Recreation and Park Districts have rental facilities for all sorts of milestone events, including weddings, anniversaries, quinceañeras, memorial services, fundraisers, et cetera. This is a serious revenue generator for the districts, and this has all had to be canceled over the past year. Once again, funding that the districts will not be able to recover causing us to look at additional cutbacks to other programming. The Recreation and Park Districts in Sacramento County need help. As was stated previously, we were overlooked during the distribution of the CARES Act funding, and both the federal and state government bypasses again under the American Rescue Plan Act. As a group, we haven't closed. As a group, we continue to find different and unique ways to keep our residents engaged. As a group, we provide a very essential service. And as a group, we need your help to keep our services and programs functioning. Our request for funding is based on the true numbers of incurred expenses due to the continued lost revenue. Your constituents are our biggest customer. Let's work together to keep them engaged in their local parks and programs. And always remember, parks do make life better. I'd like to introduce Paula Hansen from the South Gate Recreation and Park District at this point.
Thank you, Mike.
Hey. Good afternoon, Chair Frost and members of the board. My name is Paula Hansen. I'm the Administration Manager for South Gate Recreation and Park District, where we provide recreation and park services to the South Sacramento area. All of us in Recreation and Parks take pride in building and maintaining clean, safe parks and providing positive recreational opportunities for the community. During the pandemic, people in the community are following the advice of public health officials by visiting parks more frequently, walking, jogging, biking, and picnicking. And many people have rediscovered tennis, golf, and swimming, all of which have been very popular in the past year. During the pandemic, Recreation and Park Districts throughout Sacramento have continued providing essential services with modifications that support public health and reduce the risk of transmitting COVID-19. However, Recreation and Park Districts have not received any funding from the CARES Act, Coronavirus Relief Fund. These relief fund programs have helped individuals, private businesses, state government, and other local governments, but no funding has been made available to Recreation and Park Districts. Paying the increased cost of operating during the pandemic without reimbursement will require Recreation and Park Districts to reduce service levels in the future. In order to continue providing services, we've invested in safety supplies such as face masks, gloves, and hand sanitizers, additional cleaning services, HVAC system improvements, facility barriers and improvements to protect employees. We've experienced high unemployment insurance costs and emergency paid sick leave to employees. For South Gate Recreation and Park Districts, the costs over the past 12 months were over $275,000, and we expect the cost for the next 12 months to be over $180,000, as we need to continue things like distancing and the mask mandate and so on. The pandemic has heightened the importance of our services over the past year, and the Sacramento Recreation and Park Districts request your support. As you allocate funds from the American Rescue Plan Act and any remaining funds from the CARES Act and Coronavirus Relief Fund, please include Recreation and Park Districts and make funding a priority for these agencies, who have supported and will continue to support the directives of public health officials. Relief funding will allow us to continue to provide essential services and continue to promote health, wellness, and the ongoing recovery of the Sacramento community. I'd like to call by thanking you for the opportunity for the three of us to address your board today, on behalf of all 12 Recreation and Park Districts in Sacramento. We appreciate your consideration of this request, and we'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Paula. Supervisor Serna has a question.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure that the three speakers understand that the noticed action today is simply to receive a report that we get at every board hearing from our public health officer and our Director of Health Services here. Your request, your mutual request, is not lost on us, I'm sure. But I just want to make sure you understand that we couldn't act on this today the way you advocated, because it hasn't been noticed as such. And I don't know that, Ms. Edwards, we've even received any of the funding yet, correct?
We have not.
Okay.
That's expected to come the middle of May, and we also still don't have the actual regulations and guidelines from the federal government on how it can be spent. But that is something that we'll be working with our consultants on. It'll probably be the middle of May before we come back with a plan and a recommendation. But we do have the request from the park districts, along with some, many of the others that we have received.
Very good.
And, yeah, and they are aware. I met with some of the parks, park districts, and recommended that they come and let, you know, speak during the COVID update with public comments so that the entire board would have, have an idea of what's going on, the hardship that they're going through in the park districts. So this was more of a, just making us aware and, and getting, I guess, being exposed before the last minute when the money's already doled out. They, they want to be in the, hopefully in your, in our minds while we're thinking about what our communities need.
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to point, point, point out the Brown Act limitations, but also the fact that from a process standpoint, we really don't have anything to decide on yet. But all of that said, it's certainly not lost on me, the, the challenge that our local park districts have had over the last 13, 14 months. And I didn't want us to just hear from them today and then leave it a mystery as to what our disposition is concerning their request.
Yeah, that's much appreciated, and we know it's not lost on you because you're the champion of parks. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to echo Supervisor Serna's and Chair Frost's comments, and want to thank Emily, Mike, and Paula for calling in. I know Emily well, I've worked alongside her at Fulton El Camino. And, and, you know, our county exec, we've had, you and I have had multiple discussions about the importance of this, and we've talked about the impact of parks. I have about eight different park districts in District 3, several of which are dependent park districts as well. So I think we got to make sure that we, when we, when we have the discussion about how to spend the federal funds and eligibility, and maybe there might be some avenues for specific funding sources for, for the park districts, let's make sure we don't neglect the, the dependent park districts as well. And they've been doing just great yeoman's work during this pandemic. And I can testify firsthand to the sacrifices that the park employees and the, and the top management in these park districts have, have provided to make sure that, that people have had this outdoor amenity in, when it's been needed more than ever. So I certainly thank the three of you for calling, and I'll be having follow-up discussions with, with you about this. And I know all the board members are, I think, equally concerned about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. And I think we do still have a couple of other callers, but Supervisor Natoli had a comment.
If you have other callers, I can hold my comments if you'd like. People have been on hold for a long time, so if you want to take, you have callers on this item?
How many more callers do we have?
We at least have one.
Okay, let's go ahead. I'm fine, I can hold my comments still then, yeah.
Please transfer the caller. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, so this is Gabrielle Ingram with District 2. I just wanted to say that we'll be interested to hear the plan for the public being allowed back in session, including what the accommodation will be for people who cannot medically tolerate any form of facial covering, whether that's a mask shield or otherwise. Obviously, the board does not have an answer for that now, but whether public health proposes a solution or not, this is a county public building and private property cannot be cited. The CDPH guidelines have stated before, though I don't know what they say currently, that masks are for when social distancing cannot be obtained. If there's a six-foot social distance requirement, as was discussed in this meeting, there should be no issue logically, but as this year has shown, the rules change with the wind. So definitely have a plan for those that cannot medically tolerate a mask. Rancho Cordoba City Council, Nevada County, and others have made accommodations over the year for various reasons, but they could possibly be resources to as you find a solution. My suggestion by the end of the June 1st meeting, not June 16th, as was joked about, because the people will come June 15th, and your employees, the security guards, the building manager, they deserve a plan in place beforehand. There's been so much medical discrimination over the last year that it's guaranteed that some of you will come that falls into that category. So I urge you, have a plan in place, be ready. And I'm a resource if you want to help, you know, if you want help to strategize that, by all means, reach out. But definitely plan something, and we look forward to hearing it by June 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that our last caller?
That's your last caller.
Okay, great. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just, just real quickly, as you look at park districts, I know that we have three county service areas, or four county service areas, that provide services as well. I don't know if there've been incurred costs, you know, the county staff supports those in, you know, some of our more rural outline areas. And so if there are considerations for any increased costs, again, there are park facilities that have been utilized as appropriate over time as well. So, and I wanted to thank Dr. Casiri, and I don't know how much Jim had involvement with it, but certainly in recent time. Last year, we directed that we work on Wi-Fi in, with a number of park districts, and we partnered with several of the park districts, some of who are on the line here today. And that opportunity will continue to be available as we work our way out of the pandemic. But I just, I wanted to note that, I know it took a while, our DTEC folks as well, I know that David Vail, along with others, had involvement in the contract negotiations, providers, and so forth, but that's a real important aspect. And as we're into the spring portion of the year now and moving to summer months, hopefully folks, whether they, you know, fully return to school or not, can take advantage of that, the youth can, but others as well. So I wanted to just thank our folks. It took a lot of, a lot of effort, and I know we were updated, you know, very frequently, but it came about. And thanks to our park district partners, but certainly to our county staff as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Okay, with that, I do not have any more callers and no more comments from the board. I want to thank Jim Hunt and Dr. Casiri for the, the good news, that we're all very excited, and it looks like we have some things to think through by June, which is coming up fast. And at this time, we will recess to close session on the 7th floor, break for lunch, and reconvene here at 2:00 PM.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are back from our morning session, and this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is called back to order. And I wonder if the clerk would please call the rule to establish quorum.
Yes. Good afternoon, Supervisors Desmond.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. And Supervisor Kennedy will not be with us this afternoon. We will miss him. And with that, we'll move directly, there were no items to report out from our closed session, and we will move directly into our first item.
Okay. Item 42, this is the Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for the Howe Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project, Cottage Way to El Camino Avenue, Great Highway LLC, a California limited liability company located at 2120 El Camino Avenue. The environmental document is an environmental impact report.
Good afternoon, Chair Frost and members of the board. I'm Peter Hannon, Program Manager, Acquisition Section of the Real Estate Division, and I'm here today to reintroduce this item, which recommends board approval for resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interest for the Department of Transportation's Howe Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project, Cottage Way to El Camino Avenue. On February 23, 2021, the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to approve the resolution of necessity for 2323 Howe Avenue and, and continued action on 2120 El Camino Avenue until April 6, 2021. During the hearing, the board requested that Department of General Services and the Department of Transportation staff meet with the property owner of 2120 El Camino Avenue to review the proposed improvements and discuss the owner's project design concerns and address traffic incident information. Subsequent to the hearing on February 23, there have been, there has been robust dialogue, email communications, and two onsite meetings between county staff and the property owner. The first meeting, onsite property meeting, occurred on March 5, 2021. County staff from DGS and Sacramento Department of Transportation met with the property owner onsite. The owner reiterated his concerns about the project. As a result, the county will accommodate the owner's request regarding driveway width and modifications to the proposed bus stop pad. The second meeting occurred on March 26. County staff from DGS and Sacramento Department of Transportation met a second time with the property owner's representatives onsite to further discuss design elements, measure and mark the properties affected driveways. During the meeting, the owner's representatives asked for a one-foot wide curb along the back side of the sidewalk and additional parking bollards to be placed. The county has agreed to add additional curbing to the project improvements. The Department of Transportation staff are still currently analyzing the owner's parking bollard request. The next item that the board asked staff to discuss with the property owner was the traffic incident information in the area for the property. Over the two-year period covering the calendar years 2018 and 2019, there were 40 reported collisions on Howe Avenue between Delma and El Camino. Nine were injury collisions. This translates to a two-year average rate, accident rate of 10.9 accidents per million vehicle miles, which is more than double the county-wide average for similar roadways. Based on this data, Sacramento Department of Transportation anticipates a 35% decrease in collisions with the installation of a continuous raised median at this location. Due to the accident history on Howe Avenue and adjacent property, and to the adjacent property- history on Howe Avenue and adjacent property, and to the adjacent property, the County of Sacramento cannot accommodate the property owner's request to eliminate the proposed median at this location. The raised median along this frontage is a critical component of the project, which will significantly improve public safety at this location. The county acknowledges that a raised median will prohibit left turn ingress and egress to the subject property from Howe Avenue. However, U-turns are currently permitted and will continue to be permitted from northbound Howe Avenue to southbound Howe Avenue at the El Camino Avenue signal, which is approximately 125 feet north of the subject parcel. The property will have safe and efficient ingress egress northbound and southbound Howe Avenue, as well as eastbound and westbound El Camino Avenue. Considering the factors outlined above, county staff continue to support the installation of a raised median across the Howe Avenue frontage of the subject property. If you have any questions regarding the project, I or other project team members currently present are available to address those questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you Peter. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you Madam Chair, and I thank you very much for the additional outreach to the property owner. I went out there myself, met with Steve, and looked at the traffic patterns myself, and the ingress and egress issues, and have reviewed the additional data. So I really appreciate that collision data, which to me is pretty compelling. Can you explain a little bit what the changes are in relation to that bus stop right in front of the, or right near the 2120?
I think I'll allow Melissa Wright with the Department of Transportation to explain the details on the bus pad.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Melissa.
So our current standard for bus stops are seven feet by 28 feet, the rectangular dimension for the pad. After meeting with the property owner onsite, we have agreed to narrow the bus pad down. As you can see here, we have a three by 14 foot. So we have narrowed this down out of concerns for the aisle width between the parking here and the back of the bus pad.
Okay, so it's really just so it won't, to reduce the amount it might interfere with traffic patterns inside his parking lot?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we've narrowed that up to allow for space for that.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And on the issue with the, with the ballards, can you explain, what is, what is he asking for?
I believe the original request was ballards along the back of the curb here, on both sides of the driveways. So we're looking, we're going to be working with him on how the best, the best design for that.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. I'll, some more comments after.
No problem. Whenever you want to talk, you can talk. Thank you Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just a question for Melissa. I appreciate the additional data, and certainly can look to Supervisor Desmond's, you know, leadership on this issue. But I wanted to ask about this collision summary report that we received. I found it at least noteworthy that in every case in this list, that sobriety had not been determined, and secondly, that there was never a cell phone in use. Now, is that data based upon what, what you're given from the CHP, or is this pending their investigations? Because, again, ever the severity of the accidents, and I think you certainly have made the case, and we're not talking about near misses here, now we're talking about actual collisions, but I guess I'm asking about this data, first time I've seen it in this format, and I think it was, you know, helpful to understand, you know, what you, you know, certainly have put forth as relative to the number of collisions. But do you get a final report? Because, again, I think that certainly, when you're looking at correctable accidents, if there's a sobriety issue, then that certainly, you know, gets, I believe it gets accounted for a little differently than if it's, you know, something correctable in the sense that if you have a center median prevents left turns. So I'm curious Melissa, so, you know, is this very early information that never gets updated in our system, or is this all we get from the CHP? I'm curious.
I believe all of this information comes from the CHP traffic collision reports. Whether those get updated, if there's updates by the CHP to these reports, like you say, as if, if there's sobriety factors that are discovered after the initial report is filed, I'd have to research that with our traffic section that handles the reports.
Well, because if you're looking for correctable accidents, I mean, you know, it's either has been not determined or apparently not known, that was the statement, that if you're going to actually validate that accidents are correctable, then you need to know something about why the accident occurred beyond that two cars or more hit each other, or pedestrian got hit or whatever. And I guess I'm asking that because, again, you know, this is a major effort, and, you know, obviously, we're looking at this location, but having a little bit of familiarity with requests for stop signs and other things, and we look at correctable accidents in a certain period of time, that if sobriety is really not taken into account, it's just if you're running into each other, when does it become too much? And so I'm curious, and I see Steve coming down here, so, not that it changes anything that I, any opinion I have about this matter, but I just, this was helpful. I've not seen it in this format, but it also seemed to be very preliminary in the sense that there's really no update provided here. This is, you know, I guess if somebody was taken away and they were at the scene, but they're still presumed innocent until, obviously, there's some other determination made through sobriety, but that must get entered into somebody's system, right?
So typically, when an accident is deemed correctable, in this case, most of them are being deemed correctable because the movement that they were actually making during the accident will be precluded by the project. So just by, by the nature of the project, they won't be able to make the movement they were making during the accident. So by virtue of that, it is correctable.
It'd be a little bumpier ride across the median. If they were repaired, you know, people, you see stranger things in your career, I'm sure.
That is true.
I'm sure Mr. Desmond has too, so. But again, I, to your point, well, and then I'm going to take you back to the stop sign, because I get, well, you know, we don't have, at these rural intersections, and it's still a real point of interest with me, Mr. Hartwigs heard this, so did Mr. Mercari, that, you know, we look at this period of time, we don't have the same volumes and so forth, and you're always looking at correctable accidents. And, and yet, when we had one where we had, actually had a, you know, either speed or impaired driver, and somebody got killed, that wasn't enough to, to, to basically justify a stop sign. And so the reason I ask is severity, there's some accounting for that in here, property damage, somebody complaining of injury and so forth. And do we keep this data then for all of our locations? Do you get this?
We do. I don't know if we have a sunset where we get rid of it. I would need to report back to you on that.
Okay. Well, I'd be interested. I've got a briefing with DOT next Monday, and so, Steve, I know you participate, and, again, I'm still not giving up on some of my rural areas where I and other members of the constituencies that I represent believe a stop sign would be warranted, and we've taken a real hard-line position on correctable accidents, and that's why I pushed this point a bit here today, so.
Well, we can certainly, I'll check with that side of the shop.
Okay.
We'll be ready to answer those questions about the accident reporting for you at the briefing.
Okay, good, thanks. I appreciate it. This is good information. So thanks Melissa, thanks Steve.
Thank you. Did that conclude your presentation, Peter? Okay. And at this time, I believe the property owner may be on the phone. Is that Tony Brawl?
Yes, can you, hello?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Brawl. At this time, if you wanted to make some comments, it would be appropriate.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about the project. We couldn't really, we have some audio issues, so we couldn't really follow the whole hearing so far, but, you know, in regards to the project, as we discussed, we're all in favor of the project. Closing the median and limiting, not having access to turn left into the complex going north and how into the complex is going to create some complications for our center, and I, and we feel like it could contribute to possibly safety issues and possibly, God forbid, more accidents. So in regards to the four items, the arguments regarding this project that we feel like it should be altered. Number one is, the way the Howe Avenue Bike and Pedestrian Improvement Project is planned, we don't feel like it's required or necessary. We feel like there's better alternatives to achieve what we're trying to do here. In regards to the second item, in reviewing, in reviewing the project, this proposed raised center median that will restrict the existing traffic to the shopping center, the decision to extend the raised center median 200 feet in front of the property is based on, is not based on public good or reducing private injury, as we feel like, we feel like there would be better alternatives that could achieve the same goals. Closing the median in the front and toward Delmi, but at the same time, give us access to the complex for, for the tenants who've been suffering for a long time. And access and circulation has a lot to do with that. We have, we have sent some, some photos, which, this is a location in Palm Desert, California, which they've tried to do the same thing, where they have the left turn, and, but they would limit the access to the left turn only from further south, which I know has been a big concern with, we had a meeting, as it was referred to in the hearing, by different officials, but we had a meeting, and, and the big concern is a school, which we understand, across the street, but, but by limiting the access to the left turn, as you see in the photos, to the left turn, we could achieve the same goal, where, where people are traveling north, they could achieve getting to the left turn and turn left into the complex. And at the same time, Steve's concerned that, you know, he wants to make sure that folks, when they drop off their kids to the school, they won't be able to get into that left turn, because, you know, that could, that could cause accidents and make a U-turn. Even though U-turn would be legal, they can make a U-turn. The whole idea is to be able to turn left into the complex, but he felt like, you know, they could, they could still get into that, or maybe drop off the kids before that circular driveway, and still get into that. But we feel like with, with this type of arrangement, there is, there is, it would prevent the people to get into the left turn and try to go make a U-turn. So that would, that would achieve both goals, where they could limit access, and, but then again, the people that want to get into the complex, they could, they could, they could achieve that. Also, number three, county cannot justify a 200 feet, uh, center median extension is necessary for the proposed project. Okay, can, can, Steve, can you, yeah, I can read the one, yeah. Okay. Yeah, so we don't feel like the county has, has been able to justify that. And also, in regards to the appraisal, we feel like there's a value, there could be, there should be some allocation due to loss of access, due to putting up the median. The appraisal, the existing appraisal, as it is, has zero for, for allocation for loss of access, to limiting the access left to the complex. Again, we here try to work something out to, that hopefully would, would achieve both goals, that the tenants could still have their access, and the safety of the public would also be, would be intact, that by limiting the left turn to a certain area, so people just can come into the, to the left turn, and it would be basically to limit that for the folks that want to get into the complex. So for the tenants who have been relying on this access and circulation, could, could, could still enjoy that, and still we preserve the public safety. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Brawl. I'm not sure I, well, I'll defer to Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you Madam, was that it for public?
I, I believe that. Were there any other public comments?
There's no other public comments, or no one's in queue.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I thank you, sir, for commenting. I mean, I certainly don't take this decision lightly, because there's no doubt about it that it will interfere with the ingress to, to that parcel, if you're heading north on, north on Howe. There's no doubt about that, but it is, it's a very easy U-turn on El Camino there. And going out there, spending some time out there, in addition to going out and meeting Steve and Melissa there, I went out a few other times just to watch the traffic during school, during drop-off hours, during pickup hours at Howe Elementary School there. And it's, it's a, it's a pretty chaotic situation, and I kind of delved into a lot of the collisions here. And I don't know if this is from the SWITERS, the DMV, the traffic reporting system, or you got this directly from the CHP, but I'm, I'm sure these are final reports, final information on the reports. These wouldn't have been preliminary reports.
No, that should, that should be final reports, because they've been in our system for over a year.
And just looking at the time of day, I mean, a lot of these are in the afternoon. These are in hours when the school is the most active, there's the most, there's the most traffic around that school. And also, just looking at the, you know, the primary violation in most of these is a right-of-way violation, either an unsafe turning or a right-of-way violation. It suggests to me that a lot of these are probably caused by cars maybe making a right turn out of Howe Elementary, and then making a U-turn to go back south on Howe. Is that, is that your?
That is, that is our determination as well. It's illegal U-turns.
And if you look at the location, it says either, either, you know, a couple hundred feet south of El Camino, or a little bit north of Dawn. I mean, it's really right squarely in that area that we're talking about here. And I just don't see any way to mitigate the owner's concerns while still, I think, putting correctable actions in to prevent more of these collisions. So in my opinion, based on this additional information, I think it is a very dangerous location that will be largely mitigated by that center median, and so I will, I'll be making a motion to support this item today.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. And Chair will second, and I do not have any other supervisors in the queue to speak, so please vote.
Okay, unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, item 43 is the Fiscal Year 2021-22 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan Referral to the County Planning Commission to Review Project Consistency with the General Plan.
Good afternoon Chair Frost and Supervisors. The item before you is the 2122 Draft Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Years 2021-22 through 2025-26. Per ordinance, thank you very much. Per ordinance 21.15, the capital improvement program document is to be developed by the county executive and transmitted to the board. The board then refers the proposed capital improvement program to the, to the planning commission for review. The planning commission will review the projects to determine consistency with the general plan, and finally, the CIP will come back for adoption by the Board of Supervisors along with the Fiscal Year 2021-22 budget. The process to prepare the CIP begins early in the fiscal year, with departments identifying new, any new projects that should be listed, prioritizing those projects, and identifying funding sources. In January, the departments meet with the deputy county executives to review their CIP proposals and determine if there should be any adjustments to the recommendations. This presentation of the CIP is the first step in the process, and staff is requesting that the board refer the proposed CIP to the planning commission for review. A few notes regarding this draft. As the COVID-19 pandemic continues, various departments have taken into consideration the impacts of COVID-19 on their resources available for projects, as well as the timing and demand for certain projects. This is especially true for the Department of Airports. New this year to the CIP is an unfunded section for the Department of Waste Management and Recycling. These projects are included in the unfunded section due to a lack of current funding for capital projects that are required due to SB 1383. The draft CIP includes 72.4 million in Fiscal Year 2122 for airports, and a plan for future spending of for future spending of an additional $255.7 million in the following four years.
Excuse me, Colin.
Yes.
Supervisor Natoli. I'll wait till he's done.
Okay.
The key projects identified include the, an aircraft rescue firefighting facility replacement, remain overnight apron, terminal concourse A restroom rehabilitation, terminal A security checkpoint expansion, and a generator replacement for the tower and airfield lighting at Mather. County buildings and capital construction includes $28.4 in fiscal year 21-22, and a plan for future year spending of an additional $59.7 million in the following four years. Facilities that will have significant levels of funding include the BT Collins Youth Detention Facility, the new administration center, old administration center, Office Building Three, and Rio Consumers Correctional Center. In libraries, there is $1.6 million identified for fiscal year 21-22, and a plan for future spending of an additional $4.6 million over the following four years. Significant funding is targeted to the Ranch of Cordova Library and the Arcade Library. Mather Community Campus, this was a new CIP program, in, in the program book last year. You'll note that there is no funding currently identified for the CIP, however, that's primarily due to the timing of the development of the book. In February, the board approved a project with grant funding that will show up in the next version of the CIP book. Regional parks, $5.9 million in fiscal year 21-22, and an additional amount of $2.1 million in the following four years. Key projects include Discovery Park picnic shelters and the American River Parkway Trail improvements. In transportation, $99.2 million in fiscal year 21-22, an additional $358.4 million over the following four years. As noted, some projects were delayed due to the delay of the availability of funding sources. Major projects include ADA improvements, widening and construction of pedestrian, bicycle, and aesthetic improvements on several major county roadways, including Hazel Avenue, Elk Grove Florin Road, Alberta Road, Madison Avenue, and South Wad Avenue. Construction of upgraded interchanges at I-5 and Metro Parkway, and Highway 50 and Hazel Avenue. Eight new bridges to replace existing bridges. In waste management and recycling, there's $22.9 in fiscal year 21-22, with an additional $71.7 million over the following four years. Again, as mentioned, there's the unfunded section, which includes $33.4 million in projects that require either rate increases or the issuance of debt in order to finance the projects. Water resources drainage, $11 million in fiscal year 21-22, with an additional $22.3 million in the following four years. A couple of highlighted projects include the El Camino Avenue, Verna Way Storm Drain Improvement Project, and the Elder Creek Elk Grove Florin Road Bridge Improvement. Water resources water supply, $57.3 million in fiscal year 21-22, with an additional $296.1 million in the following four years. A couple of highlighted projects include Sunrise Boulevard Douglas Road, pressure-reducing valve stations, and the Arden Service Area Water Main and Meters Phase 2B. The recommendations, our staff recommends that the board direct the county executive to submit the capital improvement plan program to the planning commission for review with the general plan, and direct the county executive to report back with a recommendation for the approval of the fiscal year 21-22 capital improvement plan. Department directors and representatives are available to answer any questions related to specific projects, should you have them.
Thank you, Colin. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Colin. Appreciate the presentation, and obviously, a lot of that was covered in the written staff report. I know there were some large attachments, and, and we had a chance to review those, obviously, is that this works through the process. I wanted to, one, certainly note, and I appreciate you pointing out, that Mather Community Campus was added, and the project we did, obviously, was largely redevelopment monies that came through the redevelopment agency to replace the, some very necessary, I think, HVAC systems, and so appreciative of that being added. I guess what I wanted to draw attention to, and I, and may sound like a bit of a broken record to some of you who've heard this, obviously, over the last couple of years, but as I look at the CIP, and I want to be fair, recognizing there are enterprise funds that, particularly when it comes to airports and, and some of the utility enterprises that have dedicated funding sources, but the contrast for me was that we have $1.6 billion in programs that are outlined over this five-year projection, including fiscal year 21-22 funding. And of that, and you highlighted them in your, in your outline, libraries and parks, total projected $14 million, less than 1% over that course, the same time. And certainly, parks is largely dependent upon either general fund for operations and support, some maintenance, but relies almost solely on grant monies for any capital improvements. That's been an issue, and one I'm going to continue to, to point out. In, in libraries, again, both of those are important to, to external users, to our constituencies, not that these others aren't, because they serve the public, you know, they're, they're sometimes almost unapparent to folks, but if they don't work, if the drainage system doesn't work, or airports doesn't function, or the roads are in bad shape, then we're going to, you know, we're going to hear about that, but if they're kept good repair, and the projects are important. But I point that out because it, what it says to me, and then the item we're going to hear next, where we're going to talk about some of our needs in information and technology, which again is important, key to critical operations for monitoring, for collection, for service delivery. We've got $15 million over the next five years built in that budget. So for internal, just for, for either D-Tech, and/or you can look at any of these, it's a paltry amount. And I, to me, I think that this county needs to start some march towards correcting the, the longstanding deficiency in CIP funding for particularly libraries and regional parks, and then I would say with transportation, I think there needs to be some general fund consideration for that as well, but I, I don't know how we can continue to, over time, either lose ground to inflation, really just do, you know, a very, at best, I think modest amount of addition to our libraries and parks, and keep starving those accounts from a capital improvement standpoint. I, to me, again, it's not a decision that necessarily rests with staff, you're going to bring us your recommendations, but I think we as a board need to wrestle with that, because if you have less than 1% of your CIP budget going to parks and libraries, that says something about the priorities this board puts on some of those, some of those resources that are available to the community, and they serve a broad constituency, people of all ages, from all walks of life, and I think are just key to quality of life. And for too many years, I think those have taken a backseat to either enterprises that have dedicated funding sources, or those that are larger departments that have the ability to, you know, generate through fees and other revenues to support those, and again, may not get a very big amount of general fund, but those are key services. And I think if we've learned anything, we've learned many things over the, the last year with pandemic, but how important our libraries are, how important our open spaces, our parks are, and certainly, all these other things are important backbone infrastructure that I don't mean to in any way diminish, but I just, I'm going to say it, because I'm going to say it again, when we get into budget discussions, when the CIP comes back to us in the budget context, I believe we need to find a way to, to show more robust contribution over time to the capital improvement programs for those, those amenities. Otherwise, we just continue to lose ground, and I think we do a disservice to the people of this county in, in, in not putting more resources towards parks, libraries, and, and our roads, in, in, in good part as well. So that's enough for today, but I'm just going to tell you right now, when I look at the next item, and look at $15 million, and then a deficiency for a larger project of $30 million, those are going to get the call, because they're always going to be critical. These, we just tell people, well, that's the best we can do. I think we can do better. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. And I do not have anyone in the queue. I wonder if we have any callers on this item.
No, we didn't, and when you had opened the, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm on a different item. No, we don't have anyone in this queue. Sorry.
No problem. So on this item, we are, they are, staff are asking for direction. Just went dark on my computer. Direction for the county executive to submit the CIP to the planning commission, and direct the county executive to report back to the board after the planning commission. And so, is everyone good with that?
Madam Chair, in giving direction, I'm prepared to make that motion, but again, for purposes of our budget preparation discussion, I would like to have some more opportunity, again, we have opportunity anytime we're in session, but to focus in on where we are with parks, where we are with libraries, and certainly, general fund contributions to roads. Again, recognize there are myriad needs, and certainly, Ann and her leadership team, you know, have a lot of things to juggle, but I just don't think, again, I think it's a disservice, and, and I'd like to have that opportunity, again, but once this begins in the process, then you have to go back and do amendments and so forth. I'm prepared to send this, you know, document forward for consideration, but I certainly want to have more, more discussion, and I trust we will, and I don't know if there's any other guidance along that, but the commission, basically, they just look at it for compliance with the general plan, and, you know, I guess they, you know, they consider it, and then they approve it and send it back to us, and so it'll come back in a more formal format than what we have here today. But how do we amend, say, the CIP to put in money, say, we want to do projects on parks, for example? Say we want to put, you know, $5 million every year for the next five years, at least we budget year by year, towards parks? Or we want to do more in libraries? Or we want to put more in roads? How do we get that built into, to this consideration, I guess? I'm going to ask that question before I make the motion to direct this. So maybe, Ann, could you help with that?
Well, being very new to this CIP process, I think I'm going to ask if Britt can help me on that one.
And my point is, I want to see as we're building budgets, those considerations there before it comes to us, and then, you know, then we're having to pull it away from somebody again.
Thank you, Britt Ferguson, County Chief, interim chief fiscal officer. So fundamentally, and just to your, your point, Supervisor, so it is true that we spend a relatively small amount of money on capital projects for things like parks and libraries, and as you point out, we do have a lot more funding in, in those areas where there's dedicated funding. And so it's not so much that those others take a backseat, it's not like we have a choice, we can spend airport money on parks, we don't have a choice. You have to spend airport money on airports, you have to spend money in waste management and waste management, you have to spend water money on water, there's just not a lot of choice there. The other issue that has limited our, our spending on things like parks, and on Mather, for example, is that they're not part of the use allowance that we charge all departments for county facilities, and they haven't been really for a long time, and some ever. And so there is a funding source that goes to things, to regular county buildings that is not available, those departments don't pay into it on an ongoing basis, something we've been looking at. I think to answer your specific question, as you know, when we brought you the budget policies a while ago, one of the things we identified was starting to build capital reserves, recognizing that there was a significant need in the airport, in the area, for example, of parks, in the area out at Mather, and other areas. Your board did not adopt those policies. You'll see when we come back to you with the budget study session, we are going to continue to try and focus on identifying funding for capital projects, which, because we do think it is a priority, and finding, finding a way to set some money aside for capital projects. The truth of the matter is, and you know this well, the way that you have money to spend on capital projects is you don't spend it on something else. And so that's really the challenge, is what are the other things that you're not going to spend it on if you're going to set it aside for capital projects? And in recent years, we've done a number of growth in a number of areas, whether it's buying body cameras for law enforcement, not that those are important, they are important, but that's money that's not available to spend on parks, it's money that's not available to spend on libraries, there's, you know, a whole variety of areas. We funded a substantial amount of growth, but it was not in those areas. And so we do think it's important to address some of those needs, and we will be talking a little bit about that in a general way when we come back at your budget study session next week, and how we're going to do that. But in the end, in the end, it just comes down to spending it on those things and not other things when we have the money available to do that, or setting it aside for that, because that money's not necessarily available. Sometimes you have one-time money, and that's perfect money to set aside for capital projects. Specifically, in answer to your question, the, as you know, the, the CIP will go to the planning commission, the planning commission will issue an opinion with regard to consistency with the general plan, not just for those projects that are funded, but also for those projects that are unfunded. So everything in the CIP will be reviewed by the planning commission for consistency, and you will have the ability to, and, and we may in fact recommend some amendments to the CIP when we bring it back to you for consideration at budget hearings.
Well, well, thank you, Britt, and again, certainly, you, you know, give a very straightforward response, as I would expect. I guess what I would say to, one of the points you made relative to the capital reserve, I get it when you're trying to accumulate, and we'll talk a little more about that on the next item, and it was brought forward in your discussion before us here a few weeks ago, and recommendations. But when I look at the unfunded list, I don't have it down here before me today, but certainly, I've looked at it year after year, and I see in parks, you know, tens of millions of dollars in unfunded projects. I, I don't think, in my view, you don't have to have a capital reserve. You could put $2 million a year in base, in base budget for parks, just to begin to whittle away that. Similarly with libraries, and similarly with roads, and again, you've been helpful over the years, we have a very modest contribution, general fund to the roads now, I think it's a million dollars or a million two this year, but you don't need to stash money away. If we were so, you know, in such a good position that our infrastructure was in great shape, I'd say, yeah, you want to start looking to when it's going to wear out. I mean, it's either worn out, or we're so far behind the curve, for a variety of reasons. This is not, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody. So I guess my view is, is that maybe we ought to start from a different base, on, on those areas where we don't have these funding streams, and yes, you could still have a conversation about capital reserve. There's plenty we can do, if, if we had $20 million available every year going forward for the next 10, where you could, you know, spend that money legitimately, it's in our CIP, but it's unfunded, and so, and not everything competes equally, I get that. And so I guess that's my point, and, and I know we'll have that conversation coming up in the spring and so forth, but I just, you know, I, I feel very compelled, because again, I just see us getting further and further behind in these areas, and yet, to your point, decisions this board makes relative to appropriations, those are choices we make, but I guess what I'd like to see as a minimum is to have the choice before us, in a, you know, in a very clear conversation, again, it may not have staff recommendation, about some of the things that we can do, and again, you may still bring it back, put it in reserve, my view is that we need to start spending what we have available, assuming we have it available, and start doing it, because the needs are there, we don't need, you know, we don't need more information about the needs, we just need to figure out how we can best attack that. In some of those cases, you may have to accumulate money, I get it, if you're going to do an IT project, it's $30 million, you might not have that in any given year, but, and so I'd like to have, if there's a way to, you know, overall, you know, put this, put some focus on that for the board, to help us in that conversation, I, I would find that very useful, at least from my perspective, in our discussion here at this dais, and certainly with the public, about how we can prioritize that year to year. And if, if we want to have an allocated use charge, okay, that's a choice that was made, maybe we're not going to fix all that, so going forward, how can we begin to make some inroads in some of these areas?
Right, and, and we heard, we heard at, at the discussion of budget policies, we heard clearly the board had an interest in making investments in parks, we heard clearly an interest in making investments in roads. I think you will see in the budget proposal that we put together, that you'll get in late May, that we will be attempting to address some of those issues, balancing the need for sustainability, and what we can do with one-time money, and what we can do with ongoing money, but we understand the concern, and you will see some addressing of that when you see the budget, not probably to the extent that everybody would like it addressed, but recognizing there's only a certain amount of money available. And we'll be discussing that in more detail, not the specifics of it, but the general approach we'll be taking at your budget study session.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to join Supervisor Natoli in his stressing our, our need for investment in parks in particular, and it's not just the Parkway, I, I know everyone that cites my intersection with parks in the county points to the Parkway, and granted, I don't have a lot of other regional park assets in the district I represent, and the others are special districts, but I think especially as we simultaneously consider our housing element, we simultaneously, simultaneously consider our arena obligations, and the need to perhaps consider densification of residential acreage in Sacramento County, I think it's important for us to, to remember that not everyone has a backyard, and not everyone in the future is going to have a backyard, meaning that those future residents, those future renters are going to have to rely on, on our regional parks in the incorporated area outside of those special district areas. And to me, having gone through a real painful battle about six years ago, just to get, have us consider another $5 million just to get, have us consider another $5 million in the general fund for our regional park assets, you know, it seems to me that, especially given COVID and some of the stress that that's put on our parkland assets, that this is something that we need to stay very focused on. And having talked to my colleague, Mr. Desmond, I know that he's got a particular place in his heart for the parkway as well. So I think you're probably going to hear us continue to, at least some of us, continue to be very forceful in our advocacy for more focus on, attention for, and investment in our regional parkland assets, and certainly our ability to maintain those.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I think it's safe to say that the park system is the jewel of the region. And it's, I think it's-
I move the item.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Natoli, a second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
For item 44, this is the fiscal year 2021-22 Five-Year Technology Improvement Plan for Review and Approval.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Rami Zachariah. I'm the County Chief Information Officer. Every year, the Department of Technology works with county departments to identify information systems that are reaching in their useful life, and develop a plan to replace those. It's important to mention that the county keeps all information system and IT infrastructure for its full useful life. In today's information security challenges, it's really, it's very important that we take a very proactive approach to updating our information systems and keep them up and running. Also, the pandemic in this last year has really kind of changed the way that we work. On average, we have more than 2,700 employees that are working remotely on daily basis. The 2021-22 technology improvement plans include six projects. The first project is the Correction Health Automated Medication Dispensing System. That project was, or that RFP was awarded in December of 2020 to a vendor, and implementation is underway. The Sheriff's Department is working on replacing the current jail inmate management system with a new project. That project also is scheduled to go live next year. Environmental Management is working on an RFP to replace their case management system. And the Department of Human Assistance is working on a major project to replace the welfare case management system with a new state system. The County Regional Radio Communication System is working on a project to replace the network microwave. And finally, Water Resources is working on replacing the asset management system. We have two projects that are unfunded, and I've mentioned those in the past. At least the first one, it's the property tax system. And we have a new project that we want to put before you. This is really kind of scheduled for 2025, is that Microsoft is changing the way that they license their products. So instead of purchasing the office suite every 10 years or so, we're going to have to shift it to an operational-type expenses, where we would have those expenses happening on an annual basis. That's kind of, in summary, the technology improvement plan. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Rami. I do not see anyone in the queue to speak. I wonder if we have any callers on this item?
No callers.
Okay. And so... At this time...
I move the item.
I'll call for a motion. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Natoli, a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rami.
Thank you very much.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Next item, please.
Item 45, this is the authority to execute a retroactive amendment to contract to increase compensation and extend term for the lease of one loader for use at Kiefer landfill with hold of California.
Good afternoon. I'm Tim Israel, Superintendent with the Department of Waste Management and Recycling. We're seeking your approval on amendment to a lease, a full-service lease, for a loader at our Kiefer landfill. This amendment will accomplish basically three things. It'll increase the funding for it, the contract. It will extend the term of the contract, and it'll also give the purchasing agent the authority to make necessary final adjustments to the contract and any other terms that are associated with it. This contract expires on the 10th of April, so we are unable to wait any further on a decision on this as far as moving it forward. It is a critical piece of equipment to the landfill operation, particularly during the rainy season. And so that's pretty much it. Any questions for me?
Yes, we do. Supervisor Desmond. Thank you.
Just a comment. Thank you, and thank you for making this a timed matter, so we can have this discussion and have this, I think, continued additional scrutiny on waste management issues, especially in light of recent rate increases and the impact to the taxpayers in Sacramento County. And I appreciate, I received, we all received a little bit of information about some of the unforeseen operating damages. So just to be clear, so typical normal wear and tear items would normally be included in the lease agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, things like a bushing on a suspension, for example, that didn't wear out because of operator abuse, for example, or some accident. Those things are included. Consumables like tires, for example, are not.
Okay, right.
But if we get a dent inside of a loader, we're going to have to pay for that. A good example, I was looking through the list of repairs that we had done on this lease over the last four years, and the loader, the ladder to get into the cab had been repaired literally at least five times. And it's just a low-hanging piece of equipment that in the nature of the business we do out there at the landfill, it's going to get damaged.
And that's a great segue, because I mean, obviously, you have a lot of unforeseen things. I just took another load to NARS the other day, and I know a lot of things happen out there. What I'd like to see at some point from the department is going back, maybe looking back a few years, to see where these unforeseen expenses or damages to pieces of equipment have occurred. You know, and this kind of, I think about the discussion we had today, and Supervisor Serna talking, and Supervisor Natoli talking about the lost property. I mean, these are things, when you put them all together, this is a lot of money that we're talking about. And I'd like to see specifically what steps, what measures are taken out there to avoid these kinds of, we know it's going to happen, but what measures can we take to try to prevent some of these things from happening? I'd appreciate a report back at some point about that.
Well, we'd be happy to do so. And it just so happens that there's another item that you'll hear next month, most likely, on these leases yet again. And it's mostly cleanup work similar to this, in that we're adjusting, making sure that the leases end at the right time, and that the purchasing agent has the authority to go ahead and make these changes, so we don't have to bring them back to you. So we can report back to you. But I can assure you that our operations folks are very aware of damages that occur to our equipment. And we do a lot of follow-up with our employees to train them to avoid that. And if necessary, provide discipline for equipment damage. And so it's a big deal for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, good afternoon, Tim. Just kind of to your last point, I'm not so sure that, I don't want the board to see, you know, some of those things, because again, it gives us the opportunity to have this conversation. If we never see them, all we see is a lease every three to five years, then not just you have to see every purchase order, I get that. I mean, obviously, we trust the administration to you and to Doug and to the folks that are given that responsibility. So I guess if you flag that item when it comes before, we'll talk about that, I guess, a month from now, if I understood you correctly, what you just said.
Yeah, I think we're tentatively scheduled for the 18th of May.
Right, no, I'm just saying, but if I understood you correctly about what wouldn't be coming back to the board any longer, by way of not bothering us with it, I'm not, you know... And that's kind of your part, but I'm not so sure that, you know, I think in light of some of the discussion we had today, not on your item here, but related to lost property and to, you know, and so forth, I think it's important.
We'd be happy to provide you that information.
Oh, I know you would, yeah. I just, but in, you know, I think in the effort to be more efficient and not bother us with such mundane things, but I think, I don't think they're so mundane, and I don't think you were inferring that. But I wanted to ask you about this outside of normal wear and tear. You mentioned the ladder on the loader getting damaged, okay. But you also mentioned the response, and again, I thanked Ann for this earlier this morning. I'm sure you or somebody else provided it. You mentioned the bucket, the bucket pins, cutting edges, related quick couplers, as being areas that have, outside normal wear and tear. But who's making the determination what's normal wear and tear? Is that the supplier? So you buy it from Caterpillar, and they make the call? And are we able to negotiate for things where we know they're fairly normal? And, you know, things can break, I get that, that are unforeseen. But if the ladder, four or five times, is being damaged, then maybe, you know, you ask for some modification on that piece of equipment that you're going to lease at $10,000 a month, so that the ladder sits higher, or it has a... You know, again, I don't like getting into the details there. But, you know, maybe the way we spec it out, and/or what we want in purchasing from the vendor, that we, you know, our experience shows us that at Kiefer, with good operation, but just the terrain, the types of day-to-day, you know, effort that's going to be put in by that machine and its operators, that we want to see some other things as a part of it. Now, you may get it built into the lease, but if we're, I think it was like $52,000 of items that were beyond what the warranty would cover, or normal wear and tear...
Yeah, it was, we had originally estimated $60,000 total for parts and labor. And the total as of the writing of this report was around $112,000.
Okay, so...
So there's that increase there. And in addition, we need to get an extension for additional lease payments, because the delivery of the new equipment that will replace this one has been delayed.
Okay. But $112,000, I guess that's over, is that over the four years?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Obviously, it's significantly less, for example, than what you saw us bring to you two months ago on the loaders at NARS. And again, that is indicative of the type of duty cycle these pieces of equipment go through. And NARS is much worse than a landfill. But the landfill, that piece of equipment's still in the garbage during the wintertime in particular, pushing garbage, getting smacked with stuff. It's an abusive neighbor environment.
Okay, so let me just boil it down to my last question on this. So is, does our experience level guide us in maybe asking for a particular spec? I mean, either-
Yes, absolutely.
And if so, doing, I appreciate, yes, but that we ask for, you know, a more, and maybe there's not any more, more heavy-duty, you know, frame?
Well, there is. For example, all the dozers and most of the loaders will order with trash packages on them, basically. And it's enhanced guarding underneath the equipment, on the seals. We spec this equipment out for the environment that it's in. But it doesn't protect it in a bubble, and it doesn't get damaged.
Yeah, it doesn't guard against everything.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any other directors in the queue for questions. I wonder if we have any public comment on this item?
No public comments.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond has moved approval. Supervisor Natoli, second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Doug.
Okay, for item 46, this item also requires an oath. This is the Stone Ridge Quarry Use Permit Amendment. A use permit amendment to revise condition number 98 from a prior use permit... Where was I? To revise condition number 98 from a prior use permit to allow an additional seven years for required subsequent procedural actions, including issuance of the work authorization permit and modify the development agreement in regards to timing of commencement and voluntary contribution for a property located 1.5 miles south of White Rock Road and 500 feet east of Scott Road in the Kasumnus community. The environmental document is a final environmental impact report memorandum. And we have, we have the representatives for the applicant on the line. Can I go ahead and do the oath now?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Thatch, Mr. Sokopoulos, are you here?
I am.
Okay.
I am.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do the oath of office now. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
I do.
When, okay, so go ahead and state your name for the record and the statement. I have been sworn.
Yes, this is Gregory Thatch, and I have been sworn.
This is Angelo Jitsakopoulos, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
All right, this is Leanne Moffett, representing Planning and giving the staff presentation today. And I do have a short PowerPoint for our use today. So this is the Stone Ridge Quarry item, and the clerk already read the location in. So the board originally approved this quarry project back in early-
Excuse me, Leanne. We're not able to see the PowerPoint.
Do you have the vote?
Is there something on your screen? Oh. Sorry to interrupt you.
No problem.
I just wanted to see it.
Absolutely. Yes, it is helpful. Okay, so the original quarry was approved back in early 2012, late 2011, early 2012. It is one of two approved quarries out in the East County area. And so the request is a use permit amendment to revise one of the conditions having to do with the start time, how long they have to, in order to begin the quarry process. And then it's associated amendments to the development agreement, clarifying several of the timeframes. The approval documents have these timeframes where they have to start in order to sort of vest the entitlements. And due to a variety of reasons, the applicant could probably speak to, including the economy, they haven't gotten underway yet. And so staff had previously administratively approved one extension, but at this point, we needed to come back and get the board approval for that. Here is a graphic showing where the site is, the larger site out in the East County area. And so the applicant is requesting a seven-year extension through March 30th, 2029, in order to complete all the procedural actions required under the use permit, including issuance of a work authorization permit. But there were no other changes to the project. There are no changes to conditions or the project that they are requesting. They are also, this also includes some commensurate changes to the development agreement, so that the term of agreement and the special voluntary contribution sort of match the use permit part, and are clarified. So again, there are no changes to the project. The amendment to the development agreement clarifies the timing of commitments, commencement, and the payment schedule. The environmental coordinator has determined that the prior EIR is still adequate and appropriate. And so staff is recommending the actions in your report and on this slide.
Thank you, Leanne. And I'm going to now invite Mr. Thatch and Mr. Sokopoulos to, if you wanted to, say a few words.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Greg Thatch, and I will be very brief. As your planning director recited, this is a time-only extension. There are multiple reasons why it has taken time, not the least of which is obtaining a 404 permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which we were not able to obtain until 2018. There was also tolling involved because of the threat of litigation. And as your planning director recited, the pandemic and the economy have not helped the effort. It's very expensive to begin these projects, and it's going to take some years and millions of dollars to obtain the work authorization permit. And so that is why we need the extension until March of 2029. As Leanne mentioned, we do enjoy staff recommendation. We also had a unanimous- had a unanimous positive recommendation of the CPAC and the Planning Commission. And with that, I would answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Thatch. I do not have any supervisors in the queue with questions. I can, I can attest that I have met with Leanne and also with Mr. Thatch and Sokopoulos, and I have all my questions answered, and I will move approval. And I have a second by Supervisor Desmond. Do we have any other comments on this item?
We do not have any public comments on this item.
Okay. Please vote.
Okay, unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you, and that was the easiest one all day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm going to disconnect that call now. Okay, for our next item, I do want to point out that we have several folks in the public comment queue. We also have some applicants that are going to be transferred in, and I'll start reading this into the record. And also, this requires an oath, so I'll have to do that every time we have a public comment. Okay, this is the Ingle Road Office Building Conversion, a use permit variance, special development permit, and design review to convert an existing office building into an 18-unit apartment building in the Business Professional Office Zone for a property located at 4748 Ingle Road within the Mission Oaks Neighborhood Preservation Area in the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community.
Good afternoon, Chris.
Good afternoon, Chair Frost, Board members. Chris Boholi with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review, wanted to provide a few staff remarks for the Ingle Road conversion project, office conversion project. Staff has reviewed the public comments for this item and has discussed the issues and concerns with the applicant team, and staff is requesting that the board drop this item from the agenda. Staff are unsure as to when the item will return to the board, and therefore, we are not requesting a continuance, but rather, we will schedule and notice the project when it is ready to return to the board. This recommendation is based on staff's communication with the applicant team and their desire for additional time by the applicant to evaluate and make revisions to the project description and project design to address community concerns and board input. This additional time will also allow our environmental staff to review the applicant's modifications, as well as the prior environmental analysis, and perform the appropriate level of environmental review. I should note that the, that following modifications to the project, the item will return to the Planning Commission for a new advisory recommendation. That concludes my remarks. I should note that the applicant, Mr. Kevin Wang, and as well as perhaps members of his team are available on the line. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, thank you, Chris. Appreciate those comments. I, is it true that what you're going to be working on, will it address any of the concerns that have been the topic of any of the public comments?
I believe it will address some of the concerns. I don't anticipate that all of the concerns will be, will be resolved as a result of perhaps some modifications, but perhaps some concerns may.
Okay, and I wanted to, before I make any other comments, I was a member of the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC, and this came before us when I served on that advisory body, and I'm looking at it today through, with a fresh perspective, certainly. I'm very interested to hear, you know, some of the public comments. I know this is an issue that has generated a lot of controversy in the neighborhood, a lot of very, you know, passionate opinions about this project. And it's funny, as I, as I drive around, this isn't just in my district, this is literally, you know, right down the street from my house. I'm very, very familiar with it, and like a lot of other areas in the unincorporated part of the county, it's like the place that modern land use planning forgot, right? And this is certainly a prime example of that, where you have zoning that was put in place, put in place decades ago and no longer reflects the current character or use of the community. And this, for instance, American River Hospital was there. I think it closed, what, 20 years ago or so? And so you have, you had a lot of hospital, office complexes right around there, of which this building was one, correct? My question, one of my questions to you is, is how many of these office building conversions to multifamily housing have we done in the unincorporated county?
Good question. I don't have a good answer for you at this point. I know that we have entertained a couple of conversion discussions about these types of facilities converting either into office, or either into residential or perhaps care facilities, but I'm not aware of one that has actually been accomplished recently.
Okay, and I think, I mean, I, I've had some discussions with Leanne and with some of my colleagues and folks on the SAICOG board with me about my district and how we have so many empty office complexes that are really creating blight conditions. A lot of, most of them are on more commercial corridors. I know Ingle is not a commercial corridor. I mean, this is much more closer to a residential neighborhood, certainly here, exactly where this building is. But I think it's important that we, that we do it right in this instance, right, and use it as a model for how we move forward with other opportunities, because I can see in my district, you know, a lot of these opportunities that I will be exploring. And like Supervisor Serna mentioned a few minutes ago, we have such a dire need for more housing in Sacramento County. We need to take advantage of these kinds of opportunities. But I'm also very mindful and sensitive to the concerns of the community, and it's got to be done right. It's got to be done in a way that adds value to a community, that enhances the aesthetics of the community. And I think this project in its current form falls a little bit short of that. I have had some conversations with the applicant, I mean, I believe Mr. Wang, and I believe he's had some discussions with the, with the community. I'd like to hear, maybe hear from him, if we want to allow him to give a presentation?
Oh, of course.
Or simply just ask him questions. I don't, was he planning to present, Chris, or?
I know that he's available and to respond to any questions. I don't think he has a presentation, but.
Okay, great.
He's available to answer questions.
Then I, then I will, I will, then I'll, maybe what I'll do is I'll hold off and I'll wait until we hear from the public comment, because I assume we'll still be taking public comment on this, even though we won't be taking action today. Okay, I'll hold off then until after the public comment.
Thank you. At this time, we're ready for public comment. Okay, please transfer the first caller. There's about nine callers right now. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your public comment, but I need to take your oath of office right, I mean, I need to take your oath right now?
Yes.
Okay, so please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn", and then start with your comments.
My name is Kathy Cook. I have been sworn in. I'm the president of Mission Oaks North Neighborhood Association. It represents over 1,500 households in the immediate area of Ingle Road. And we have met with the developer. We've tried to talk to him and have relay our concerns, and he does not really listen, and he hasn't changed. I'm very happy that this is being put off for now, because maybe he will. You know, we have an NPA. It was an agreement with the county for preserving and protecting the single-family residential character of our neighborhood. We have been under a lot of pressure with the American River Hospital and all the medical buildings. And now that the hospital is gone, some of the medical buildings are being underutilized, and we want the zoning to go back to single-family residential properties. We are surrounded already by apartments on Marconi, on Eastern Avenue, on Whitney, on Walnut, and we don't need more apartments. Carmichael, we've talked to many real estate agents, there is a big shortage of single-family residential homes. We need senior homes, a little bit smaller, maybe some first-time homebuyer homes. And when we have ownership, people are invested in the community, and they want to improve the community. It enhances the stability and sustainability of our community. When we have apartments, those people tend to come and go, and they use the facility, but they're transient. And this, this project itself is requiring a special development and all these variances, because it's not suitable for apartments. It's not suitable for high density.
Can you wrap up your comments, please, Kathy?
Yes, I've got so much more to say, but we collected 230 signatures saying, "Please protect the NPA. Please represent us and your constituents, and look out for our future." The developer wants to make profit. We want to live in the neighborhood for the next 20 to 30 years, and we want to protect and preserve the single-family.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
I'm all done. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comments, and I'm going to need to take your oath right now.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn," and then start with your comments.
Okay. My name is Diane Hanson. I'm an owner in the Mona area. I have been sworn in, and I'd like to make the following comments. First, I have actually sent in a complete list of my concerns. The concerns I'm going to talk about today are based on a conversation that I and others in our group had with Mr. Wang Sunday a week ago. I believe that, I understand the concept, but I don't believe that this location or this building should be turned into a month-by-month lease, basically apartment, which I consider to be an extended stay hotel. I understand from Mr. Wang that he is now decreasing the number of units to 18 units, but will still have a unit as small as 400 square feet. He also informed us that instead of $1,000 a month, he will now be charging $1,500 a month for said area. I find this absolutely ridiculous, given that I have a rental right next to me, which is a three-bedroom, two-bath home, front yard, backyard, two-car garage, that rents for $2,000 a month. I believe that the people who would come there would be more than the people that he's considering. So if you have 18 units and two people live in each unit, you now potentially have 36 cars. There is not enough parking in this area for him, because there's also additionally, I believe, four handicapped spots, so that reduces the parking even more. Additionally, there is an assisted living facility across, which makes it difficult to have cars parked on the street and also have room for them as well. As I listened to Mr. Wang, I determined that he's really done nothing to improve the property in the last year or so that he's owned the property, in that there were complaints about the gates not being fixed and the fact that there's homeless persons. Mr. Wang indicated that his wife, Mrs. Wang, is the property owner, so there is no reason he shouldn't have known about these concerns and the concerns from the neighborhood, and I have heard neighbors say that they have actually called the police.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Thank you. This owner is from the Bay Area. He does not know our homeowners association, and I believe he has already failed to prove that he could be a reliable owner and manager of these apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comments, and I will take your oath at this time. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn."
Julia Parrish. I have been sworn.
Okay, please start with your comments.
Please do not approve the proposed development at 4748 Ingle Road to convert the existing office building into apartments. It does not belong in the neighborhood, as evidenced by the many variances requested, in order to complete the project. A special concern is that access to the rear of the building is not wide enough to accommodate a fire truck, and the apartment building could become a death trap. There is a shortage of single-family housing in Carmichael, and the neighbors would like to see single-family housing in that space. Please help protect the property values and quality of life for people who live and work in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comments. I will go ahead and take your oath right now. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn," and then start with your comments.
This is Robert Sanchez. I live at a single-family house on 4517 Ingle Road. I purchased this home 21 years ago, with the understanding that the neighborhood was a single-family dwelling plan, which it has been for 20-plus years. And I'm totally against the development that is proposed on Ingle Road down the street from me. It's going to impact the very street that I live on, that's already has a lot of traffic, and they had to put speed bumps on it, and people race on it. And so that's one impact. Another impact is I've observed that the housing units are quite small, maybe 500 square feet or less, which does not accommodate a family. And as I pointed out, this is a family neighborhood, single-family homes, children are on the streets, and children are crossing streets, and add the density, that amount of density to a neighborhood would impact it adversely. It would affect the investment that I put in my home, as well as others, and I and others are considerably against this project to increase the density in our neighborhood. And the proposed small units that they are suggesting would really only accommodate one person, so I'm suspecting it is for folks that are maybe can't live somewhere else, and so board, they're, maybe they get a subsidized payment for the rent, I'm not sure. Just less than 300, maybe roughly 300 to 400 feet from that, we had folks that were not in single-family dwellings, but they were visiting down the street and there's a murder just a year or two ago. And people have had homes that were, at that time, people were going because of the increased traffic due to that business, their cars broken into.
Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
Okay. Just to finalize, I am against this proposal for an increased density project on Ingle Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please send the next caller. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comment. I will take your oath at this time. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I affirm.
Okay, please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn," and then start with your comments.
My name is Jake Fortner. I have been sworn. I've lived here on Ingle Road for over 20 years. I'm very accustomed to our suburban community and lifestyle, and I'm concerned that apartments will overcrowd our neighborhood as well as add unnecessary traffic and reduced parking space, especially near the park. I think we need more single-family residences in this area as opposed to the large apartment projects. And I think that if we put in apartment projects like this, it's going to weaken our community and our value, our home values as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next caller, please. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comments. I will take your oath at this time. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I so affirm. My name is Barbara Berry, and I so affirm.
Okay. And if you could just state the state, say the statement that you've been sworn, and then start with your comments.
Barbara Berry, and I've been sworn. Okay. I have some history. We are the immediate property. We reside at 4800 Ingle Road, directly to the east of this named property. We have owned our property since 1956, literally, when that property was Olive Orchards and Horse Patty. I also worked my first job at American River Hospital, so I've seen a lot of change in this neighborhood. This is not a change that we want to see. My, I wrote a substantially long issue or letter addressing our concerns here as neighbors. I will highlight public safety and inadequate resident parking. In terms of the parking, when American River Hospital was in full operation, we had parking signs right in front of our home. We could never have neighbors or any friends parking in front of our residence because of it being a commercial area. So that is another concern. Are we going back to that? Because bringing in a large apartment dwellings is going to create another, what I call parking snag, and visitor and resident parking will be at a premium. The other is public safety. We've had to call out law enforcement on many occasions because of the homeless population now coming in and taking up residence in this now almost nonexistent two-story office complex, which, again, as Mr. Desmond referred to, as he knows our community, was a multi-two-story medical office building. I highly do not support Mr. Wang's proposal. The best use of this property to make it a win-win for all of us would be to sustain a multi-family, single-family court cluster of small homes or condominiums for seniors. That is the best use of this property. It's not large enough to accommodate apartments. And firmly do not want this integrated into our neighborhood. It's a very set neighborhood. We are all very happy with our single-family residences, and I want it to continue and our property values to continue.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi, caller. You'll have two minutes to make your comments. I'll take your oath at this time.
Okay.
Okay. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn," and then start with your comments.
Diane Heald. And you want me to do my comment?
Yes. Go ahead and start with your comments.
Okay. What I'm calling about is item number 47, where they want to put apartments on the address, wrap that real quick. Sorry, I left the room. On the address of 4748 Ingle Road. I've been a resident in that area for 42 years. The traffic is horrendous. Adding apartments is only going to cause more of a problem. And I just want single-family homes in our neighborhood to keep it strong. So that's why I was calling. Didn't know that they were going to put apartments down in that area when we've got plenty around our, our community to begin with. I just don't think we need to add any more. I'd rather see single-family homes. And that's what I was calling about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comment. I'm going to take your oath right now. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn," and then start with your comments.
My name is Russ Moros, and I have been sworn. My name is Russ Moros. I'm the director of the National Office and Industrial Properties Group at Marcus and Melichap. We're one of the largest commercial real estate firms in the United States. I was involved with this property as a listing broker back in 2013 and sold it to the prior owner, not Mr. Wang, but prior owner of the property. I wanted to share my comments, that I understand the community's concerns with respect to this property. And by the way, I have no current involvement with the property. Mr. Wang or, I have no vested interest in the outcome. But I really wanted to share some feedback from developers and various investors that had considered the possibility of converting this building into single-family homes, which my understanding is the desired use for the community. You have to understand that the ideal use for a property like this is not always the most, not always economically viable at all. At the time, we have had developers and investors consider the possibility of completely tearing down a 12,000-square-foot commercial structure to build single-family homes. It does not come close to making any economic sense to do so. To demolish an existing 12,000-square-foot commercial structure just to build a few homes makes no financial sense. It will not happen. And so the idea really is between having a vacant office building and/or an apartment complex, as I see, which is probably the only economically viable conversion for that property that is viable. It is not viable as a continued office building, and it is not viable for a single-family home redevelopment. We've had numerous developers and investors consider the possibility back in 2013. I see nothing that would indicate things have changed to make this economically viable now. And finally, I think the environmental impact of demolishing a 12,000-square-foot building is of particular concern.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Absolutely. The amount of landfill and just damage that would cost to the environment and pollution that would cost to the environment is just outrageous, just to build a few homes. So I think an apartment complex conversion is the best outcome for the property. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comments. I'll take your oath now. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I swear.
Okay. And nice. Please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn."
My name is John Fortner. I have been sworn.
Okay. Go ahead and start with your comments.
I'm a resident on Ingle Road, and my mother and my brother have both called ahead of me. We're against the apartment development. Our NPA is in agreement with the county to preserve and protect the single-family residential character of the neighborhood. Please represent us and vote no on this project.
Thank you, sir. Next caller, please. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comment, and I'll take your oath now. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I so affirm.
And please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn," and then start with your comments.
I have been sworn. My name is Nick Blouse.
I'm a resident of this area on Foster Way. I've been a resident here for 51 years. I was born at American River Hospital, which is across the street from this project. I just wanted to say, this project has too many units for the property size. It is a poor design. The traffic overflow to Ingle Road will be too much for the street to handle. There's also several schools in the area, which bring a lot of traffic in the area. This would compound that problem. I believe that the reconfiguration of a building that should be demolished will not help property values. We have $600,000 homes that replaced the American River Hospital, as well as the Oakmont of Carmichael, which is also a premium-quality residence for seniors. Once again, I oppose this project, and I would prefer that this be reason for single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comment. I'll take your oath right now. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. Please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn," and then start with your comments.
Thank you. My name is Ansel Lundberg, and I have been sworn. So Board of Supervisors, I just want to thank you for opportunity to comment today. Again, my name is Ansel Lundberg. I am a co-chair of a group called House Sacramento. We are a pro-housing group in Sacramento, in the Sacramento region, and we advocate for inclusively affordable communities. We represent renters, young people, and other communities who are harmed by NIMBYism and California's culture of opposition to developing adequate housing supply. So I'm just calling in support of the recommendations of staff before you to approve the necessary actions to proceed on the development at 4748 Ingle Road. I'm disappointed to see that the project has been reduced from 20 to 18 units already before it's even reached the board. I understand that's partly a move by the project applicants in order to address some of the concerns of the community. So while that is a good thing, little reductions like this are how we have found ourselves in the housing shortage that we are in today. I think it's basically a prime dunk to convert what's now a vacant office building into a place where people can live, people who will be a part of the Mission Oaks and Carmichael community. And we have a few members who live in the area in Carmichael who've notified of this project, and they've indicated that the Oakmont facility across the street has gone in and has not caused any problems or concern. This would be a similar-scale development, if even smaller. So again, just urge your approval of these, of these staff report proposals, and I thank you for your time and opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comments. I'll take your oath right now. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn."
Joshua Mucker. I've been sworn. I support this, this project. I think it's a great one. Has, as other people have mentioned, there's a lot of great schools around here, and I think giving other families an opportunity, especially families that are just starting off to be able to live next, next to such a great area that I'm privileged to live in, is something that I would have wished that I would have had growing up. So I think this is a great goal that we're doing. Also, I would mention that there is a bus stop nearby on Eastern right there. So the worries about transportation is probably a little bit overblown, because as we invest more and more in public transportation and making this a walkable neighborhood, I believe that the parking situation is just completely overblown. Thank you.
Thank you. And please send the final caller. Hi, caller. You will have two minutes to make your comment. I'll take your oath now. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn."
Kathy Spencer. I have been sworn.
Thank you. Please start your comments.
Okay. My name is Kathy Spencer, longtime resident of the neighborhood. My concerns are with the Neighborhood Preservation Act, which has been instrumental in maintaining the characteristics of our wonderful neighborhood for a very, very long time. This project on Ingle Road is really not in line with the single-family residences in the areas surrounding it. We're very concerned by the 18 units proposed, very small units, as small as 450 square feet. We feel that the, the neighborhood really doesn't support this type of building project for many reasons. Traffic. Also, we're having increased crime in the area. The property, the developer behind the project has a established history of not being what we would consider a good property manager, a lot of things being left in disrepair for good, long periods of time. In our neighborhood, we really prefer to see single-family residences. If that's not possible, possibly a condominium project where there is home ownership. We feel that it's very important. We know that he wants to make money, but we've also put our money into our, our homes. We love the area, and we want to see the property values maintained in our area. And we feel that this project, as stated, would be very detrimental to our property values. So I thank you for your time. That's the end of my statement.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we have Supervisor Natoli.
Yes. I just had some questions of staff, if I could. And I know this matter's going to be continued or dropped and come back to us. But as it relates to the Mission Oaks NPA, there's brief discussion in the staff report. And I guess, Chris, if you could tackle the question that, on page two of the staff report, under the entitlement request, this variance request for the parcel, you clearly state the purpose of the neighborhood preservation area. I mean, it's in, it's in the title itself, but it says, "Adopt, preserve, and protect the existing single-family residential neighborhoods from further encroachment of commercial and institutional uses and adequately buffer these neighborhoods from potential noise, pollutants, traffic, and visual intrusion." I trust that's an extraction of, from the
Correct.
actual verbiage. And, you know, if recollection serves me correctly, the Business Professional Zone was designed to be that gradation between commercial and institutional uses and then more residential uses. And I'm not clear, are apartments, whether here or otherwise, where those seem to be the buffering? I don't think so. I mean, or from a planning standpoint, if they were, I guess I'd rather determine what you're going to tell me.
Yeah. I think from planning standpoint, it's a, it's a conditionally permitted use in the BP zone. So we certainly
What is, apartments?
Correct.
Has it always been that way? That's been changed more recently with our, some of our zoning code updates over the last 10 or 15 years? Leanne? Or have apartments always been conditionally?
At least for the last
I know, a commercial area.
At least since the 2015 update.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's been a conditionally permitted use.
I believe it was conditionally permitted for longer than since 2015. I think it preceded that, because I think, I recall working on another use permit. I don't know if it was for an apartment in a BP zone in the early 2000s.
Okay. But here, this is then, has an overlay or underlay, however you want to see, underlying with the neighborhood preservation area. It's one thing for the zoning code to provide for a conditional use permit, but what's being sought here is a variance from the neighborhood preservation area, which was adopted by the board, you know, many years ago, probably 30, 35 years ago, in its early iterations, I trust.
Correct. So the, just to be clear, the, as far as the use is concerned, the use in the NPA So just to be clear, as far as the use is concerned, the use in the NPA defers to the zoning code, again, which the multifamily use is conditionally permitted. The deviation that's being requested is related to a landscape planter on the eastern and southern boundary. And so that's the deviation. That's what's triggering the variance request, not the use.
Okay, so I'm going to take my question back to what you just supposed to respond to a moment ago. Because, again, without knowing for certain, I guess, I sense that, you know, with the evolutions of zoning codes over time, obviously adoptions through public processes and so forth, but again, I'm not certain as we're sitting here today that when the NPA was adopted, that use permits allowed for conversion of BP properties into apartments. And again, you know, that's evolution over time, but we, and just hearing some of the testimony today, and I'm sure, you know, Supervisor Desmond's heard from many folks, certainly as a CPAC member, but obviously as a supervisor, but you've got folks here that, you know, original owners, you know, 50-plus years ago, who, again, have relied upon certainly the county, but it's, you know, interpretation and governance of the NPA along with the zoning, obviously is vested with this body. And again, that NPA, you know, I think is shared pretty broadly with folks. Obviously, certainly, you know, the Community Association, Neighborhood Association is well familiar with it and that's part of, you know, part of their efforts over time through their leadership to, you know, call attention to, you know, to issues. But here we are today. So I guess the other question I want to ask about, and it goes back to what Supervisor Desmond asked about earlier, you know, if this is something that there seems to be some trend for conversion, what I would want to see certainly us do our best to avoid, and obviously if we retain the final authority, again, we have the ability to say yay or nay to a project, but of just, you know, shoehorning in. Because again, if you take the built environment, the building, and then try to meet all the code requirements and so forth, I think it really challenges developers, and whether it's this one or other ones, and I mean this in a positive respect, to not only be creative and innovative, but then to look at, you know, the interface of the built environment of neighborhoods that, where you have homeowners who've been there for, you know, half a century or more, again, and, you know, in desirable neighborhoods, people, obviously from the commentary, you know, value living there, others would like to live there. I get that, too. But it seems to me that it sets, you know, a fair and level playing field, but a bar that folks have to say, it's not just, you know, a few this and that's, and, you know, put some more paint over here, put, you know, a little more screening over here, and we're going to, you know, we're going to call it good. And that's not what's necessarily being proposed. But, you know, this is a significant change. You know, people will, you know, like the fact that you have a vacant office building and obviously the property owner has, you know, concerns about that, but you also have folks who, probably the single biggest investment any of us make in our lifetime, assuming we're afforded the opportunity, is in our home. And, you know, and with that comes your, you know, the environment which you live in, folks that wish to live there, who want to rent or, you know, purchase, you know, they look at the surrounding area and so forth. And I think that, you know, anytime changes proposed, obviously it can be, you know, met with some resistance, but here, from, you know, my reading of this, and again, we're going to, you know, put this over, but, you know, one of the things I've seen in some of the correspondence, for those that might offer an alternative, I heard it verbalized today, you know, some folks, maybe you do a for-sale project, you know, of condominiums, maybe you do an age-restricted, and again, we may not be able to dictate that through our review process and certainly from a staff standpoint, but I think those are, you know, certainly are legitimate issues to at least be suggesting to the applicant. And again, you know, they want to retain this 12,000-square-foot structure and repurpose it, but, you know, people, again, that make property purchases, whether it's their home or their business, choose to move into, you know, do so, I'm hopeful anyway, with their eyes open. And if you bought this property and it didn't pan out, that, you know, just to assume that because there's, you know, a housing, you know, deficiency that, you know, plagues the state, and certainly our community is no exception to the high demand, I think we still need to be considerate of ordinances that over time have provided some level of assurance to those that live, own, and reside there, and not to the exclusion of others who'd like to live there. But, you know, zoning, you know, we call it entitlements, but, you know, they're very, very important and critical to the equation, as are, I think, you know, neighborhood preservation areas and other matters that come before this board over, you know, many decades now and are embedded in our zoning code. So I get it that staff has looked at, you know, the various aspects of this, but I would just say that I think, you know, to the point made earlier, that trying to shoehorn something in that may or may not fit, obviously this board's ultimately going to make a call on that, but I think that, I think it puts a heavier responsibility on those that propose to, you know, to develop this in a different way, utilizing the same footprint that was built there decades ago. So I just, I offer those as comments, and again, obviously we're going to have more opportunity to, you know, consider this further and, you know, when it comes back to us. But lastly, I would ask, so have we, you didn't have a good, you didn't have an answer. How many conversions have we seen?
I don't believe that we have, at least...
This may be the first?
In terms of my understanding, I know that we, one of the things I am remiss in mentioning is, as I'm sure most of the board members know, we have been working on a number of reuses of motel and hotel projects.
I get that.
We've had a number of them. We have a number in pipeline currently, so adaptive reuse of those commercial facilities into residential.
But of a residential nature, Chris, that's of a residential nature. You could say hotels or, you know, or motel conversions.
They still have challenges with, you know, meeting multifamily development standards, given that they weren't constructed in a way to meet open space amenity requirements and so forth. So in terms of sort of the shoehorning in of a commercial hotel use into a multifamily development, complete with the amenities that are needed in order to meet our requirements, most of them are requesting special development permits to deviate from the development standards. I would just mention that.
Okay, now, that's an important point, but...
I don't recall a lot of business park buildings being converted directly, so I can't think of much off the top of my head.
Yeah, again, we don't see all of them, but I don't recall that. And I would just say, lastly, I remember years ago when you were seeing apartments converted to condominiums and that, you know, there was quite an uproar in certain, you know, segments of the community about that and/or vice versa. And, you know, we actually had ordinances that came about regarding that. But here, again, taking a business professional complex that, you know, folks, you know, may not like the fact that it's vacant or that it may attract other activity that, you know, can affect the neighborhood, but that's what's built, that's what stood there for decades. And if we're going to consider reusing it, I think we need to hold it to a pretty high standard, so.
I would say in the context of some of our housing element programs and work that we're doing on our SB2-funded streamlining, we are looking at encouraging more office reuse and looking at the BP zone. That wouldn't necessarily apply here because of the NPA overlay, so that's not particularly directly applicable to this site. But on a more global countywide basis, we are looking at, particularly given our regional housing needs allocation and in the context of our rezone program, we're certainly out looking for other areas where we can add into our inventory there.
If I could just respond to that real quickly, that I know in the zoning code for many years, going many iterations before, we allowed for apartment complexes in the commercial zones, and then we expanded that. But BP, in my recollection, was to be kind of that transition between commercial, whatever that might be, to, you know, single-family neighborhoods. And again, it's not a science because you can go all over the county and find different interfaces from different, you know, different periods of time, but, you know, taking BP properties that certainly had, it was always anticipated they would be lower-level use, typically more to, you know, working hours of, you know, eight to five and, you know, and, you know, having folks that would sort of report to work there but would be for, you know, services. And that has expanded or contracted over time as well, but not, you know, this use that was, you know, kind of the 24/7, although that wasn't prohibited, but most of those uses, whether you're a title company or you're a dentist or a doctor or, you know, optometrist, you know, go down through the list, there are BP uses, were ones that were lower-level and typically didn't, you know, have this constant motion that would go with, you know, a property that's inhabited, you know, as people's, you know, dwelling units, so.
Yeah, well, we'll see. When we get it framed up, we'll see what the board's reaction is, and that's not necessarily applicable to this item today.
Are you finished Supervisor Natoli? I know in my district, I've seen a conversion from apartment to condo, home ownership, and I did hear in the public comments, home ownership, and I heard seniors and lower density. So I wonder if there's a way that the neighborhood could be happy with something just a little different. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to mention a few of those things, actually, and follow up with a few of those. And I appreciate Supervisor Natoli's comments. I mean, this is a, this is a tough situation, you know, listening to the public comment. I mean, it's often, I mean, I think we need to have a bigger strategy about this going forward. Supervisor Natoli's dead-on accurate that this should not be, we shouldn't allow someone to just come in and meet the lowest possible standards, right? I mean, we need to make sure we put things in place and hold the applicant's feet to the fire to make sure they do a project that is going to enhance the character of the neighborhood, certainly at least in the aesthetic appearance. I do know this applicant, I think they, he took a few measures in response to the CPAC and Planning Commission comments. Chris, can you outline what those were?
Yeah, when the project was presented to both the CPAC and to the Planning Commission, the project had 20 units and the applicant reduced the number following the Planning Commission meeting to 18. They also, as a result of some concern about the privacy screening on the eastern and southern elevations of the property, they modified the balconies to include kind of slats and a top rail to provide some additional privacy screening. So they made those changes following the Planning Commission meeting before we brought the item to the board.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate, I appreciate the applicant being at least willing to have those discussions, take those steps. I think certainly more needs to be done. I'm going to, you know, address Mr. Wang directly and would like to get his commitment to a few things. He and I have spoken a couple times, but just as an observation, you know, going by that property multiple times, walking around the property, there have been issues there with respect to homelessness and I know other crimes being committed on that property. And I think it was very interesting hearing from the other developer who called in. I mean, it sounds like tearing this down, converting to single-family residence is just not a viable use of this property. So what are you left with? Well, we're left with making sure we make this the best project we can for the community. So Mr. Wang, if, you know, you're on the phone, I assume he's still on the phone, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to talk, address you directly right now, and as this goes back to planning and you're going to have some more discussions with them, some things that I want you to commit to or would request that you commit to is, number one, looking at the facade of this property and coming up with a different plan that doesn't make it just look like that shoehorn that Supervisor Natoli was talking about. Because the way it's planned now, it's simply going to look like an office building that is a kind of a funky configuration in this otherwise mostly residential neighborhood. So I'd like Mr. Wang to have that conversation with planning about some other ways he can beautify the facade of the building. And number two, I would like him to consider, you know, Chris, you and I and Leanne, we've had this discussion, I don't know if we can mandate a certain set aside for senior units or veterans' housing in this project, but I would certainly like the applicant to have that discussion with you, Chris, and I'd like to see that commitment from him. I think that's very important, plus it's necessary in my district with the number of seniors in the district. Number two, it does resonate with me that these very small units, I think several of the units are under 500 square feet. I think that's just, by nature, those would probably be more transient-type units. So I'd like Mr. Wang to have a discussion with planning about maybe reducing the number of those very, very small units. That's something that he and I actually discussed yesterday as well, and I think as Chair Frost mentioned and some of the callers mentioned, you know, could this potentially be converted to a condominium-type project where there's ownership involved? I know that is probably a much tougher road to hoe, but I would at least like him to have that discussion with you as well. And so, Mr. Wang, we're going to be putting this over, but I hope you can commit to me that you'll have those discussions with planning.
Mr. Wang, I'll need to take your oath.
Sure.
Okay, please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I affirm.
And please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn, and then go ahead with your comments. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Wong. I have been sworn. I have several discussions with different Board of Supervisors and also I did reach out to the labors and to the Laborhood Council. I do understand their general feelings. If I've been living in a certain place for 50-plus years, you know, of course I don't want to change, but, you know, understanding that society is changing, you know, that California needs housing. That being said, that office use is not cost, the function doesn't work no more, not because that's building, it's because the hospital moved away. When we bought the building about five years ago, we are trying to run it as an office building, but, you know, no matter how low the rent we try to go, there's very few tenants coming back in. So exactly like another supporting of the housing people said, this left two options. If you're buying an empty land, maybe you pay $300,000, $400,000. But here, if you want to develop a single-family house, you have to spend another $300,000, $400,000, even $500,000 to remove the structure. So it just makes, it does not make economic sense. And the only option right now, the laborhood does, you know, because I have, I talked with my immediate labor and he has a problem with homeless people. When you have empty building, they always attract homeless people, no matter how much careful the landlord wants to be, it's just the nature of the thing. I do agree with Supervisor Rich Desmond. I am going to work with my architect to make the facade much more looks like an apartment building in the front side, and I do, I do think that we definitely can work out agreement to provide 10% to 20% of the housing unit towards the veterans, the seniors, and also the public workers, public service workers. Because there's a sixth school around that area within half-mile. You know, there's a janitor, there's administrator, they need affordable housing. And the third thing regarding reduce the unit number, I'm open to it. I'm open to it. I just, from my personal experience, some people leaving a smaller unit for a long time, too, but, you know, I do agree, if that area wanted me to reduce the number even more, I can work with my architect, I can work with the planning department to further reduce it. That's my verbal commitment. You know, like I said, I stayed here under oath to see those things. I will commit to those things. So just answer your supervisor's question and understanding, I present my position here, and hopefully we can have a win-win situation here. The building have been sitting there like this condition for the last 20 years. The county doesn't generate any tax revenue or very minimum tax revenue. The landlord is losing... The landlord is losing money like a, like a crazy, and the Laborhood is bothered by us homeless people. Who is the winner here? I mean, as current situation, answer my question, who is the winner? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wong, and I look forward to following up with you on those items and with planning after your discussions with them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. I think at this time, we need a motion and a second, and we need to vote to drop the item.
Also move.
Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And so now we'll go to item 48, which is your nominations and appointments. And you are continuing to April 20th, the Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to May 18th, 2021, the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Area 4 Agency on Aging Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Human Services Coordinating Council, Lock Management Association, the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your items today, you have the Adult Aging Commission.
Please continue to May 18.
For American River Parkway Advisory Committee.
Chief's recommend nominate, please nominate Mark Moore.
Okay. And Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please nominate Beau Biller, and continue the remainder to May 18.
Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please nominate Gail Dax Conroy, and continue the remainder to May 18.
Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to May 4.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to May 18.
And Supervisor Desmond.
Please nominate Yoon Emblee, and continue the remainder to May 18.
Public Health Advisory Board.
Please continue to May 18.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board. So we have Supervisor Kennedy, who is not here, but I do have some notes from the Chief of Staff to continue that to May 18. And then Supervisor Desmond.
Please nominate William Cho as the family member representative, and Paul Wagstaff as the public interest representative, and continue the remainder to April 20.
Thank you. And we have the Sylvan Cemetery District.
I nominate Anthony Rago, and please waive the process.
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Please vote. Unanimous vote with those members present. And hang on one second, sorry, I'm just writing down my notes. Oh, and that concludes your nominations. Now you're on to county executive comments.
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. And we do not have any supervisors in the queue to speak, and I do know that we have a, an adjournment in memory by Supervisor Serna.
Thank you Chair. So today, I'd like us to consider adjourning in the memory of Gregory Kondos. World-renowned iconic landscape artist Gregory Kondos passed away at a Sacramento home on Friday, March 26th, just days short of his 97th birthday. Son of Greek immigrants, Kondos was born in Lynn, Massachusetts. As a small child, his family moved to Sacramento where he attended Sacramento High School and Sacramento City College. He served four years in the Navy during World War II and continued his art education via the GI Bill. Kondos earned his master's degree in art from Sacramento State in 1957, when it was still a relatively new institution. While at Sac State, he studied art alongside the now world-renowned painter Wayne Tebow, and the two became lifelong friends. Tebow and Kondos were among the group of Sacramento artists who in 1958 founded Sacramento's first private art gallery, Artist Cooperative Gallery, which later became Artist Contemporary Gallery. Kondos is best known for his paintings of the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta and made an indelible mark in Sacramento over more than eight decades. He, he was dedicated enough to paint every day, even when he could no longer stand and in a wheelchair. Kondos painted the Pacific Ocean from his home in Pacific Grove, the American Southwest from his home in Santa Fe, New Mexico, and he painted France and Greece and around, and other landscapes from around the world. But it was paintings of the delta and the surrounding Sacramento Valley that made his reputation. In 2019, Valley Community Newspaper Profile, A Profile, Kondos stated that California scenes were among his favorite things to paint. Kondos dedicated his life to his work and to sharing his passion for art with his students over the decades. The Gregory Kondos Gallery at Sacramento City College, where he taught for 27 years, was named for him. Kondos was honored many times, including with an honorary doctorate from Sacramento State. He won an Academy Award in Art from the American Academy of Arts and Letters. His work was shown in Shanghai, China, to great acclaim. A city street bears his name. He won numerous awards, including the winner invitationals of the California Palace of the Legion of Honor, a Dillard Collection Prize, and an appointment as full academician at the National Academy of Design in 1995. He also had an extensive exhibition history, including several one-person shows at galleries in the Sacramento and San Francisco area, and group exhibitions such as his 1993 invitation to show at the American Academy of Arts and Letters in New York. Kondos also served as an artist in residence at Yosemite National Park and spent many summer months there. In 2013, the Crocker Art Museum hosted a retrospective of his work titled A Touch of Blue. Among his permanent public art installations are the 510-foot-long glass mural, River's Edge, and the 12-foot-tall oil painting, Sutter's Gold, both at Sacramento International Airport. Kondos traveled the world, but always returned home to Sacramento. He and his first wife Rosie raised two children here and were married until her death in 1985. He later married Moni, his second wife. He worked from his studio in downtown Sacramento even as his shoulder ached from decades of holding the brush up to, up to the canvas. In his last six months, he continued painting in black and white at his home. Gregory Kondos resided in Sacramento with his wife of 25, 25 years, Moni Van Camp Kondos. He is also survived by son Stephen Kondos and daughter Valerie Kondos Field and husband Bobby. Memorial services are still pending. But I think, Madam Chair and colleagues, we all know and certainly respect this great Sacramento, and not just for his amazing ability to produce incredible pieces of art, but his, his big heart and his sense of community and his intent to always give back to the place he called home. So I'd ask that we adjourn his memory. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. This meeting is adjourned in memory of Gregory Kondos. May he rest in eternal peace.